It's 5:34 PM. It is Tuesday, July 16th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order. Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo? Heiser? Zuniga?
President.
Harris?
Here.
Parsley? Tobias?
President.
All right, four members present, we have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments. Is there anyone who wants to speak? All right, seeing none, we're going to close citizen comments. Next up is executive session. City council will now go into executive session to discuss items one, A through G pursuant to Texas government code sections 551.071, .072, and .087. Thank you. It's 7:03 PM. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion adjourned. All right, we are adjourned. And good evening, everyone. The time is 7:03 PM. It's Tuesday, July 16th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise to the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
President.
Heiser? Zuniga?
President.
Harris?
Here.
Parsley? Tobias?
President.
All right, five members present, we have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. And at the last meeting, I was not here. I do want to remind the gallery and the audience and the council that we've adopted rules of council that compel the audience and the council to follow a certain amount of decorum while in the meeting. And that decorum means that you can't clap or jeer or boo in the audience if you agree or if you disagree with what the presenter has to say. They have a right to speak uninhibited and also to not have their voice amplified by a group setting. It's their moment to speak, and so I would ask that we would refrain from clapping or booing. And also, it is prohibited in the rules of council to hold up signs or to use props in your speaking. So outside of that, so long as you're not holding anyone up to content or speaking on personnel matters, you can speak to us about any issue before the council, and we will listen. So with that being said, first up is Jason Payne.
Honorable mayor, esteemed members of the council, citizens, I'm Jason Payne. I'm here representing the Kyle VFW Post 12058. Just wanted to remind everybody, as last time I was up here, we have our service dog telethon coming up for United States Veteran Service Dog. It's an organization that benefits and helps needy veterans to receive service dogs. We are the first in the state of Texas to hold this telethon, and so it's a huge deal to be a part of this telethon for getting these needed support animals to the veterans. Costs about $35,000 to get a dog to a veteran. And so we have this telethon. It's going to be on August 31st, 2024, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Kyle VFW local. Everybody's welcome to come out. We also want to invite everybody to come out to the Halloween deal that we're going to be doing on, putting on a nice haunted house for all the kids and everybody, two separate deals, some for the scary lovers, some for the less scary lovers. Also, we want to have everybody that wants to come, come to our Friday breakfast. Come out, meet the Kyle VFW, meet the veterans in your local area, have breakfast with them, and enjoy our company and have us, you know, enjoy y'all's and talk. We have these flyers available for anyone that wants them. We also have coins for sale for $20. They're very nice coins set up for, all proceeds are going to support the veterans, United States Veterans VFW, sorry, United States Veteran Service Dogs, looked at a VFW coin. But we have them for sale, and $20 for one, or donate for your choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up, Yvonne Flores-Cale.
Thank you. I'm up here tonight speaking about Agenda Item Five, the sportsplex. I have a few concerns. My first concern is the Parks and Recs master plan referenced in the backup material is from 2016, which is almost 10 years old. I believe a new plan is needed with updated information, including current outstanding bond information. On page six of the presentation entitled Outdoor Sports Facility Studies, I noticed the locations used in each of the studies had different weather climates than that of Kyle. After researching each location, I found nine of the 10 facilities had an average temperature difference between six and nine degrees, and six of the facilities had a difference of at least 10 degrees or more. In fact, the only comparable outdoor facility to Kyle was Gulf Shores, Alabama, which had a difference of at least five degrees during two of the three summer months. I suggest using studies within central Texas to give the best comparison for the outdoor sports complex. On page 10, in the area labeled Youth Multi-Sport Facility Comp visitation, the average number for basketball and volleyball courts are inaccurate. The average should be 10 courts for basketball and 20 for volleyball. The average numbers provided to and used by the city of 30 and 60 are actually the total numbers for all three facilities combined. Since the information on that page reflects only one outdoor field, no average should be provided for outdoor fields. The cost for the sports complex in the backup information is confusing. I see a grand total cost of $185,615,701.20 on page 69. However, the cost estimate on page 71 for Phase One is $65 million. How did staff come to this amount when on page 70 it shows schematics won't begin until mid-November after the election for the bond? I would also like to know how many phases are planned and how those phases will be funded. Do these costs include the previous city and county bonds, which were approved in 2020? Also, is there a definite plan regarding what will be included in the indoor sportsplex? Finally, I would like to know how accessible the sportsplex will be for the residents. If the city is using the sportsplex as a rec center, will the residents have an opportunity to sign up for membership? If so, what is the cost of that membership? Building a sportsplex to generate revenue makes sense if the residents already have a rec building. However, using the last of our bonding capacity to build something for people outside of the city is fiscally irresponsible and not in the best interest of our taxpayers. I hope each of you take the time to think about what is truly needed and necessary for our city. Also, if you could please move up Agenda Item 21, it would be appreciated.
All right, thank you. Next up, Howard Connell.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. That last presentation was absolutely awesome, awesome. So was your talk last week on the screen over here, where you went about 25 minutes, off-topic, okay, where you weren't reeled in by the mayor pro temp, which you should have been, okay? So we were totally out of order, everybody, okay? But the hammer only came down when somebody up here laughed or something, okay? I find that disgusting. I find the fact, Mayor, tonight, that you brought the fact that we can't show any signs, like find a smile inside, because you readily just came up with your own rule. I'd like to see it in the rules, because I don't see it, okay? I'm sick and tired of being the sideshow for you folks up here. You sit there with looks on your face like deer in the headlights. You don't listen to anybody, you don't pay attention, you don't react. But you want to know something? There's a group of us out here that are organized, and we are going to fight like hell, okay? We are going to go after every one of you who is a leech, everyone who is not following the rules. I have here Mr. Rizzo's trip to Washington, DC, which I am going to refrain from going to tonight, since his daughter's in the audience, I don't want to embarrass him too bad. But I sent this to you a week ago and asked you to contact me, and maybe we could work something out. You gave me one of these, okay? So I've about had it with this dog and pony show. I'm sorry that you feel that I'm getting out of line, but this is from my heart. I can't stand the arrogance, the arrogance of your attitudes, played out in the abuse of the credit cards. The money's not a big thing, you know what it is? It's ethics. This is not about the budget, the line items. This is a you item. This is all about you, your choices. It's a you item. Fix it.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, Michael McDonald.
I wasn't even going to speak tonight, but I decided I would do it. I've watched the city council for the past several months, and I've come to the conclusion that not everyone on the city council is a leader, they're followers. A leader cares about the people that they represent. Each council member represents a certain district within the city of Kyle. I'll give you an example. One of you up here is my representative. You know what? I have never seen you before, except in here, never. I've never seen you in my neighborhood, I've never seen you walking around, never heard anything from you. I've never been to a meet and greet with you, I've never been to a question and answer period, I've never had anything to do with my representative in the city council. When was the last time that you met with your constituents? I'm just curious. As a leader, those are the people you represent. When was the last time you went out and you set up a meeting yourself as a council member, as a representative of those people? When was the last time that you met with them? When was the last time that you met with those people and asked them what they thought about certain topics that were on the agenda, that you were going to vote on? When was the last time you voted for what they wanted and not for what you wanted? You know, there's a big difference between wants and needs. And you know, we're in a big mess here with the city of Kyle, because we have voted a ton of wants and not the needs of the city. We need water. We need infrastructure. And I saw an example last time here, when they voted on the mental health thing. Would you go buy a car, just looking at a picture and not even understand, what kind of car is this? How many miles does this thing have on it? You all just voted to pay over $100,000 on something you don't even have all the details on. Leaders don't do that. Man, you need to investigate what this is all about. Is the city of Kyle going to pay for Hays County? Do we even know that? It's really aggravating. Who do you represent, actually? Do you represent the citizens or do you represent the council? I'm just curious about that, really, because sometimes when you vote, you don't vote like you're representing the citizens, you vote like you're representing the council. You voluntarily ran to be a city council member. You chose. I didn't choose that, you chose that, and you knew what you were getting into. And you know that you are representative for the people. You need to act it.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, Stephanie McDonald.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to speak about the juvenile behavioral health program. It was very sad to see the juvenile behavioral health program passed with no plan in place. It was very telling that no experts, no entity this city is planning to partner with, not Hays County Health Department, not Hays County CISD, not Health Country Mental Health, testified. There were so many red flags waving on this issue. It's shocking that the city would move forward with such a complex issue with no plan. Even Councilmember Lee said, "This person cannot service the entire county, but we moved forward without a plan." Councilmember Tobias, who through his employment has the most experience with mental health crisis, expressed several issues that needed to be addressed before moving forward with this resolution. A vote was prematurely called for, and the mayor who attended virtually attempted to manipulate the vote, inferring that if you support this care, you'll vote for it. He also said he was putting his money where his mouth is. That was a slap in the face to Councilmember Tobias, because he had expressed several times that he cared about this issue. He just wanted it to be done responsibly. I'm so thankful he had the courage to stand for his principle. Thank you, even though he was alone. The audience was visibly upset that the council would move forward on this, verbally expressing their dissatisfaction, which conveniently could not be heard on the live stream. Please stop this or improve your sound system so that those that are watching can hear everything that's being heard. The cancellation of credit cards. Councilmembers Zuniga, thank you for courageously asking for the council credit cards to be canceled, in an effort to rein in the irresponsible and excessive spending by some members of council. The case to continue that credit cards and the $500 a month stipend has not been justified. Councilmember Rizzo expressed that without these, not everyone would be able to run for council. But first of all, anyone running for council has to be able to afford a campaign. And second of all, there's a form available for those that cannot wait for reimbursement of expenses. It allows for the money to be given to them upfront. The explanation for needing the credit cards as well as the $500 stipend is totally insufficient. And we're not against travel for education and appropriate travel, we just want transparency, which by the way, looking at the credit card reimbursement policy states that. Travel to other cities as a member of city Kyle delegation is officially sanctioned by a majority vote of the city council to explore economic development opportunities and for further the interest of the city of Kyle. I have not seen any votes taken on sanctioning a certain group of people to travel anywhere. Also, the sports complex. I'm not against one, but I am against one for this time in our history. It's not time to build a $100 million complex. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am. All right, only those, those are the only comments that I, forms that I have in front of me. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
My name is Angelita Tobias, and I am a resident of Hays County, but I'm also a taxpayer for the city of Kyle. I come before you with several concerns, one of which Mrs. McDonald has already shared, that before the procedures, according to the mayor last week or the week before, you were very adamant that we should all, the diocese, should learn the policies and the rules for the council. So I said, you know what, I'm going to look at them and see what that says. So it has already been cited, the procedures for out-of-town travel and completing the travel expenses claim form, that's a section that I'm under, Section 8 out of the policy with Council amendments 1032022. So I'm thinking that that is the current thing that you all are working by. So it stays here. And you know, you have to take a vote before you all decide to take the whole council out of town and guest, which is not an allowable expense. So if you're not following your own rule, with all due respect, Mayor, that you chastise your fellow people here about not learning or not knowing it. So you know, let's do right by the people of Kyle. If you're expecting people to know everything, then you have a training and get everybody on board. That's one of the things that I think that needs to be happened, but you can't have one for the other and not for the other. And I'm going to disagree with you, Mr. Rizzo, that people don't vote or don't want to run because they don't have the financial means to do so. There's a lot of capable people out there in this community that would make excellent citizens, excellent, but there's several things that we need to look at. Now, I ask you, what surveys have you shown or can you show us that people don't participate in this democracy because they don't have the funds? When you say that, you need to have proof, that you've done a survey and people say, "I don't run because I don't have the money," okay? Perhaps it's because they don't want to get corrupt. Perhaps they see the examples that you all are doing on the diocese, and I applaud them for that. That is one thing. The other thing that I would like to talk to you all about is, on this referendum, I'm all for it. Let the people speak. And if you say it's non-binding, then you have to look into your conscience and say, "Why not? Why are we allowing this? Why are we allowing people to pay for your health insurance?" You go out into the community and you look at the people. Yes, Mr. Rizzo, there's a lot of people that don't run because they don't have the financial means to even pay their taxes. But why should they be, why should we, them, they all be paying for insurance for people that can afford it? And I will never believe that you cannot.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tobias.
Thank you.
That is all the comment forms. Is there anyone else?
So, well, this is actually my first meeting here, I'm a bit nervous. I just wanted to say something I was thinking of, basically. I didn't come with anything prepared, I just wanted to, you know, sit, listen, hear what people had to say, be a little bit more politically active, you know? So just sharing what's been on my mind, and maybe it'll resonate with other people, maybe they'll say something at the next meeting. That's what I'm getting at, essentially. So I would like it if we had better public transport. I don't think we need something as extravagant as Austin. I'm not suggesting a big rail system or anything like that. But Kyle has grown quite a bit. By the way, I grew up here. I left for Houston to go to college for a bit, then I came back. I think I moved here back in 2005 or so. Traffic wasn't this bad. So I think maybe things, you know, everything's just getting kind of smacked up all crazy. There wasn't the best planning with that, and I think one way to remedy that is to have better public transport. I mean, a lot of people can't afford to get around. I mean, speaking from personal experience, I don't have a car. I can't get around. I'm still able to do things, though, you know, I got here. I'm probably going to actually walk back home. I didn't walk here, by the way, but I'm going to, I like to walk, so it's, I'm kind of going against my point here. I actually do like to walk. But, you know, I see a lot of people in here, they're probably over 50, and they probably don't like to walk as much as I do. So just something to consider. That is all. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Courtney Goza. I want to remind each and every one of you, including our city manager, that it is your duty, charged to you by the charter, to uphold all of the ordinances, rules, and policies of the city. That is currently not being done in a great many areas, and all of you should be held responsible for that. There are charges on your credit cards, which go against travel policy, which is in the personnel manual, which applies to council, particularly in the travel reimbursement section. You regularly exceed the allotted amount for hotel stays. I have never once seen you come up here and ask council for an exception to that $135 a night limit that is in that travel policy. And it also states that-
Ms. Goza, please address the mayor and council.
Okay, well, so he has never done that. So he's never come up here to ask for an exception. And do we even know that you're getting written exceptions? You certainly exceed your per diem all the time, you certainly charge charges that are not allowed, they're unallowed either by that travel policy or by an ordinance that you signed in 2022. Those need to be adhered to, and it needs to be an investigation within the city on why these things are slipping through. If they're slipping through on these small charges for you, what are they slipping through on larger charges for all of these invoices that we regularly have coming in from all of your pet projects? And I would also like to say, it is very disrespectful for you to block somebody off of your personal or your political page from somebody that they can't see. That is a First Amendment violation, which was ruled by the Supreme Court in March, that you cannot do that. And also, it is potentially a violation to prevent us from holding small, unobtrusive signs as a restriction of First Amendment speech.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Citizen comments period is now closed. All right, next up is agenda order. Does anybody have any requests to move the items around? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on.
All right, Mayor, I'd like to turn to items 21 and 22.
All right, the request is to move the Councilmember Zuniga's items to the front of the meeting and take them off the top. As has been the case, I think that putting these items to the front is a mistake, and I think we should focus on the business of the city first. So I'll call a vote on that. Roll call, and yes vote is to take up those items first.
Rizzo?
Nay.
Parsley?
I'm sorry, I just got connected again. I apologize. What item are we on?
The request is by Councilmember Zuniga to move his items to the front.
Oh, nay.
You have to have your screen on to be counted, Ms. Parsley.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
That will be nay.
Okay.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Nay.
Heiser?
No.
Tobias?
With all due respect, Mayor, everything on the agenda item is public business, city business, but I'm going to vote yes.
Harris?
No.
All right. Motion fails one to six. Next up, agenda, I'm sorry, two to five. Next up, Agenda Item Number Three, receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding the construction activity of the Alliance Water Segment C Pipeline.
Mayor, we still need to approve the minutes.
Oh, I apologize. Next up is approval of the minutes.
All right, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and approve the minutes for July 2nd, special meetings and the regular special meetings on the same date.
All right, second, motion by the mayor, second, all right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by the mayor, that we approve the minutes. It's written, is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call opposed. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Motion carries five to zero. I missed the vote, just for Councilmember Parsley and Heiser. If you want, the easier way for me to see here, because I can't always hear the yes votes, or it'll come with a lag, so if you just hold your hand up as a yes vote, that way I'll know. All right, so I'm going to read it as six to zero is the vote on the minutes. All right, next up is, receive a report, hold a discussion, provide staff direction regarding the construction activity of the Alliance Water Segment C Pipeline. Mr. Moore?
Great. Good evening, Mayor and council. Again, my name is Graham Moore, Executive Director of Alliance Regional Water Authority. Want to give you some updates on our segment C construction. Just a quick couple of slides about Alliance Regional Water Authority. Again, we were created in 2007 as the Hays Caldwell Public Utility Agency, and then converted to Alliance Water in 2017 through legislative action. We provide water on a wholesale basis to our sponsors, including the city of Kyle, and we're governed by a 13-
regarding the construction activity of the Alliance Water Segment C Pipeline. Mr. Moore?
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Graham Moore, Executive Director of Alliance Regional Water Authority. Want to give you some updates on our Segment C construction. Just a quick couple of slides about Alliance Regional Water Authority. Again, we were created in 2007 as the Hayes Caldwell Public Utility Agency and then converted to Alliance Water in 2017 through legislative action. We provide water on a wholesale basis to our sponsors, including the City of Kyle. And we're governed by a 13-member Board of Directors that are appointed by our sponsors. This is a map that shows our areas our sponsors cover, including the City of Kyle, Cities of St. Marcus and Buda, as well as K Regional Water Authority. So hopefully those slides look familiar to you from the last couple of meetings. Just big picture update on some of our construction because we've had quite a bit of progress. This is our overall system map. And what I was trying to show here is kind of the southern hemisphere of our system is basically everything is, is in construction, virtually complete at this point in time. We still have, what I show is the active construction that points to the north, including the Segment C, which I'm going to talk to you about here in a little bit more detail on the following slides, as well as an elevated storage tank that we'll build on the northern side of the section to provide service to Kyle and the other customers on the northern end of the system. Update on our disinfection. After we get pipelines installed and we test them to make sure they hold pressure, then we have to disinfect those so they can be ready for potable water service. I have three different colors here on the screen to show what our expectations were as to those three different pipe segments when they would be complete. I'm happy to report as of this afternoon, we got reports that all of this have passed their back T testing and so they are all ready for potable water service. So this is a pretty big milestone in our system that all of these water lines are ready. We're anxious to get Segment C to join that in the relatively near future as well. But this is a nice little milestone for us. We are continuing to work at the water treatment plant. We are going through startup now. It takes a while to start up a treatment plant of this magnitude and of this complexity. We're working through that day by day and getting very close to being able to move some potable water out of that plant and start delivery to those customers that are connected to these pipelines. So we're excited for that. Now moving on to kind of the topic at hand, which is the Segment C Pipeline, which will bring water to the City of Kyle. Just as a reminder, the Alliance Water Board awarded the contract to McKee Utility with a notice to proceed date of April 15th of 2024, so just a few months ago. The contract requires what we call Lines 1, 3 and 4 to be completed by the end of February 2025 and then the remaining Line 2 to complete by Halloween of 2025. So just a few updates as to where we stand. The contractor started with Line 3, which is the 12-inch line, that's the smallest diameter line. Those materials were readily available and so they have started there. This yellow shows the approximate progress of that. They've got most of that line completed at this point, including all open cut portions. And they're going back there and what we call threading the tunnels on those remaining pieces. In lots of the other areas, they've cleared the easements. They've installed best management practices to prevent runoff and erosion of our easement areas. Tunneling contractor's been active across the area. There's been multiple tunnel shafts dug for microtunnels and as well as hand tunneling and auger boring continuing on Line 1. And then I've got a few photos here I wanted to show you of what you might see as you drive around the area and see these various areas. This is kind of standard. We've got our easement where we've got silt fence and rock. They're starting to store for the bedding material that'll go in the pipeline. You could see they've cleared that easement on the left-hand photo. This right-hand photo is at Lehman High School. They have actually started construction across Lehman High School while the school is out of service this summer. Bartlett Cock is also out there doing a lot of expansion to the campus. So we're coordinating very closely with the contractor there to make sure that we stay out of each other's way. And so that's going successfully so far. Couple more photos. On the left is the, kind of the end of the 12-inch line as it connects to County Line Special Utility District's tank. This was one of the very last pieces of the open cut section. And then on the right is one of the, the trenchless shafts that were dug for the microtunnel to go under I-35 at Waterstone. So this is pretty similar. There's several of these around the city that you'll see as part of that microtunneling effort. All right, last slide really for me, construction next steps, is to finish up that 12-inch water line. We expect that'll be done by the end of this week, that they'll have that, that work all finished up. You should start to see some of the larger diameter pipelines show up. It's kind of gray in color. They'll range in size from 36 to 42 inch diameter. So it's sizable, you'll, you'll notice it when you start to see it. They are working actively across the Lehman High School parking lot and they will get that wrapped up again by the middle part of July here to get out of the way of both the contractor that's also doing work out there and to allow the school to come in in early August. And then they're going to have crews that will start in August, moving to the south. They'll have two different crews that are working that way. And then later in August, they're going to add some additional crews to lay pipe in other areas. So you'll see lots of crews working very actively across the area. You may have already seen that. And they'll continue with the microtunnels that go under the railroads as well as under I-35. Just want to point out again, there will be no permanent road closures. There'll be a few short traffic delays or interruptions as they have to get the trucks off the road or take pipeline off the trucks. But those will be minimized. There will be flaggers out there, but there may be no permanent detours or no long-lasting effects from construction for, for traffic purposes. So that's all the updates I have. As committed to you before, I'll come back and I think we've got schedule in October to give you another update at that point in time as we continue forward with this. I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Moore? Councilmember Tobias?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. All right, this has to go with the Lehman parking lot. So you're saying that most of construction is already going to be done? What about all the equipment in that area? Because football season's fast approaching.
It is.
And we have our Ward Women Lehman ban that uses that area starting at the end of July. So that, that, I don't know if we've worked with the school on that?
We have. My understanding is that they are setting up a different area for the band to practice. This area where the band typically practices is being used by the contractor that's expanding Lehman High School as their lay down yard. And so we're coordinating on when we're going to complete that work. But the band will have their own area to practice in both ourselves, as well as the Lehman High School contractor, and making sure that area is available to them. So we will not impact that.
Yes, good, because I had a band parent and also another resident.
Very important aspect.
Yes, exactly. We got to get them ready for the football season. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Harris?
I just wanted to remind everybody that's concerned about water is that Arwa is bringing the water from the Corizo Aquifer, which some people listening to this, this might be new to them. And Arwa also has an open policy. So if you want to attend the board meetings, which you're welcome to do, they're published, they're posted and they are video, or they're, they're done by video as well. So you, we would be happy for our assistants to do that.
Absolutely. And the information on our agendas can be found on our website here at alliancewater.org.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Hey, Graham, thank you. Just a quick question. If you had to do work on the service line part of it later in the future, will customers be able to feel that impact? Or is that where the storage tanks come into play? And do you have a backup shut off somewhere at the service line of Arwa?
Yeah, we have intermediate valves along the way so we can isolate sections if there, if there is a problem in the line so we can isolate that area and perform whatever work we need to do. It depends on the nature of what the issue is. Storage tanks can help for a while to buffer and continue to provide water. In most cases, if there's something we identify, we'll try and schedule that in a period of time when it's not critical for the city to be able to receive that water so we can schedule and make those repairs. There may be times when that's not possible and we'll just have to coordinate closely with the city staff to make sure that they're aware of the imminent problem we've got to get fixed. So it's a little bit of all of those. But we do have intermediate valves to turn, isolate the areas.
So the branch system is very strategic for this, I guess, to go east-west here?
Yes, sir. It was a little bit from the operations, a little bit more of, we, we had a kind of geographic diverse areas to try and get to. And so trying to figure out the, the most economical way to do that was part of how we ended up with this alignment.
Well, will we be, the microtunnels that were dug, will they be noticeable after Arwa is finished and complete?
No, the, the land will be brought back up to grade. There'll be actually a valve box at the top of it, but it'll look similar to any other water infrastructure that the city has. They will not be left with big holes in the area. They, they will be refilled and brought back up to grade.
Okay, thank you, Graham.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I struggled a little with the October deadline for the next time we get a, an update. That was the only part of that, that, so for, I'm not suggesting that you have to do this, but as an example, Commissioner Inglesby, when she was doing the 150 East Expansion Project under her office, the, the, her office issued weekly updates, not long. It was, this is the work that we accomplished this week. And the reason I'm saying that is because I know that there's a deadline and that deadline is the thing that everyone's watching. And we don't know if your deadline is slipping or not slipping unless we have regular updates to say, all right, we got a little behind or we had rain all week. So we got a little behind. And so my request for you would be not to suggest that we all go to the City of Kyle's or this, the Arwa Board's website to try to find the information, but rather that we get weekly or, or, or weekly updates on, on just the way Commissioner Inglesby done. You can reference it, which is, this is the work that was accomplished this week, not extensive or on, and I'm not talking about on the entire Arwa project, but I am talking about Phase C because we've now gotten to the point where construction has begun.
Yes.
We know that there's a deadline and we are going to want to know increasingly, especially this summer as, as it's hot. Like, are we going to meet the, are we going to have the taps on before next summer?
Right.
Or are we not? And I know you can't tell me that, you know, perfectly because of construction delays and the like. Every project I've been a part of or for, for the last eight years has been delayed with almost no exceptions. Arwa's probably the biggest one, but Arwa's an 18-year project, you know. And so there's some understanding there. But what we don't want to find out is come October that the project got pushed when we didn't really know all along the way.
So we are providing monthly updates to the City of Kyle to update both on the website, the C's website, as well as through social media to provide those. So it's not just once a quarter that I'll be giving you updates. There are some intermediate updates. If we want to look at increasing that frequency, I would suggest every other week. That's really the, the time scale in which we meet with the contractors and revet their, their schedules and could give a more, a true update as to where we're at. So we could certainly pass along information on a bi-weekly basis after we meet with the contractor to get a better sense of where that's at.
Really just, this is what was accomplished in the world of that particular construction project over this period of time. Two weeks is fine. It does not have to be a presentation. You don't have to come here. But something that can be distributed for the council to be aware of the project, because obviously we're watching it very closely. But also we're, anyone in the public who wants to follow along to know whether we're going to hit that mark can follow without any way.
We'll work with staff to provide those updates on a bi-weekly basis and determine how best to get those shared.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
Also, we have representation on the Arwa Board.
We do.
And the Arwa Board meets monthly. So I'm on the board. We have staff who are on the board as well. So we bring that information back too. But I would much rather have it come from Graham.
Sure.
Well, that's why I, I know that we could our own, but I like the idea of Arwa, Arwa being in charge of giving us those updates.
Surely, it makes sense.
Any further discussion? All right, thank you, Graham.
Great, thank you.
All right, next up is agenda item number four. Receive a report, hold discussion on the city's water systems, supply and demand and associated capital improvement projects. Mr. Sanford?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Tim Sanford, Assistant Director for the Record. Thank you for having me here tonight. And we're going to continue our conversations about water supply as soon as we have our presentation up on the, maybe. There we go. So let's get started. So I want to go over just a little bit about where our water comes from, just to give some emphasis of the, later on in the present, presentation. So GBA being the first one on the bullet point here. That is a contract we have that comes out of Canyon Lake. It's treated down in St. Marcus at their surface water treatment plant. The City of Kyle also has a conservation permit, or sorry, conservation district permit with EAA. We're permitted through them. We're also permitted through Barton Springs Edward Aquifer Conservation District. We have an emergency interconnect with the City of St. Marcus. And just like we got to talking about with Alliance, we have an expected, expectation of February 2025 to begin receiving water at our 1626 site. That's an Alliance water supply. So it's just a brief overview of what we have in terms of supply and where they come from. The next thing I want to try to, try to hit on is a question that we're asked very often is, how do we implement restrictions? How did you decide on that? We got rain yesterday. You're asking me still to only irrigate once a week or once every other week. How do you come to those difficult decisions? So here on this slide is listed just a, a brief summary of what we monitor in terms of staff and personnel, what we look at to, to make those difficult decisions. So beginning with the GBA supply, like I mentioned, that is a Canyon Lake reservoir level that we look at. Canyon Lake is sitting at 56% full right now. And that was as of early July. And GBA has implemented a stage three drought due to that level on that lake. So that is a voluntary 15% reduction. The next level reduction for Canyon Lake is a mandatory reduction for GBA. So that's, that is a big, big impact. That is our biggest water supply that the city has. So just, just be thinking about that, please. Our next one that I want to mention is our EAA permit. So we have a J-17 index well and the St. Marcus and Comal Springs flow that the Conservation District EA looks at to decide where their stage drought is going to fall. And currently they're at stage four, which is a 40% reduction to the City of Kyle's permit. And then next you have Barton-
Tim, was that, that's mandatory, correct?
That is mandatory, yes, sir. And Barton Springs is our next one. So currently they're in stage two and they look at the Barton discharge and they look at Love Lady Monitoring Well. That one is, is, has some of the same influence as EAA, but different monitoring points, different conserva, different conservation district. So that, that's all the things that we look at as staff. We constantly monitor this almost on a daily basis. We meet with the executive staffs on a weekly basis and discuss, you know, just paths going forward, looking at all these projections. So we're intimately involved in looking at all these things and making those really challenging decisions that have to be made for for water demands. And then there at the last bullet point, we just wanted to demonstrate where we were in June of 2023 versus where we are in June of 2024. So if you look at the demands, we're at 4.7 in 23, and this year we're at 4.2. While yes, the rainfall that we've had has some impact to that, I believe that's a that could that is an effort by our customers, that's an effort by staff to to conserve that that water supply that we do have, and that is that is shown in the demands that we have there, so. The next slide that I have is just to help demonstrate what our permits look like for each one of those different supplies that I described. So I know this is a lot of information, and I won't go into all the details of this, but as you can see, you can see the permits with restrictions, permit after restrictions. And when I say after restrictions, that just means like EAA has implemented the 40% restriction. So we're just applying that to try to help us forecast what our capacities may be going through that fiscal year or calendar year. And then you can see in the far right column, you can see the percentages that we've used to date. So as as you can see, we still have ample supply based on the permits and the projections that we have with our current demands, given the current restrictions that are in place. So I say all that to say we're we're in a good spot where we are now. We do have some very hot, dry weather coming upon us. Borough didn't seem to produce as much as I'd hope it would have, but we still got much, much longer to go in the hurricane season, so still crossing my fingers.
Can I can I jump in real quick, Tim?
Yes, sir, please.
Yeah, so going back to the table, yeah, so is there a way for us to express this moving forward in the acre feet of water? Because just to do a quick math, we're allowed 6,933 acre feet of water with the permit restrictions, and we've used 2,000 with the permit restrictions. And that's a little easier than looking at the the hundreds of millions of gallons of water. So if it's a simple number, and I think most people can understand that's how much acreage of one foot of water is what we're allowed to use.
We were.
Is that okay?
I I hear what you're saying. We're trying to show this and and not switch back from acre feet to being gallons per day to to gallons.
Right.
We'll definitely take that into consideration. And when we develop this chart in in future presentations and hopefully make that a little easier to interpret. Just trying to follow through this is is not always easiest thing.
Right, and there are big, there are a lot of num- there are hundreds of millions of gallons, so.
It's like, how do you simplify it?
Right.
Not only for us.
But I want I want everyone to understand we have, you know, 7,000 acres of acre feet of water that we can borrow, we can use, and we're we've used 2,000 of it.
Sure.
Much faster, much faster to convert.
I think that's a good opinion. We'll definitely take that into account.
Is that is that accurate, though? 7,000 acre feet is our annual supply and we've used 2,000 of it in the fiscal year? That can't be right.
I'm not going to say that without busting out a calculator.
It's 325 hundred and 325, 851 US gallons is one acre foot. So that you divide your total permitted by that.
Every acre foot is 325, 851.
Right.
So.
It's one full water covering the entire acre.
So maybe the better question is, as as it relates to where we're at on the year in terms of acre feet, are we are we with all the restrictions in the 40% and 15 and all that? Are we are we in danger right now, as you see it, of hitting the same place that we were in last year where we have to increase restrictions because people watered? Basically, we exceeded our supply and had to make additional cuts. Or do you, based on the trajectory that we're on this year, are we going to make it?
We do not anticipate increasing restrictions as they are set today. We are close in monitoring that, so we do have some trigger points that internally we're watching for. While we've gotten somewhat close to that through the year, this rain that we've received definitely helps. And so again, all the conservation efforts of irrigation is is our biggest, that is our biggest use, unfortunately, but we are we're we're good. So that's that's why we built this chart is to demonstrate we have the capacity. We just have to keep those peaking demands down, which is a result of irrigation. Does that answer your question, sir?
Well, the question was where are we at in relation to the supply on the year? Like if if based on half the year, which is it's actually more, we're at like nine months out of the 12. So if we're only at two out of seven, then that math in my mind makes me think that we have a lot more supply than what we're needing. And what I'm just trying to figure out is if you could put this is how much water we've received, this is how much our demand has been, and we're in a we're in a good spot or a bad spot.
We're at the 50% point of the year now, or we're a little bit past the 50%.
We have a slide later in the presentation that demonstrates exactly what you're asking for.
Okay, perfect.
And and the difference from between, Mayor, if I could, the difference between last year and this year is that we've received more rain. So in April, we received five inches of rain. We didn't do that last year. In May, we received over six inches of rain. June, we've got three inches of rain. And even right now, in July, we've gotten 2.5 inches of rain with more expected. So we've had a better year.
Here's what scares me about what you're saying, which is true.
Yeah.
And we also, last year, we're not in drought restrictions or we, I think we were in state, we didn't go to stage three.
We're in less of a drought restriction.
We were in less drought restrictions. We had the worst drought we've had since I've been here. And so but the lakes are still down this way. It's I'm trying to figure out, are we actually in a better position now because of all that rain? Or not? Because it it just doesn't, it's not clear to me.
So so the rain does trickle down, right, from the Highland Lakes and everything else like that? So right now, Lake Lake Buchanan is at about 80% full, and they're still receiving rain. So that's great. Eventually, that'll open up floodgates and work its way down to Travis. And then it's about what we have coming in the future. So if we have the rain coming in, we're okay, we're not watering as much, and the restrictions don't really hurt us as, you know, our yards as they would, you know, normally. But, you know, one of the things is just making sure the restrictions, for me, I feel like even if we have the abundance of rain, we shouldn't be watering our yards four or five times a day. You know, that's why I'm kind of thinking, you know, four or five times a week, right? So that's why I like the restrictions being in place, but I I don't think we're in the same spot we were last year.
So I've gotten complaints on two issues that I don't have an answer for, and that's kind of the reason why I'm asking. Number one is folks, like a lot of people like to use the car washes on the interstate in various places. I use them, I love them, and I think it's convenient, and they recycle their water. So the fact that they recycle their water means that getting your car washed there is very efficient from a water use standpoint as opposed to watering or washing your car in your driveway. However, there's a but for every seat, that's a motorcycle term, right? So like, not everyone wants to pay for a membership and go, but they want to wash their car in their driveway. But according to stage three drought restrictions, that's not possible. So I'm not suggesting that we leave stage three, but what I am suggesting is if we can do it in a safe and responsible way, we allow people to wash their cars. That's one. And number two is foundations. So soaker hoses aren't allowed under stage three drought restrictions, and yet a lot of the homes that are being built, especially as Kyle grows, we have all these new foundations that are coming in and they're settling. And so if they get put in on, you know, wet, good soil, and then it goes into drought and they can't water around their foundation, it's also something that insurance companies do not cover. And so I worry that I'm that across the city, we're we're actually creating kind of a a future financial burden on people without necessarily knowing it because it doesn't happen immediately.
Sure.
And so the car wash in the driveway and the ability to put soaker hoses around your foundation are two things that I think both could have a big impact on the quality of life as well as preserving the assets that we do have, just like we water our trees and things like that. We may let the grass die, but we don't let the tree die. I'd like us to look at being able to add those two things back because I think that's meaningful to the community. But if I don't have the data to know exactly where we're at, whether we have that bandwidth or not, then I can't make an informed decision on whether that's good.
Sure.
So.
I I think I can answer your question on where we're at later on in the presentation.
There I go.
And definitely the the things that you mentioned, the irrigation on the the slabs for, you know, keep that from settling.
Right.
And then the washing of cars, we could definitely make that a topic in our in our next meetings.
Well, you're allowed to water with your with a hose.
Yes.
But nobody is going to walk around their entire house watering their foundation. So that's where the soaker hose part of it comes in. But then what's the difference between soaker hose and watering your lawn? I don't know.
So, Mayor, if I could, just a couple of clarifying points. This is a calendar year basis that we're looking at.
Oh, it is.
Yes, sir. So from January to December. So the the right hand column is the 29%. That's the percentage of the supply that has been used to date. And so whether that's acre feet or MGD, it's the same calculation, it's going to be the same percentage.
You're saying we're 50% barely through the year and we're 29%.
Right, but all years are not treated the same, right? And so when you get into July, August, and September, the usage goes way up. And so we expect to use quite a bit of water in these next few months. And I think as Tim will show you in a minute, one of the things that's really important is the amount of water that's used on a on an MGD basis per day and the peaking factor that we see in the watering, the irrigation seasons, that's one of the things we have to really watch in addition to the supply. So we'll talk about that in a moment, and that's one of the things when we look at bringing in Arwa will give us more capacity for those peak day usage moments. That's what that limits what we have in a supply, what we can pump, how much we can get out, and also supply issues. So it's a combination of of a couple of complicated factors, so we'll try to demystify that a little bit on a couple of slides.
To to tag a little bit on to what you said and what Councilmember Rizzo said, we have several different water sources. The Highland Lakes, we don't get any water from, but we do from Canyon Lake, that's GBRA that you've indicated here. It's met surface water. That the rain in our area affects that dramatically. The Edwards Aquifer is is the San, it's all the rest of that, pretty much.
So Edward Rockford, that permit is a San Antonio pool. You have a Uvalde pool and you have a San Antonio pool, that's that conservation district.
So the EAA.
Yes.
B S E A C D.
Barton Springs.
The market San Marcos agreement and the San Marcos Interconnect are all out of the Edwards Aquifer.
That's correct.
And then we have the Carizo coming in that enhances our water supply. So just to make it really clear about where the water's coming from, the Edwards Aquifer fills up fairly quickly if it rains, if we get really good rain. And the Carizo doesn't fill up as quickly, but it's a very, very big and deep aquifer. So and of course, surface water requires rain.
Specifically in Kerrville area.
Which is the one spot in Texas we haven't gotten it.
It's very red there if you look at the drought chart.
Yeah, it's a weird thing. I my folks have a live on a have a lake house up in a fishing lake way far in the northeast. It's just teeming. Lake Belton last summer went grass. I've never seen it in my 40 years, I've never seen it like that. And in two months rain, the water was up to the bridge, which is very, very good for those folks. Lake Belton supplies water to a lot of important farm communities and smaller towns. Our lake system has just not produced that.
I just want I just want to stress the, I guess, how important it is up. Two of these really, though, are San Marcos water, so I don't want to count those as water sources because it is another city's water, right? So.
It's Edwards Aquifer water.
We are paying for the San Marcos water, and so we are going to use it.
But I because I don't know how reliable it will be to continue with it. So I know the others will be around, but isn't that?
But but we are going to pay for it, and so we are going to take it, the San Marcos water.
Right, right. But like, is it always there next year, the year after? Can't they decide they don't want to sell it?
Guaranteed for the next three years. Yes, sir, we have a contract for that, yes.
Okay. So it's like, when we call it a water source, I want to make, I want to be clear that it is a water source, not.
That is not a water source. The Edwards Aquifer is a water source. And there it is, it is allocated by percentage of need, which was done years ago, and it was unanticipated that Kyle would grow this rapidly. So our percentage of allocation from the Edwards Aquifer is less than our need was. San Marcos has grown not as quickly as was anticipated, so they have not utilized their full need. The water is out of the same spot, so all we are doing is asking San Marcos by a contract to allow us to use some of their allocation out of the Edwards. If we were to go back to the Edwards Aquifer Authority at some point, and I don't know how realistic that is, and say, hey, can we revisit these percentages, then, you know, they would be more equitable. But this is a much easier and simpler system to do right now to get us through where the Carizo is coming. So it's not like San Marcos water. It's Edwards Aquifer water.
Because I thought we were, I thought we were like squeezing their neck, like this is.
No.
You got to give us this.
All right, so.
Shaking hands.
There's a there's a really important history lesson that folks need to understand about the way our water systems have come online. Buta, Kyle, San Marcos, the Canyon Regional Water Authority, and various other entities joined up 18 years ago.
Sure.
And started this process. We all had different water needs. Buta needed water faster than Kyle did. Kyle needed water faster than San Marcos did, but we couldn't cultivate a Carizo type project without everyone getting together. So how do you make partners when 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 they all know that we're going to need different water at different times? It's through interconnects. So San Marcos and Kyle made an interconnect, Kyle and Buta made an interconnect, and then San Marcos, Kyle, and Buta got together and started on a 20 year project. So the sharing between Kyle, we have shared water with Buta, Buta has shared water with Kyle, Kyle shared water with San Marcos, San Marcos has shared water with Kyle at various points in time, and that is by design. So it's not like, oh, we ran out of water, San Marcos, will you save us? This is 18 years of very good planning for waters, a water system to come online. So San Marcos making that provision to us is consistent and allows for us and San Marcos to focus on the Arwa project, which is really what the long term goal has been. So just it's it's really important that folks know that. It's not a it's not an emergency sort of situation with San Marcos, who was expected and envisioned for a long time, which is why we've done this. How many years have we done this?
So we just signed this three year agreement that takes us through 26, and then there was two years prior to that.
Yeah, and that's that's the span of time when the project has been delayed. Two years ago is when Arwa was supposed to come online. It wasn't, and so San Marcos has to make this move with us, but that's because we are partners. We're not necessarily competitors on water.
Yeah, you're right. It was kind of called as an emergency, that's why it was.
I know. The way the way it went down, it created, it created a little bit of a.
It didn't go downright.
You are correct. But that's the that's the situation that we're in, which is to Dr. Harris's point, exactly why she's not concerned about that particular point with San Marcos and the City of Kyle, because she's on the board and she understands how our water providers, our various folks that are on that board, think. So it's not as risky as what you might otherwise say.
Yes.
So our next slide, I just wanted to go over some of the CIP projects and developer driven projects that we have in construction or soon to begin construction. I want to start with the Crosswinds Water Facility. So for those that aren't completely aware where that's at, you take Windy Hill Road to Crosswind Subdivision, just behind the Midany Center, you'll find a elevated storage tank and a ground storage tank. That project is scheduled to come online July, well, I'm sorry, this month, actually. So and that will be our third take point with GBRA. That's an existing supply. Once that take point comes online, we'll just divvy up amongst the three take points that we have with them that will provide us with more storage, ground and elevated storage just for additional redundancy, and it was part of the agreement with that development as well. The next project is the Hoover Drive Water Facility Expansion. This is the construction, sorry, let me let you know where that's at. This is out at the Anthem Subdivision. So if you take 150 going west out of town, you'll see a big concrete structure coming out of the back of all those houses. That's a 1 million gallon elevated storage tank. That'll be within our pressure plane number three. Again, that'll just supply us with the necessary capacity that that pressure plane is is needing. And the next water facility is the Waterstone Water Facility. So we are going out for bid, we're advertising this beginning tomorrow, so that'll be on CivCast, that'll be on Haze Free Press. And this project is part of our American Rescue Plan Act funding that was provided to the city of Kyle, I think in the approximate amount of $12 million, I believe. That was previously presented to council to go to the 1626 project, but the way that that project had to be funded, we moved the funds over with ARPA, or American Rescue Plan Fund Act, to this water plant, water facility at Waterstone, and that is located within Waterstone Subdivision on the southeast side of town. That project's going to be completed in a couple of different phases under the same contract. So we're calling phase one, and it'll be a ground storage tank and all the necessary equipment to accept Alliance water beginning in April of 2025 and move that into the water distribution system. Going beyond that date, we're going to be continuing construction with an elevated storage tank at that site. So you'll see some construction that continues there, but it's just part of finishing out the project. And you'll see on these projects, especially with the Alliance projects, we're focusing on giving ourselves the ability to take that water in and get it into the system to provide some relief relief to the demands that we're seeing. So moving on, just a quick update on the 1626 project. Construction is going really well. We have an awesome contractor, Archer Western, who's doing a fabulous job for us. We meet with them on a weekly basis, so we're still holding to that February of 2025 timeframe for which we will have the ground storage tank at that site constructed. That will allow us to take Alliance water at that site, move it into the distribution system. Following the construction of that ground storage tank, which is expected to be completed February 25, there'll be a second phase of that project, so you'll continue to see construction at that site. That'll include a bump, a pump building, a generator, chlorine building, and miscellaneous improvements there at 1626. For those that aren't familiar with where 1626 is, this is going to be west of HUB. It'll be a north side of the overpass going over the Robo tracks. Some other improvements to another location called Well Four, or also the La Verde Elevated Storage Tank over off Coles Crossing. That's part of the same 1626 expansion. That site is also going to get a new booster pump station, a chlorine building, a generator, and some other miscellaneous improvements. And that's just part of the larger scheme of what we're doing to make sure we can move this Alliance water efficiently and effectively through our entire water system and make the boat, make the most use of that 1.73 that we're going to be getting in February of This is just a quick photo snap of where the 1626 project is. You can see that secular area there where they're doing some subgrade work. That has since been completed. They're done with the subgrade work, and we are expecting that the tank main, our tank builder is going to be on site in August. So a lot of fun activities are going to be taking place there, a lot of interest in construction once we start seeing that tank going, going, going up.
It's going to be nice.
It's going to be great. So the next update I want to give you is on the Water Master Plan. This is, sorry, make sure I'm following my notes here, on the Water Master Plan, this is another very important project for us, and I don't believe that the city has conducted a Water Master Plan for the entire system to date that I'm aware of. And just know that as we work through this Water Master Plan, we are looking at a five year, we're going to a 10 year, we're looking at a 50 year demand for all the projections that are necessary to help us evaluate the water sources, to help us look at the existing water distribution system, make recommendations for those improvements that are needed. We're going to be providing guidance on future capital improvement projects. We're going to be recommending budgets that are necessary to complete those CIP projects. And then we're also gonna be updating our drought contingency plan and our water water conservation plan. So a lot of efforts are gonna be put into those last two items, the drought contingencies plan and water conservation plan, and it and hopefully a helpful way for our customers and residents to better interpret why we're implementing drought restrictions, how we're implementing these drought restrictions, and what triggers we're using to implement those drought restrictions.
So you're saying water conservation plan is in the the plan for landscaping ordinances and like what is what is a city water conservation plan? Just I don't need that all of it, just an example.
So I don't know that it'll go to ordinances such as what you can plant, what you can't plant. A water conservation plan will be more best management practices, so.
You're talking about internally for your, in terms of like how our operators handle the system?
It will be, it will require some ordinance changes that will affect how and when residents are able to water. I don't believe that it will affect ordinances that planning and zoning may have in terms of what you're allowed to plant and and things such as that. Hopefully I answered your question.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if we want to add anything to that or.
I think one of the challenges that we've had, especially last year with us looking at the extreme drought that we were in, is we didn't have a very sophisticated plan that had trigger points of when when a certain power, uh, water supply was down and it hit a certain benchmark or a demand hit to certain levels, that that would require specific actions and what those actions were to be. So this plan will give us a specific roadmap of with those certain criteria, with certain inputs into the system, if, when would we need to take actions and what would those actions be? It'll be a menu of things, it'll be a policy document that we can bring back to the council and have a discussion on. And I think one of the the things that'll be helpful for us is clarity of when do we go to stage two or three or four to very be very clear about when those things are required. So that's that's the intent behind the document. In addition to that, we will have a lot of landscaping changes. I know we've had comments and and conversations with the council about providing more zerriscaping and some other options about how we do some different landscaping. So that'll be a part of the conversation too, but not necessarily in that document.
It'd be fantastic if that conversation could could marry up the and sync like, how do we have a landscaping policy that allows for people to plant with within the context of knowing that over these periods of time, we'll go into this stage of drought, and what we allow them to plant has to be able to take that so that their yard doesn't die? So if we had a landscaping policy that took into account a Water Master Plan, water conservation model, then maybe we could come up with something that encourages better landscaping practices, because the irrigation and the landscaping is, that's 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 what this whole problem is about. It's not about our drinking water or our cars. It's 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 not our showers, it's not our our toilets, it's our yards.
Sixty percent increase in water usage during the summer months.
Right, but it's completely reasonable for someone to want to water their yard if they have water, if they have grass that will die if they don't. So what we need to come up with is a better way of requiring the landscaping to move forward in such a way that even in the even in our restrictions, they're, because of what they've planted, we know that they're gonna be able to maintain it and water it.
I agree. Good point.
Long term goal, I suppose.
So the next slide is how they anticipated based on our conversation earlier in their presentation. So there is a lot of information on this slide, and I'm gonna do my best to try to explain it the best that I my abilities. So if what we're looking at is our supplies versus what our demands are, so if we concentrated on just the bar graph itself that goes from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight, that is representative of what our supplies are in terms of man gallons per day as we go through the different phases of Alliance, San Marcos, and the supplies that are coming online. So we can see in twenty twenty five, we have a supply that comes online and another supply that comes online, both with Alliance in twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty five. So you can see that's why that that bar graph grows as we get further down the road. The next, if you look at the horizontal line in gray, hopefully that's coming across transparent on the screen, that is representative of our demands with restrictions being applied. So those are restrictions in place, those are real demands and forecasted demands based on growth projections that we have in the system. So as you can see, with our capacities where they are shown, and then where our demands are being shown in the in the in line going across in the gray, we're well below what our demands are well below what our capacities of the system are. And then we also show in the black line going across, that's what our demands would be if we did not have the restrictions that we have in place today. So we are, we are riding the line with the line going across with no restrictions in place, but we we anticipate there to be some restrictions in place in the next five years. We don't expect to be completely out of a a drought free, you know, no, no restrictions in place. There's gonna be, I expect that there'll be something in place. I don't know that they'll be as restrictive as they are today, I would hope not, but we just wanted to try to demonstrate this in a in a visual form, and hopefully that highlights some of the questions you were asking or in their presentation.
I just, I guess what I'm saying is like, maybe think of it like this, if we could only allow for watering maybe according to your model, one day a week in the middle of whenever that drought is, what plants can survive, what plantings can only survive with one, and then literally you can have an arborist, this, put a big, this is what you're allowed, which syncs it all up. I think that that makes the black line go to the gray line without restrictions because the plantings have changed. Scottsdale, for example, receives six inches of rain annually, and they have a water and their, but their plantings are different, and they do not have drought droughts in the traditional sense that we have them where they're in danger of losing all of their foliage.
So that's all I have in my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, back to that other slide, Tim. Thank you.
This last one.
Yeah, so I remember this was really important because we talked about it last year and we're watching it as our other water supplies come on. And I was wondering, Brian, is it possible to maybe look at this one, since it's in million gallons per day over these years? Can we have that number like in residential million gallons per day and commercial million gallons per day so that the, I guess, so that people who ask me all the time, why are we building so much? We can look at what piece of it is really our population is growing and using this water, and then what piece of it is commercial use that's contributing to the getting close to that threshold piece?
Sure.
And I know it might be hard because there's larger population of people, but there's also commercial, you know, there's some population of commercial out there, and they don't necessarily level each other.
Yeah, we we can definitely break out demand and show you certainly historically what it's been by different classifications of meters. We can, we can show that. The demand projections going forward probably gets a little bit more difficult to do that, but we can, we can take a crack at that and look at that with S T V. They've got a very capable staff that they can help us work through some of those numbers.
Right, because what I'm getting is the concern of the water rates that they've people might experience, and they're gonna say, okay, well, why, why are my water rates going up so much? They're going up here because we're growing, this has contributed to our growth use, and this piece has contributed to our industrial use here.
Yes, and you're on August sixth, you're gonna get a more water information. You'll have a detailed presentation on our water rate study that we've been doing to look at all the different classifications of accounts and what their costs are versus what their revenues are and any gaps. How do you want to solve that? And there'll be options for you to consider. So yes, sir, we can certainly provide you with more information as we go along. I think over the next few months, you're gonna be having a lot more of these kinds of presentations to give you lots of details on it. And I think the Water Master Plan, we've been very impressed with S T V, and as they bring forward information, we'll be able to provide you with a comprehensive view of this. That'll be very helpful.
Councilor Harris.
I know that you've provided in the past and 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 will continue to do so, the breakdown between residential and commercial use. And you've also presented to us at some point the difference between per capita use of apartment dwellers and single family homes. And I thought one of the things that I have not seen, but I kind of think I know, is industrial use. I really don't think we have any big industrial water users, but we certainly could, and we probably need to be addressing that through ordinance as much as the state will allow us to do so at this point before we start getting those requests from the high let, high use groups.
Okay, sure, we'll be glad to do that.
All right, thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. It was very good discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up.
I have a quick question, I'm sorry.
Oh, Councilor, Councilor Parsley, I'm so sorry.
No, you're good. So, Tim, I don't know if you were, because I lost connection twice, and I don't know if you were able to go into the details about the watering times, because I know that's, I know you touched on that whenever we had the water meeting with Aaron City Hall, but there's a lot of the residents have talked about that, you know, what is, what is the best, what are the best times to water, when they are allowed to water, because I know we can water by hand almost every day, and we have specific times that we can do that. And then we have the every other week system for those that have irrigation systems. But what I want to really address, and I know that we discussed at some point that maybe you guys were gonna talk to Texas State people to see what are the best times to water. What I want is for residents to be able to really take advantage of the times that they have to water and for them to understand what are, why are we doing what we're doing with the schedule.
Sure, so so we, right now with automatic irrigation at seven P M. to ten P M., we know that's very restrictive, and it may not be the most popular time. Unfortunately, we have system limitations that that we're working against in running a water system. So we have normal peaking factors within the water system. People come home, they take showers, they bathe, they wash, do their laundry, whatever people do. So that's a peaking factor. People wake up in the morning, that's another peaking factor, same thing, they're ready to go to do, go about their day. We take all those things into considerations and and then we have to allow time for the system to to rebuild. So we're letting those tanks fill back up. And so if we don't allow for that time, and we get hit with the peaking factor to one of those times, then we jump to a point to where we don't have the storage that we need because we have this high demand, and now you're getting hit with that, on top of that with irrigation that you're allowing. So that's, that's the main reason why we've set these limitations that we have in place today. And then from a patrolling perspective, that that also went into play, but it's more so just trying to operate the system with best management practices that we have available to us and make sure that we have adequate storage in those tanks. So unfortunately, I understand that they're not the most popular times to irrigate, but that that's what we can make available to residents where we where we have, where we sit today.
All right, thank you. I just wanted for those residents that were not able to join us during that meeting to be able to hear what the reasons are. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tim.
Mayor, we're going, just, Tim, real quick, how are we in the A, what do you call it with our smart meters? Where are we with that technology right now? How much of the city have we covered already?
So out of the fourteen, approximately just over fourteen thousand meters that we have in place, we are just shy of three thousand meters that will have to be replaced or the radios to be replaced in order to have them AMI ready. We are having conversations, executive team and I, to talk about next steps, and we hope to bring something to you on that very, very soon.
And and the reason I bring up the AMI, because it's important, this, the metering system through AMI process is gonna allow us to detect leaks, they're gonna be able to help residents detect leaks at their home, they'll be able to get that information on their cell phones. It's gonna be a system that's gonna help us save water in the long run. So I think you'll see less water restrictions as AMI comes onboard. We're gonna be able to, as a city and as residents, be able to conserve and watch what our water usage is in real time. So really excited about where we're moving forward on that. You know, I I know that's, we're doing it in house, and I'm glad that we're doing that, and I commend the staff for all the work they've done on the A, the smart meter system, because I know it's gonna be something that's gonna definitely save us in the long run. We're being able to detect those leaks where we lose precious water is gonna be important, so thank you.
That is a priority for us when we look at that system is to ensure that customers have a dashboard to do all the things that you just mentioned. If you have a leak, they get notified, we get notified as a utility to make sure that they don't want to pay a high bill, and we don't want them wasting water. So that's definitely what we're wanting to implement.
Councilor Zereng.
Yeah, one last question, Tim, sorry, but I think this was an important question. All of this is drinking water that we're paying for and buying and using. Are any of our developers using this potable water for building? Or is this all non-potable in phase three that they have to bring in themselves? Or is there, are they using drinking water to build? Because that's what people get upset about. And I want to say to them, they have to bring in pot, non-potable water.
For construction water purposes?
Yeah, construction, the roads that they're building, the, you know, their, their, their parking lots.
Sure.
I I know there's probably some, but what what percentage are we on?
For developer, developer driven projects, we are not allowing the use of construction water that is a potable water source. We are requiring them to seek that source from another utility. I can't say that's potable or non-potable, but we're not allowing.
How they, they're getting it, and they're bringing it themselves, whether that's drinking or non-drinking.
Yes, sir.
Is that, can you clarify on that, Brian? I mean, because I thought the phase threes, that they're bringing in their own water.
Well, that's right.
We're not giving them our drinking water.
They're not using our water, I think is what Tim's trying to say, is for construction purposes, they're required to bring it in from another source. And one of the projects that we're working on is to provide reclaimed water for construction projects, and that'll be a process that actually it helps the contractors, it's a cheaper source of water, and it provides a revenue source for us that offsets the cost to our ratepayers. So we're looking at bringing that online relatively soon to start that process, but right now there's no potable water from the city of Kyle that's being used for construction projects. There may be some potable water outside of our city that they're they're trucking in, but that's their their cost, they're trucking it in.
I mean, obviously in a sprinkler, it gets used, but that's a sprinkler use, that's not.
Right, but that's different than the construction water, right?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. We sure? Okay, all right.
Sorry, that was important.
I want to keep going, too. I love this subject. All right, thank you, Tim. All right, next up is Jen, item number five, receive a report, hold discussion, find staff direction regarding preliminary conceptual designs, amenities, and financial options for the proposed Kyle Sportsplex. Mr. Elizondo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jesse Elizondo, Assistant City Manager. We have a strong group of individuals with us tonight who have worked very hard and are very excited to present to you all what is truly a landmark project for the city of Kyle, and that is the Kyle Sportsplex conceptual designs and renderings to show you all and to elicit your feedback and discussion on everything that you see tonight. Now, when it comes to the Sportsplex conversation, are we using the clicker? When it comes to the Sportsplex discussion, this is something that's been top of mind for council over the last few meetings, several months, we've been talking about it quite a bit, but as has been pointed out from different council members as we talked about it, the need for this Sportsplex and recreation in the city goes back years, and in some cases more than a decade, when you look at the explosive unprecedented growth that Kyle has gone through and the fact that our city, from a demographic standpoint, skews very young, so that that young demographic, young city compared to those around us, and the grow, the growth in Kyle, there's an always an ever-present need for sports facilities, for sports fields, for amenities, for tournaments, and both outdoor, which is very important for programming, but more specifically for indoor, not only because we're in central Texas and it gets extremely hot outside, but also there is nothing in Kyle that has indoor sports facilities. And we're not just talking about young, young leagues, young teams, we're talking about youth all the way through high quality league, high level league play, and in some cases even beyond that. The the strategic plan, the draft of the strategic vision for the for the city says that Kyle will be a diverse and inclusive city that features a vibrant and affordable and safe community that provides opportunities for all. And this Sportsplex project is a huge step forward in advancing that vision for the city. Now, to bring us to present day, on June eighth, the city council had a meeting and gave staff very specific direction to go get consultant partners to look at a conceptual design and renderings of a Sportsplex and the identity and what it could look like, and then also had a large discussion related to the financial viability of that Sportsplex and and the drawl of a Sportsplex. If we built something like that, what the drawl both locally and how it would support the community locally, but also regionally and even statewide, depending on the different programs and courts that we have there. So tonight you'll be hearing from Mike Thiessen and Ryan Sheridan from Hunnitt Partners, who we we have worked in close proximity with as they did that financial viability study. They looked at market data and Marcus market analysis to look at that drawl, but also to look at the economic impact of all of those, if you have that drawl, not just the revenue that's generated by that indoor-outdoor facility, but the dollars that come in as teams and tournaments are drawn into the city and those, that economic impact that's that's put right back here into Kyle. They've worked hand in hand with Stan Tech, who is doing the conceptual designs and renderings. And so you have the aesthetic and the look and the the feel of the Sportsplex working hand in hand with the financial viability aspect of it. You will also hear from Mark Maldonado from Stan Tech, who will bring those those renderings and those conceptual designs for you all to see. We're very excited to unveil them. But also, I want to point out that it's not just renderings and designs. Mark and his team and the city staff have worked very hard to make sure that this is not a cut and paste approach. We didn't just go find a Sportsplex that looks nice and works well financially and drop it here, but really took a look at the vision and the identity of who Kyle is and what Kyle is, and what it would look like to infuse that into a Sportsplex that would have that local, regional, and even statewide drawl. Now, all of this did not happen in a vacuum. Every step of the way as we as we went forward, even though we were working on a very crunched timeline, we would not take one step forward without without eliciting as much community feedback and stakeholder feedback as possible. One of the things that we looked at first and foremost was our Parks Master Plan. The Parks Master Plan calls out a handful of specific needs and gaps in the community, and also even posits a Sportsplex and what that would mean to the community. Now, our Parks Master Plan is from twenty sixteen, and so there is an item on your consent agenda today that we feel is very important, which is to also update our Parks Master Plan, which we have an amendment with Stan Tech to update that. And as Mark will walk through towards the end of the presentation, that the, looking at the Sportsplex and what it would mean from a programming standpoint, along with along with our Parks Master Plan, really go hand in hand to look at our parks from a high-level holistic view so that we're we're looking at the, getting as much community feedback as possible and looking at what we're building from the indoor and outdoor Sportsplex, along with all of our parks and how they serve our community. So that's on your consent agenda tonight. And then we also looked at community surveys and how they have interacted with the citizens as far as what what our needs in parks and what has been mentioned. And then also elements of our city comprehensive plan as far as land use and the location. Earlier this year, we had a CSL International, CSL International did a market and feasibility study that really outlined the rapid industry growth when it comes to the sports leagues in our area, both locally and regionally, and then also highlighted that there is a limited inventory in this area for sports complexes and of course, a high demand and interest in our, for indoor and outdoor, specifically indoor. And that is also due, speaks to the growth of Kyle, the unexpected, unprecedented growth of Kyle. We had a design charrette in June that had a huge number of stakeholders in there that looked at visions, goals and priorities of the of the Sportsplex, but also looked at the opportunities, economic impact, and again, that identity of what this would be. So that it's not, it's not some other Sportsplex. It's Kyle's sports indoor and outdoor Sportsplex. And then we had a host of stakeholder meetings through June and July that we met with every single city council member, elected officials, our partners with the county. We had the Sportsplex Task Force Look at This, who were originally set up to look at the Sportsplex as a whole. We met with development community partners and got feedback from them and then also multiple intergovernmental partners. So I will, in in just a second, turn it over to Mike, who's going to talk about that financial viability section. But I will remind you all that at the end, when we talk about next steps and where we're going, I really want, we really need to elicit that feedback, those ideas from you guys and have a good, healthy discussion on everything that you see tonight because we are, as you all know, we're looking at a timeline of early, mid-August to get some language on the, for a ballot, a bond election in November. And so everything that we say tonight, everything, the feedback that we get from you guys, the discussion, we can, we can go back and tweak what we have here. This is all conceptual. Everything that we're showing you tonight is open for change. Everything is on the table. Anything can be tweaked. Anything can be taken away or added. So as we go through this, there's a lot here. We're going to throw a lot at you guys. But make, we, at the end, we want all of that feedback. Don't hold back so that we can take it back and start to make changes and tweaks to all this plan. So I will hand it over to Mike. Here he is right here. Ryan.
Jesse, are you going to click? Thank you very much. My name is Mike Thiessen. I'm a project executive with Hunnand. And before we get started, I just want to make sure that I tip my hat to you guys. You have pushed this project to launch since June 8th. You made us work on Fridays. Our staff was not happy about that. But in the effort to get you the information that you needed today, your staff did a great job of pushing us and making us get you the information. Everything we're going to tell you today is factual as we know it today, but that's subject to change in terms of whether it's a design or the change in the elements that would go into the facilities or the fields or anything like that. So take that with a grain of salt and everything's malleable. But more than anything, hopefully, that we're going to give you some information that you can help make good financial and design element decisions moving forward. So a little bit about Hunnand. We are a national real estate advisory firm. We have sports convention, projects throughout the country. We, we particularly Ryan is probably considered an expert in the youth sports field and and indoor/outdoor complexes. But this is a list of some of the things we do right now. We've done about 120, which he'll get into more details. We have a firm of 30-plus employees. We're based out of Chicago. We are doing a tremendous amount of work in Texas right now, probably because, as Jesse said, Texas is exploding. As we looked at the demographic and economic profile between Austin and San Antonio as we're talking about this, you're one of the top three fastest-growing markets. Believe it or not, one of the other ones that we look at that we're doing some work in right now is between Denver and Cheyenne, Wyoming. So I don't know if you want to compare yourself to that market or not compare yourself to that market, but the expansive growth north of Denver into that frontal range into Cheyenne. And then obviously Nashville is the other really fast-growing market. So you're in good company one way or the other. If you're not the leader, you're at least in the top three. Sorry about that. So see, these are some of the sports complex that we've worked on. I'm going to let Ryan explain most of that. I will be back at a later date, but I will let Ryan do this. Ryan, like I said, is probably one of the experts in sports facilities throughout the country. So we're lucky to have him on our team and we're lucky to work on this project.
Yes, thank you all. Really appreciate the time. Just wanted to set the stage, just showing off some of the other projects that we worked on, indoor, outdoor, mix of both at the same time across the country, within Texas, DFW, Waco, all over the state with a focus on not only the financial feasibility, but the economic impact of what these projects can bring. So again, indoor, indoor facilities, anywhere from four courts all the way up to 36, working in towns of population of 4,000 all the way up to the DFW metroplex and other major cities across the country. So a large array and scope of different projects that we've worked on and just happy to bring the expertise to the table here. So when we were brought onboard, we really took a look at at some readily available data to us from some previous studies and gave our feedback on what we agreed with, what we disagreed with. But I think a big change from when we joined the project is that there is a consideration for potential ICE to be incorporated. We went down that rabbit hole and evaluated the likelihood of what should be considered there. And we kind of scaled the project back with the StanTech team as well as the internal city folks to focus on the indoor court aspect of a project as well as the outdoor fields that would be associated with that. So we zeroed in on the relevant supply of indoor and outdoor facilities from that sense. And then we also took a look at, I'd say, eight to 10 national case study facilities. But for today, we kind of shortened that list to really keep it relevant for a couple of different reasons for what we want to talk about today. So before we get into some specific analysis for the facility in Bryan, Memphis, and then really close in Round Rock, we just wanted to set the stage. So really, when you're talking about these projects, there's a, there's a sliding scale of on one end, you're talking about locally focused venues, where that's a rec center or a smaller venue that's really catered towards usage for the local community. Now, on the other end, as you really increase the size of a facility, you're getting into the neighborhood of of that economic development and tourism, sports tourism. So there's always a balance in these projects and it really takes a different shape based on who's leading the project and operating the facility. But just to set the stage for how these kinds of projects lay out, whenever we do a study, we talk with national tournament operators as well as operators of comparable facilities. And we've just kind of laid it out here to show that in order to be considered for regional events, such as tournaments that drive people in and really drive those room nights and economic impact to a community. From an outdoor field perspective, usually tournament operators require at least 16 fields to be on site. Anything under that is really considered locally focused. You're still hosting local tournaments, but it's primarily utilized for league play and and youth sports in the community. From an indoor perspective, usually they require a minimum of eight basketball courts, which translates to 16 volleyball courts. And then locally, you kind of get more into that neighborhood when you've got four to eight. So we just wanted to set the stage here because we're going to look at some different facilities. This one was completed in 2022 in Bryan, Texas, the Legends Event Center. This is operated by sports facilities companies. They're respected as one of the best in the business in terms of operations. So they're one of the national operators that has access to a tournament network that they're routing different events to all across the country. They're known for being very efficient in their operations. Monday through Thursday, they're really focusing on catering to the community. And then typically from those Friday to Sundays, they're really wiring those tournaments in there that are going to drive the economic impact that are required to help support these facilities from the public sector's input. So taking a look at the visitation that a facility like this has generated since opening in Bryan, their visitation data from last year shows that roughly 30% of their total visitation, or 105,000 visits, was generating, generated from over 60 miles away. So the map that you can see on the left-hand side there shows significant visitation from San Antonio, Austin, DFW and Houston. And on the the bottom right, you can see the visitation by the day of week there. So the green bars are showing folks that drove from over 60 miles away to come and visit this facility. And then Monday through Thursday, those blue and red bars are showing everybody that visited within 10 miles and then between 10 and 60 miles. So we'd consider those to be the more local and regional where the green bars would show long-distance visitation. So since opening, this facility has generated significant economic impact for the city in terms of driving that sports tourism, especially on those weekend dates for tournaments. Another one that we've worked closely with, the operating company for this one, Eastern Sports Management. This is located in Memphis, a little bit larger than the size of the facility that we're talking about here today. But nonetheless, another great example of a facility that since opening has been able to contribute a lot to generating economic impact and sports tourism for the city. One that we really wanted to focus on, though, located in Round Rock, been a very, very successful city in terms of of driving sports tourism. But before we get into the visitation, just kind of wanted to to bring back the topic of of field count and how that kind of impacts how these facilities operate. So their indoor facility there is six basketball courts or 12 volleyball, which typically is coming in undersized at what we would say from those tournament operators. They like to have, again, that minimum eight courts. But on the outdoor perspective, they have a plethora of outdoor fields, turf, grass, diamonds. But we tended to focus our geo-fencing visitation analysis on the outdoor fields because we're not considering diamonds as a part of this project. So when you look at the difference in visitation, this is shown from the indoor facility. So roughly 24% of their visitation comes from over 60 miles away. Again, they're under the threshold that tournament operators typically require. But then when you shift to the analysis for the outdoor fields where they're over that limitation, that jumps up to over 45%. So again, they focused more on the aspect of driving tournaments and long-distance visitation with their outdoor facilities, but their indoor facilities are contributing still some, but significantly more usage from the local community. And I just want to point your attention to, this is a great example because it's in, within the MSA, but it's also, you can see such a great example of it really is pulling high numbers from Dallas, from Houston, all the way from San Antonio. And especially as Mike alluded to, really servicing the I-35 corridor between San Antonio and Austin. So one facility that we wanted to bring up that's been a longtime client of ours, have a great relationship with them is the most visited youth sports complex in the U.S., Grand Park up in Westfield, Indiana. What this has done for their community and the surrounding county is is really just, it's remarkable. We're currently in the midst of a roughly $200 million master plan that's going to be planned for just outside of the facility so that they can capture to a greater extent all of the visitation that they produce. Again, this is a very large facility, but one that we know that you're all familiar with up in Westfield. So as you look at the visitation here, again, the most visited even over Disney's ESPN Wild World of Sports located in Orlando. Since 2017, they've attracted roughly 38 million visitors into Westfield, which has completely changed the overall landscape of Hamilton County. Westfield's growing at an annual rate of 14%, and it really has been a huge contributor to the overall profile of their community. So over the past couple of years, they typically average around five to six million visits a year. This really has increased the development of their hotels, their restaurants, and again, working on that destination overall master plan that they really know that they need in order to elevate themselves and stay relevant in the sports tourism world, keeping people coming back. Primarily, their market is within the Midwest. But again, going back to those maps that were previously shown, they're drawing national visitation to their events, but located amongst all the major markets in the Midwest. And working in places like Ohio on other projects, they mentioned that they drive back and forth every day in some instances because there aren't hotels available for folks to stay in the area. So again, a massively impactful project and just wanted to talk a little more about that since we know you're familiar. So Mike, if you want to talk about the funding mechanisms, it'd be great.
Thank you, Ryan. A little story related to Grand Park and why they're embarking on the $26 million master plan is immediately adjacent to the Grand Park complex is because the mayor of two adjacent cities has said, we love Grand Park. Their fellow hotels are eating at our restaurants to the south. Their fellow hotels and eat to the restaurants in the north. And Grand Park goes, wait a second. Why are those people leaking out of our Grand Park area? We need to master plan and create a pedestrian-friendly, family-friendly destination within that area itself. So they want to keep them in Westfield and stop the leaking even though they are adjacent cities. So they see the economic impact and they see the value of the sports tourism and that's their, that's their next step. So there's always a question of how do you pay for things? These are just really four examples. And the common thing among all of them is really it's a function of the increment. So you've got two of them that are in Ohio. Obviously, Round Rock was a hotel motel tax, which comes directly from those staying from outside of the, outside of the city that are coming in to visit, as Ryan said, both the indoor and the outdoor complexes. And then obviously in Grand Park, that's a professional sports district authority. So there was some practice facilities and some things like that which allowed them to put a tax on that overlay, which allowed people then to create an increment. And that is funded with the visitors that come throughout that area. The other big question that comes up on most of these is operations and government and governance. So there's always that debate between do we want to be economically viable and act like the private sector, which may or may not hurt the local residents, or do we want to be local resident focused, which may or may not hurt our ability to attract national, national tournaments and to be private sector profit motivated. And there is a balance, but the balance is usually directed from the top. As you see within Grand Park, they have plenty of use on the fields during Monday through Thursday, midday Friday, then Friday, Saturday and Sunday, use it as an economic development tool. So the same little league players that are playing on Monday, Tuesday, sometimes roll directly to a tournament on the weekend. The people that they play on the weekend that are coming from Ohio, they're coming from Detroit, they're coming from Chicago, they're coming from St. Louis. So while it's a youth field as well, it's an economic development issue. So we wanted to talk about this in terms of structure and process. It's either private management or it's a subsection of of the city government, municipal government of some sort. And in every case, there's pros and cons. Local private management, there's always a community focus. There's a focus on little league. There's a focus on youth soccer. There's a focus on team volleyball. But have you lost the focus on your economic impact? There is the balance. One of the things that you find typically within the local or the government focus is they don't have that network of connections within the sports tourism and team promotions that will bring an event to a municipality, to a town, that's going to bring those outside visitors. And that's something that you have to balance. If you have the private sector focus, they do have access. They bring in managers from the outside. They're profit motivated. They do work their network. They go to trade shows. They go to sports tourism trade shows. They go to youth trade shows. But sometimes they do forget about that this is a locally funded, local sports complex as well. So part of that is how is that, how is that contract structured within private management versus how it is if it's a, if it's a governmental division or a government department? And those are all things you'll have to work through as you go through and you figure out what's the best for Kyle. But the biggest thing related to this is that there's the opportunity. And as I said before, you have pushed us and StanTech to give you information and make informed decisions, which I think is, even though there's a lot to go, you're going to have information that most people don't have at this point in the process.
And so two things before we get into just the preliminary numbers. Again, these are preliminary based on what the current thought of the design of a facility would be right now. And two, again, just want to make it clear, we are not operators of facilities, just third-party consultants helping to give and provide information based on on the market. So when we are forming our projections, we do work closely with operators of of like facilities or comparable facilities to help understand the metrics that they use as well as to understand how their facilities are performing. So typically, when operating a facility of this size, it takes about five years to stabilize an event schedule. So as operations become more efficient, employees get a feel for the facility and the event schedule can be properly worked out. We typically project that in the first couple of years, the facility's losing money in terms of the bottom line performance. But as as operations become more efficient, the goal of these facilities ultimately is to break even and to be that tool for the community. These things across the country are not money-printing machines. They're not really full-service to stand by themselves in all, in most cases. But by year, by year five, we typically see that facilities of this size, given the proper management, are able to break even and oftentimes aren't a significant burden on that bottom net operating line. So what we do is we typically project an event schedule that's driven by tournaments and then local usage and hourly usage. But the tournaments that are projected to be run out of a facility ultimately spill down into the room night generation projection. So by year five, upon that event stabilization, projecting, again, preliminary, preliminarily roughly 47,500 room nights generated grossly by the, by the facility on an annual basis. So what that translates to is the mix of local and out-of-town spending that gets you to your economic impact projection. So again, So again, preliminary projections at 786 million over a 30-year timeline. That results in a combination of direct, indirect, and induced spending of about 1.2 billion. In terms of the net new earnings generated from economic impact and spending from the complex, looking at roughly 552 million over a 30-year timeline, with an average of 264 jobs in the community generated by the spending from the visitation to the venue.
Sir, can you give me the numbers in the first one? Because I did have a hard time trying to follow it when I was reviewing it.
Yeah.
Just to make sure, these numbers, I can compute the, the first one?
Yes, sir.
Are you talking in the millions or thousands? Because it was, it didn't make sense to me.
So these are in millions. So for example...
No, go to the other slide, the one where you said...
Oh, here? These are in thousands. So for example, 267,000 of a loss in year one, but by year four, $91,000 in profit. So just breaking even.
Okay, I thought that was weird. I didn't know we were talking about millions or what when we moved to the next slides.
Understood.
So these are hundreds?
I can, I can make that more, more easy to, to compute. I'm sorry about that. So overall, economic impact flows into the spending in the tax streams at the city level. So assuming a 7% hotel tax and a 1.5% city sales tax, we've projected over a 30-year timeline, preliminarily roughly 31.2 million in economic impact to the city. And then as Mike laid out, oftentimes there are potential tax streams that can be considered and applied. So for instance, just wanted to show the impact of a potential venue tax if it was to be instilled, giving a roughly additional 2% to activity at the venue, has the potential to generate another 5.5 million in economic impact, bringing the total to 36.7. So over a 30-year time period, as it stands currently, projecting roughly 31.2 million in economic impact at the city level. And that is it from the Hunnens side. So happy to answer any questions related to the study there. Do you have any questions?
We'll keep going and then ask you.
Perfect. Go ahead. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ryan and Mike. No offense, but now on to the exciting part here. Mark Bosnato, Senior Principal with StanTech for the record. Just to set the stage, so StanTech's scope in this, in this exercise was to create the visioning and feasibility study and to do it in a really short time, in approximately four weeks. So what is a visioning and feasibility study? It's basically a study that is able to compute opportunities, constraints, the possibility of what this site could be, and potentially what it could look like. None of this is set in stone, as Jesse mentioned. There's still a lot more to come, a lot more engagement, community outreach to come, which I'll get into in a little bit more detail. But it was a quick, high-level overview of the possibilities of what a, this site, along with some of the amenities that we're proposing, could bring to the city of Kyle. So when we talk about the site, we're talking about the approximately 90-acre site that's straddled by FM 1626, just north of the brick-and-mortar district. We, we do find that the site is not only a park for the city of Kyle, but by definition, the 90 acres consider it a regional park. We've outlined the walkability of, of what impacts this site, or improvements to the site could have to the community, not only from a local scale, but also a regional scale. So the, the circles here show a 10, 20, and 45-minute walk. And what you'll see, it does encompass a lot of, of the city from a walkable and accessibility, connectivity perspective. When we looked at the data from the previous parks master plan and, and the community outreach stakeholder engagement that happened, along with some of the engagement that we, we created and facilitated, we, we saw a lot of common themes. And some of those key, key themes were that approximately 80% of residents of Kyle wanted more indoor recreation. Approximately 86% of residents felt like we needed more parks and more recreation opportunities. You know, we also looked at national standards. The National Recreation and Parks Association is, is the standard practice across the U.S. And if you look at the numbers on the right, the, the thousand residents, let me rephrase this. The number of residents per thousand, per park should be about 1,500 residents. And right now, because Kyle doesn't have enough parkland, it's about 2,850. So that really tells us that we need more parks, just from a national standards perspective. Also, looking at national standards, if you look at the bottom graph, we looked at NRPA standards, along with City of Kyle, in terms of facilities and amenities that are provided. And what you see is the bottom number shows a gap in almost every category except three. For example, we are lacking 13.4 flat fields to be at a national standard for a city of your size. So we took this with a grain of salt for a little bit, and we said, "Okay, well, we know that there's needs, we know that we want to improve." Now, we also need to realize that we don't have to cram everything into this one site, you know? And that's where the comprehensive parks, recreation, and open sites master plan will come in later, which I'll talk to in just a bit. But we did ask some simple questions. For example, what are some of the amenities that you feel are missing in the parks and recreation system? What are some amenities you would like to see in this site specifically? Or what are your top priorities of amenities that you need to see first before anything else is rolled out? And this is just a small little infographic that depicts a lot of that story that we heard and a lot of those key themes that we heard. But what you'll see is that it's a lot of different amenities that are multi-generational, that are friendly to the community at large, that also hit different demographics. We then zoomed out, and we were able to, to channel the project vision. What are the big opportunities here? What is that vision? You know, like Jesse mentioned, a copy and paste approach doesn't work. So we really wanted to create a unique sense of place, but also a project and, and catalyst for the city of Kyle that makes it their own, that the community can embrace. And out of this, we were able to derive the vision that reads that the Kyle Sports Complex is to create a unique destination that embodies the proud and vibrant spirit of our community. Sports Complex will offer a variety of amenities, sports, and foster an inclusive and connected environment for all. And here are some of the key words that really stood out during that engagement and facilitation session. Beyond that, we really looked at, what, what are the goals? What is the potential here? And what do we want this project to really stand for? You know, we wanted it to be multipurpose, and we wanted to create a multipurpose destination. We wanted it to be connected, you know, foster connectivity and accessibility throughout the community. For it to be active and enhance community activities. For it to be a economic catalyst and foster economic prosperity. Lastly, we wanted it to have strong identity, you know, that has strong branding and community identity and storytelling, unique to Kyle. So as we did a deep dive into the site specifically, we realized quickly that there was a lot of great opportunities, but also a lot of constraints. And one thing that needs to be mentioned is that this is not just a blank canvas where we can just go crazy and, and just start plopping fields left and right. It's, we're dealing with a lot of challenges, drainage, accessibility, environmental concerns that, that we will definitely need to look at a closer look during the master planning phase, that, that'll come after, after this phase here. So on to, to what the concept is. So in front of you, you see the, just a site concept with some highlights. Overall, this concept highlights four basketball courts, 17 bleachers, 30 pavilion shades, five youth turf fields, 11 pickleball courts, 10 full-size turf fields, four playgrounds, two miles of trails, Vibe Trail that's been expanded, five volleyball courts, five shovel, shovelball board courts, along a lot of natural and open spaces throughout. Additionally, you have some buildings and indoor facilities that I'll elaborate in just a moment, but what you see is that we really try to maximize the use of the site. Looking at, looking at Cromwell, you see an expansion of Cromwell North that cuts through the site and, and provides accessibility to Rickertson. You see an approximately 750 space parking garage that, that could be proposed into, into this concept, approximately 100,000 square foot indoor recreational facility. You see a large plaza space in front of the recreational facility that the community can embrace, but also can attend even if they're not interested in athletics or any kind of sports leisure. You see a variety of, of sport venues, but the highlight is number four, which we're calling the championship field. It's a multi-use field that can be strived for football and soccer, but it's a place where the community can come together and really celebrate those winning moments. It's also a great place to, to have some spectatorship, to look from the interior of the recreational facility out into that space. But also has the flexibility to, to potentially host concerts or be active in a number of variety, a number of ways. Lastly, you see the, the Vibe Trail being expanded and connected overall to the site, which provides an additional two miles of trail crossing under FM 1626, improving connectivity and accessibility for all. And then lastly, on the right side, you see a variety of turf fields that, and some that are multi-use fields, along with additional parking areas and retention areas. So this is a bird's eye view or an aerial perspective of what the, the concept could potentially look like. Again, nothing is set in stone. This is just something that penciled out to say, yes, this is what a program could look like on a site like this. This view is taken from the north side of the brick-and-mortar district, looking over FM 1626. But we really want to promote the activation of these public realm spaces and interweaving them into some of these sport and recreation facilities, along with the improved vehicular and pedestrian connectivity throughout the entire site. Here's your first glimpse of what something like this would look like. This would be, this view would be standing at the expansion of Cromwell in front of the indoor recreation area. What you see is an improved public realm that not only expands the shared use path north on Cromwell, but provides this huge plaza space for the community to embrace, but be active in. We imagine this place being extremely flexible and vibrant, especially because there are two smaller food and beverage buildings that anchor the plaza on both sides, on the north and south. Here's another view, zooming into that plaza space, and you can see that, you know, Plaza offers an interactive splash pad where we pay homage to the Kyle Water Tower. You also see at a distance a huge Jumbotron in, at the facade of the indoor recreation facility, where you can promote local games, you can do championship, you know, awards, you can do a variety of things. But we really imagine the space being activated by not only the indoor recreation center and the perimeter program, but also a lot of the open elements that, that the community can use at large. Expanding our journey north on Cromwell, this would be a proposed new vehicular and pedestrian bridge with a undercrossing of the trail, of the Vibe Trail, where we would start promoting some, some murals, some public art, some storytelling. For example, the bull here, we imagine, you know, some kind of sculpture that pays homage to the agriculture and livestock.
In Kyle, it's a donkey, actually, I believe, right?
Oh.
I think, no, I'm serious, sir. We, we were the jackass capital of the world at one point. I think Mr. W., I think Mr. W. has just left, but I've heard others have said that. Hey, real quick, is this, where you see City of Kyle Sports Complex, is that 1626?
Nope.
That's the new Cromwell extension that would run through it?
Correct. If you look at the top right corner, we have a red view triangle of where, where that view is taken. So going, going back...
Hang on, so that's the, that's the bridge that goes over the low-water crossing, essentially?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just north of the parking garage in this image here. So the expansion of Cromwell, vehicular and pedestrian, you start bringing in some branding elements, not only with, with the branding of the complex, but the, the storytelling in regards to art, mural sculptures. You, you have a sample of some outdoor fitness equipment, lighting, trail seating areas. This is a proposed tunnel under FM 1626 that would help connect the, the west and the east side. We are looking at approximately 175-foot tunnel to improve connectivity and accessibility throughout the site. Side note, this would be a great candidate for the Tech dot Transportation Alternative Grant that could help facilitate some of the cost on a project like this, but stands for a lot of the same principles, but will definitely help promote the connectivity and accessibility at large for the site. Zooming into the, to the facilities and the, the buildings themselves, I wanted to highlight, you know, as previously, previously mentioned, we have 100,000 square foot indoor recreation facility. That building alone will be composed of 61,000-plus square feet of multipurpose courts, eight full-size courts, to be exact. You would have a 2,000-square-foot indoor track, 6,000 square feet of community rooms, over 1,000 square feet of catering kitchen, and then over 5,000 square feet of open workout areas. Like I mentioned previously, you have two buildings anchoring the north and south end of the plaza, they're adjacent to Cromwell. And once about 5,000 square feet, you have another one about 7,500 square feet. We imagine those being also like food and beverage, that we could either have retailers or vendors come in, but to really help activate that space and, and provide that seasonal interest. So as you can tell from, from this, from this plan view here, there's a lot more happening than just a sports field. On the backside, along the FM 26 side, you see sand volleyball and, and additional trails, and then, and then that championship field just to the north of that. Here's a perspective, standing from Cromwell, looking at the indoor recreation facility. So this is looking east here, and, and you see that repetition of that Jumbotron, you see a large overhang. We really wanted to, to provide the, the transparency of activation and use in, in sports and multi-generational play. So you see glass facade with that large overhang to provide shade. In this concept here, we have an interactive water feature or splash pad here where, where the community can come together and really use this space, you know, throughout, throughout the year. You also see a lot of flexibility in, in these spaces where you can program them very differently. Another view here, zooming in just a little bit more, again, with a 100,000-square-foot two-story building. This view here is just slightly north, next to that 5,000-square-foot building where, where we proposed food and beverage, but you start seeing, seeing how that indoor space really starts spilling outdoors, spilling back indoor, and, and really working cyclical to, to really provide you that economic catalyst that we, that we do envision. Looking at the north side, this would be a, a view of that championship field. We're standing just beyond the, the bleachers and, and stands that, that we saw in the plan view. And then this view would be from FM 1626, where you can see the volleyball courts, that glass facade, that two-story glass facade, you know, and, and the adjacent parking lot and additional trails that, that would accompany this particular concept. Now, as I mentioned, you know, we, we worked really fast, we worked very high level. It was a visioning and feasibility study, but we were able to put a very high-level opinion of probable construction cost. I will caveat that we also looked at other infrastructure that would be required to either improve or expand in order to make this concept happen. So these numbers don't just reflect improvements to the 90 acres themselves. For example, it, it includes the expansion of Cromwell from Avenue A all the way up to Ricker, and includes the tunnel crossing of FM 1626 and et cetera. Here, with a large contingency, just because there are so many unknowns, you know? But that said, I don't want this to, to, to be an extreme shock because we will sharpen the pencil, we will go into a deeper dive, where easily, that number is going to come down, come down, come down, as we refine the concept and get into a much more schematic design, which is the next phase. So how do all these different things work together? So we created this graph, and, and bear with me, I'll try to walk you through it pretty quickly here. So this visioning and feasibility study is indicated in the two red dots. So we had approximately four weeks to, to complete that, that effort. Shortly after, potentially this week or next week, we'll be kicking off the official master planning process for the sports complex. So this process is going to be about a six-to-eight-month process that has a robust stakeholder and community outreach component to it. There's a number of town halls and pop-ups where we're going to be out in the community, getting feedback from the community members into what amenities would they like to see at the sports complex? What trails do they want to see? What are their priorities? What are their needs? Do they like some of these renderings that we created and, and the look and feel? Or, or is there additional feedback that we should consider? But through that process... But through that process, we have site visits, we have design charrettes, we have alternative concepts, where we're going to be looking at different pricing options, different priority options, different connectivity options, both for the sports complex and if directed to also the indoor recreation facility. By the end of that phase, we're going to be providing a 30% schematic set that's going to be used for pricing. We're going to release that out to contractors and bidders to give us accurate market, real-time pricing, where we can, at that point, determine, does this need to be phased out? Do we want to do it all at once? Do we, you know, what alternatives do we want to explore? And then at that point, we'll begin design on that phasing plan, or whatever phase we decide to agree upon. Concurrently, at the bottom of this graph, you see the comprehensive parks, recreation, and open space plan. So the comprehensive pros plan really will take a look at the entire parks and recreation system for the city of Kyle. We're not only going to look at what your current inventory is, but we're also going to look at national standards like NRPA, we're going to look at five different peer cities to see how you compare with them. We're also going to look at your needs assessment, gap assessments, we're going to look at equity and accessibility. And we're also going to look at funding opportunities, on how can we provide different finding alternatives to help bridge that gap, and provide resources where we can go after grants or partnerships that will help provide some of those amenities that were identified as gaps early on in this presentation, you know, that could be incorporated into other parks throughout the city equitably. So with that, between the feasibility study, the sports complex master plan, and the pros plan, we're going to have a complete 360 view of all parks and recreation facilities within the city of Kyle, and put together a solid strategy of how not only the sports complex site can be a true economic catalyst that can be embraced by the community and provide for the community, but also what areas of town and what other areas can we improve to increase the equity, the accessibility, and the level of service at large that the city of Kyle is providing its residents. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jesse.
All right. Finishing up here, the last couple of slides, that OPCC number can be a little bit shocking when you see it, but I just want to point out that, as we've said many, many times today, this is all conceptual, this is all first blush at this. As Mark walked, as Mark walked through, which was very helpful, you can see that timeline of after the master plan, efforts start, a tremendous amount of community engagement, there's still a lot of work. I just, it's easy to look at that and think, oh my goodness, we have plans, we have renderings, and shovels are going into the ground tomorrow. That's not the case, there's still a tremendous amount of work and community engagement that goes into this. And also, I want to point out that out of that entire number, the, there are multiple funding mechanisms, it's not all bonded money that we're talking about when it's related to that OPCC. What we are looking at from a phase one, and we're also not going to build the entire sportsplex all at once. So we're looking at more of a phased approach for the sportsplex, and we're looking at what we have seen after working with our consultants, is a phase-one approach with a cost estimate of around $65 million that encompasses roughly your site preparation, the indoor recreation center, that out, that outdoor area that Mark showed off, and many of the exterior improvements and amenities that are around that, around the indoor sports center. And you're looking at, we can, and the 65 million is general obligation bonds, it has a tax rate impact of around five cents. If we want to get more into these, the financials on this, Pervez and his team are here, and they can dig into it a little bit more, but we'd really like to see you all, hear you all's feedback on the conceptual designs and discussion on that. It's very important as we go forward. We're looking at a timeline of a special called meeting on 8/15, on August 15th, so we have the meeting of 8/6 between then, and if we need to tweak and retool some stuff based on feedback, based on discussion tonight, we could call a special meeting between now and then to come back with tweaks and changes and have more discussions on it, but this is the timeline that we're looking at. As I hand it over to you guys, I just want to thank Mark, Mike, and Ryan for all the hard work that they've done. It's been a tremendous effort, this is incredible team that's put all this together, and we are here to answer questions on anything that you have.
All right, do you have questions for Mr. Alizondo or the staff? Councilor Tobias.
You want to go first, Mayor?
I can say I'm on task force, so I'd like y'all to go first, so that we've got questions.
Okay. So here, here is just my spiel on this. Great sign, thank you so much, and a lot of time and effort went into this. So for me, I understand the economic impact that we're trying, that city and council is trying to impose for something like this, to where you can generate revenue, okay? We also want to make sure, I, my questions would be, or how will we facilitate the city of Kyle Parks Department involvement in this right here? And how is this going to benefit the citizens themselves year-round if our drive and our focus is to bring in outside money? Because that's what I hear a lot here, is driving the outside money, when to me, I already see our area as a gold mine as it is, okay? Because if we're focusing on tournaments, we're focusing on sports, you know, we have a school district, like when we went to Frisco, how they had business owners focus with the school districts themselves, and how we can generate that revenue with the people themselves. So like with Hays ISD, we have 26 campuses, we have over 23,000 students, okay? In Kyle alone, we have eight elementary schools, that's 4,800 kids, about four middle schools, which probably around, my number's going to be about 1,600 students, two high schools, we had 4,200. So we're looking at almost 10,000 students just here, that we can invest in, in sports, in these types of activities versus, I guess, bringing in all that outside money, when we can be investing in it here. But I understand what we're also trying to look at is the hotel tax, and the restaurants, and the businesses, and so forth. But then, you also have to look at, if we bring those tournaments here, what happens to the residents during those weekends? You'll have traffic, you'll have restaurants that'll have long lines, you'll have other issues where you have maybe some families here in Kyle that might be left out of these types of facilities or during tournament time. So that would take away their time as well. Because I want to be able to make sure that we utilize, if we go with this, we utilize this year-round, not just for specific teams and specific sports that have tournaments, because they all have seasons. Basketball's have a specific season, soccer has specific seasons, and then that's it. How would we be able to focus this type of facility, going back to the roots of our residents, for them to be able to use and not maybe feel pushed out or pressured that they're not able to use this because we're bringing outside selected teams? And that's, of course, that requires more money for those people, and some students or families may not be able to afford those. So let's look at that. Again, the concept design, I like that. The only thing I would kind of take away, in the sense that we're already having this hour-and-a-half discussion about water, maybe we can leave out the splash pads. And just kind of just leave that out, and maybe come up with another.
You're done with splash pads for a while?
Well, the splash pads, I do appreciate, I do like the ones at Steeplechase and over there at Greg Clark Park, and I know there's certain people here that may disagree with that or frown on that, but when I drive by there and I see kids out there playing in it, that's enough for me. Some of these people, and I'm going to call them out, some of the people may not like those ideas, that's enough. But as, as going forward, I think with our water situation, maybe we can re-look at the water features, even if it's fountains, that we can be smart on moving forward on that. And I'll yield back.
So my feedback is really on the turf fields. It actually goes back to what Yvonne was saying earlier about these other areas are much cooler climates than what we have. I've had the privilege, I know others have as well, of really going and touring and asking questions, so there's not many questions I could ask that I haven't already asked. But it's one thing to, you know, think a turf field is better from a water standpoint, but even up in Westfield, Indiana, where that, where Grand Park is, they have a combination of turf and natural, and I know it's a big debate, I watched the school district debate it for a good long while, while they took their stadium proposal to the voters that ultimately failed. But the city of Kyle's in the same position now, where we're having to decide between turf and irrigated grass, and obviously, pros and cons to both. But even in Westfield, Indiana, you can, there's nothing quite like walking over to a turf field and putting one hand on the turf and one hand on the grass right next to the side. And even in Westfield, I think the temperature when we were there was maybe 75, the turf was probably 10 degrees warmer. I think that in Texas, the best turf money can buy will still get on the edge of being unplayable, because you're playing sports where you're falling down, you're hitting, it's not, and it creates that heat and raises the overall temperature, which has additional effects as well. So we're on, in two days from now, we're going to be receiving, in this room, I think, in this room, a check for roughly $1 million as part of a $3 million water reclamation master plan, to allow for us to reuse the water and bring it through to the Purple Pipe. So for example, the golf course uses reclaimed water, which is why they're able to keep their golf course watered year-round, even in times of drought, because they're not putting potable water, they're putting water that otherwise we would just be dumping into Plum Creek to send downstream. And so, you know, for myself, what I would say is, the plan to bring forward reclaimed water, which is perfect for sports field infrastructure to the sports, to the district itself, is an amenity in and of itself. It gives us the ability, without actually, I think, probably increasing the cost, to go from turf fields to irrigated fields using exclusively reclaimed water, exactly as the golf course. We've been working on this project for a long time, bringing reclaimed water specifically to the brick and mortar district, so that we can irrigate those kinds, those fields. So to me, there's three different potential field outcomes, and they're the only potential options, in my opinion. Indoor, which does not require any water, and is also conditioned and shaded, which is obviously the nicest, but it costs the most. Exterior shaded turf, which means that we don't have the same level of expense to maintain that facility, it's cheaper to build, but there's a shade structure over the turf. Or outdoor irrigated natural grass. The outdoor unshaded turf, in my opinion, is almost unviable in the state of Texas, where we're seeing routinely in the summer months, because if you go back to the chart in Grand Park, where all their visitors come from, you see the spike, it's right in the dead middle of the summer. July, I think, is Grand Park's biggest, biggest month, so they're doing, and we were just out there, they're doing soccer, they're doing baseball, all over the place. I think baseball's easier on turf, but I think soccer and football in particular, where you're down on the ground a lot, it's just, it's not, it's not a good plan, I think we would regret it. So my thinking is indoor-conditioned, outdoor-shaded turf, you'd like a pavilion over the main court, you know, or outdoor irrigated through reclaimed water. All three scenarios use zero potable water, zero. So I think that, that would be the plan that I would want to, that would be the framework that I would pursue around StanTech, because I think it's environmentally sensitive, and it gives the best quality of life for all three field types. Does anybody have thoughts on that? Because that's going to be a continued discussion. Councilor Harris.
Well, I'm really glad I went to the Indiana trip, because I got to see that sportsplex and was so impressed with what they were doing. And I totally agree with the mayor on the need to avoid turf fields. My grandson played football here, and started in early August in high school, and came home with blisters on his hands, you know, it was so hot, it's just, it's really, really hot. So I agree with that. Our plans for our repurposed water are moving along very nicely in our water department, plus Arwa is starting a facility to process water, wastewater, so we'll have resources for that. One of the things I really would like to address was Councilmember Tobias's concern about the local use, and I would like to emphasize that local use will be primary. And I think that we really saw in this presentation how the locals are considered in everything, and the sportsplexes and the one we saw were heavily used by locals. The local kids, the local adults, I think that it will be heavily used, and for me, that's a primary. The secondary is that we have a facility that can generate income to pay its own debt. That's a huge asset, too. So you get the best of both worlds, in my opinion.
Yeah, I just want to touch more on the usability.
So you're correct, it's for all ages, you know, indoor pickleball, I mean, for everyone, it's a growing sport, but I wanted to make sure that we looked at all geographics, all the ages, and who would be able to use this sports facility. We just don't build it for our kids, we build it for the entire community, and that's important, making sure that everyone has a use in this facility. But also, it's important that we build in a way that's economical, so the right building, let's not just look for aesthetics, let's make sure we're building something that's going to be usable, that we can get more out of. The one in Carmo, Indiana, what, I mean, yeah, Carmo, Indiana was, what do you call it, a metal building, and it was, it was not built, it was built for functionality, it was not built just for aesthetics, it was for functionality, and it worked really, really great, the way they're doing it, it's a big draw, something we can do. When we're looking at the fields, one thing about turf and grass, grass, you can't, you can't play on it all the time, so you're limited, so I'd love to have some turf. But one thing I did learn when I was visiting Arizona is that the turf can be watered as well, so, you know, we could use some of that reclaimed water to water down and cool down those turf fields as well. So you want to have a mixture of both, it's important. Arizona found a way to do it, they've got extreme temperatures, so they are the experts on it. And what they were doing with turf and what they were doing with grass was pretty amazing, and the reclaimed water system that they were using to water the turf and the grass was pretty amazing. They're always in a drought, right? So it's important to get, you know, that knowledge from people who are experts in it, you know, so it's something really important to get, but I just want to remind everyone, this, this facility is going to be for everybody, it's not just going to be for outdoor events, it's going to be for our locals, because that was important for me. I mean, when we first started looking at this, I talked about how, you know, we drive all over, you know, central Texas, even outside to Houston, Dallas area, for our kids, you know, to, for them to play sports, because there's no real facilities like that around this area. Everything's up north, or down, way, you know, east. So to have something like this centralized would be important for all the kids in the area, all the region, but for the adults and everybody else. I know that it's, it's going to be a really big investment, but I think the draw, if we do this right, and we program it right, it can pay for itself, and that's the important thing. I'd love to build something just for the residents, but if we do that, then we're putting all the burden, tax burden on the residents here, and, you know, then we're putting the burden of, you know, the daily function, the cost, everything else. So for me, it's making sure we get a mixture of both, so that we're not putting all this burden on our residents right now, and our pricing people is important, so making sure that we're doing this in a way that's cost-efficient, efficient for our community is important to me.
Councilor Sudeikis.
Yeah, I mean, I have a lot of questions as well. I just want to start with the pro forma on the, I just want to focus on year one, you know, forget the 760, year one, explain it to me again, and then we can get to the other part, because you're saying we want to break even, we're going to break even in the first few years, that's the goal, but in year one, are we losing $267 to operate this venue?
$267,000, yes.
$267,000?
Correct, sir.
Okay. Thousands, okay.
Okay.
Now, how are you getting total room nights computed? Because you're coming up with 30,000 room nights, where are those rooms? And I'm, you're expecting visitors in those rooms?
That's correct.
Because it's part of the equation, but I only want to, I only want to talk about year one, so.
Yep. No, that's completely understandable. So again, there's a projected number of tournaments per year. Those tournaments come with teams per tournament, players per team, spectators per team, all of those calculations are a gross number of people that are coming per tournament. So then, utilizing the placer analysis that we did to understand in places like So then utilizing the placer analysis that we did to understand in places like Round Rock, what percentage of those folks are coming from a distance that we could project to be deemed they're staying overnight as out-of-town visitors, they're not driving back and forth every night for a tournament?
And they're staying at the venue? The venue has rooms?
No, sir. They're staying, the number of people that are at that venue, we're deeming either as day trippers or overnighters. So if you were to have the complex here in Kyle, we would say that folks that are participating on teams within Kyle, that's a day tripper, and they're not staying in a hotel overnight. So the overnighters, there's a percentage for each event type. So in this case, like we said, we think there's a lot more potential to drive room nights for basketball and volleyball in that indoor venue than there are due to the field count with the soccer fields.
So if we had all the hotels here, I think it's working out to about ninety room nights a day to cover the whole year, your, your thirty thousand room nights. That's, that's if we have the hotels, like, the capacity for them to stay somewhere.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not following.
So you're saying thirty thousand room nights?
Yes, in total.
Divided by days, it comes out at ninety?
Sure.
Ninety rooms a, a day?
No, yes, I understand.
We have to have that around somewhere?
Right.
Okay.
So, and the way that this is, and you're correct, this is just gross room nights, this is not in Kyle, this is generated by the facility. So one thing in our analysis that we didn't touch on is analyzing the competitive set of hotels and providing the just overall insights that there are not enough hotel rooms to really capture this impact right now in Kyle.
So the second slide, now we get into making some money with it and sales tax.
Sure.
I'm assuming it's all about, you know, spending around. So then the money can come in from the food, but the lodging. I don't understand the re, the transportation being a profit. And I, so that, you've got that as a profit. I can understand the retail. And then I'm not a big believer in induced? Because that's just if a person has more money, they're going to spend a little more. That's just an assumption to me. But, but I'm going to, but if I give you that, and we take, you know, your year one, now we're talking millions, ten million in the retail, lodging, your food and beverage, another sixteen million in all these direct costs and indirect, I guess, expense revenues? Because you're, you're putting all that as revenues part.
Are we, are, are we still talking about the pro forma?
Yeah, just the pro forma, year one, the direct and induced spending. I want to make sure that we're getting, that it's really the, the, the regional draw that we're talking about, that's going to bring in the money. So now you're also adding the jobs as revenue makers, too?
So the, these, the, these are not revenue streams for the facility?
I, I think there's two separate questions. One is an economic impact analysis, which is one of the pieces that he's looking at. The other is the direct pro forma or financial projections for the, the site.
So this?
So there are two different, they're not tied together.
Right. Completely independent of each other.
So if we do that, are we at, are you saying thirty-three million dollars in year one from the direct impact of this venue is what we can look at on, on a sheet?
If you could point me to which slide exactly?
I'm trying to add your ten, your sixteen, and your seven.
So the sixteen is the ten of direct spending, and then four million from indirect and two million from induced. So in total, sixteen million dollars worth of spending. That's broken down between direct, indirect, and induced.
Right.
So then earnings are generated from the spending. So the, of all the spending that would happen because of the result of the project, that would support roughly seven point four million in earnings.
In earnings?
Correct, in earnings across a hundred and seventy-two jobs in year one.
So you said seven million, right, in earnings?
Correct.
Okay. Now, if we take the one eighty-five that we're looking at at the end of this slide, and we divide that by thirty years, that's six million dollars that we have to pay out of this, if, I'm going to, I'm going to use your numbers, the one thirty-five. So then that really only nets us one million dollars in year one. And that's assuming it's all, it all goes as planned, right?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not following.
Seven million is, is, is direct impact, but it costs us six million that year. If, if you divide the one eighty-five?
Okay.
By the thirty years that you have here, you have thirty years in the whole pro forma.
Right.
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 So, so one million is really the net if, if, of the direct impact value?
I think that's comparing it just to the earnings.
Right, because that's all I wanted to focus on, the earnings?
Yeah, I understand.
And the expense, not the whole operation of the venue.
So, so there's an earnings calculation, that's the difference you're, you're pointing out. In addition to that, you have sales tax projections, hotel tax projections, if you did the venue tax, that's an, that's an additional. That's it. Well, but that's an additional revenue, which is different than the earnings. Again, I think there's, there's a couple of different things we're looking at, and it's the pro forma for the facility itself, and then the, what we're trying to do is estimate the economic impact.
Right, that's what I was trying to get.
There's a lot of ways to measure that. But I, I think just focusing on the earnings compared to the annual cost, or the one eighty-five divided thirty years, I don't think that's the appropriate comparison, because there's a lot of other factors involved. So I, I don't know if that's, if you have other comments, Ryan, on that, but I, I think there's a couple of things we could, there's additional revenues that you need to point out.
I mean, if you bring in three million or four million people a year, that's kind of where you're going to be, if, if that's the spending amount, you know, per tournament use and?
Sure. And I, I think if we showed the annual estimate of people attending the venue per year, I think that would make sense, because I think by year five at stabilization, we had about seven hundred and sixty-five thousand in total.
So what concerns me there is like the competition around us. So what's to say that, when you showed the picture and the density of people going from Houston elsewhere, Houston's already a large city that has a lot of this stuff?
Right.
So like, now we're starting to compete with the, with Round Rock's regional draw, others are going to build it as well. So how will we be able to maintain and sustain that?
Well, I think that gets back to the, the question of private versus public management, because if you're talking about a, a public manager who's, from the city's perspective, in charge of generating all of that activity, they're not going to have the assets that a national operator would have, where they step into the door day one, they know all the events that are going on, they know that they need to fill the venue, so that they can plug and play those events to help fill the venue on the weekends. They're still going to be servicing the community. And I think this gets back to the question of servicing the, the public, or servicing the city. I mean, we've worked in many places where, and I think it's a, a growing concern here, as you continue to grow population-wise, without the assets, I mean, your citizens are going to be leaving to go to cities, your neighboring cities that do have these assets that can really get and supply that demand. So for example, just sticking with Indiana, Grand Park allowed them to build the most competitive travel soccer program in all of the state of Indiana with the Indiana Fire Juniors. And now they're the ones hosting those events within Westfield, and those kids in Hamilton County in the Indianapolis area have Grand Park to play with, a top-notch facility that without that, they wouldn't have been able to build a, a program of five thousand kids across U eight to, to U sixteen, U seventeen, U eighteen. So I think there is a little bit of back and forth on hundred percent giving credit to, it may not be on the weekends a hundred percent as much local usage, but without that tool, those, the, the citizens may not have that opportunity to build those competitive programs over time. That's just the only thing that I would add to that point.
So how do these venues like accommodate the Monday through Friday tournaments? There's school in session, there's people are working, and then you're trying to cram this on the weekend, but you have your locals now trying to use that on the weekend, because they're also working Monday through Friday, and they want to spend time with their kids enjoying the facility as well. So then how, how are these venues doing that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a balance, and that's something that gets negotiated with a private operator. Again, if that's the route that you choose, then it needs to be laid out that we need discounted rates for the locals, or we need X, Y, Z for the locals when you're negotiating that deal with an operator. I mean, they operate multiple facilities across the country, and they get the spectrum more than anybody, that they're walking into your doors and walking into your city to help deliver a product, that makes sense. Again, they do have, they are tasked on your behalf to make sure that at the end of the year, these numbers aren't negative and it needs to be covered by your general fund. So they do have obligations to meet from a revenue perspective, but they're also respective of the, the needs of the local community, knowing that it can't just be tax streams that are getting pledged to the facility, and therefore they're the ones that, that have to really bury that burden and, and ice out the locals. So they understand that. I mean, it's, it's a, a facility that needs to be utilized as much as possible to make it work. So that's why they're, they're good at incorporating programs like pickleball during the day for the locals that may be underserved for things like that in a growing sport, so, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So why was the indoor, and this might be a Brian question, why was the indoor left blank, like vague? Like what's going to be in there? We have a fifty, fifty, fifty-five million dollar item, but nothing, nothing specific with it.
What was left blank?
The indoor?
No, they talked about the volleyball and basketball courts.
We, we, so we know that's going to be the indoor part?
That's what we get to decide as council.
Yeah.
But there's nothing in there, there's no?
Could you get to the sliding show?
So at the bottom, we had the program of what the hundred thousand square feet could potentially be. By all means, this is not finalized, but this was an assumption that we used to say, this program would fit within that building footprint, which would approximately equal a fifty-five million dollar cost.
Okay. Also, like, when you said that we have very few fields in Kyle, were those calculations like other cities based off only public parks? Because we also have a lot of school fields.
Yes.
So that number, we have school fields.
When we, when we look at comprehensive park master plans and we look against NRPA standards, NRPA really looks for public sector municipalities and agencies only, and that's kind of their comparison. The reason is because those are the ones that you fully control. You never know if there's not going to be an agreement with an ISD, or if, if they decided to go in a totally different direction. So when we look at our comparisons, we really look at city-owned facilities that are either owned or managed, but a hundred percent by the, by the municipality. Going back to, to those standards themselves, what we did, again, because we were moving so, so quickly, we did a quick snapshot of where Kyle sits in regards to NRPA standards for cities in your size. And that's, municipalities within a certain population range, and we did that comparison of your existing inventory versus those national standards. Now, when we kick off the pros plan, one of the things that we're going to do is, we're going to identify five peer cities that are, that are in close proximity or who we compete with, and then not only look at those national standards, but also against peer cities, how do we compare? And we'll, we'll provide that, that feedback in that report.
Last, last question. And I'm, I'm not trying to be harsh.
No, this is good, this is good.
These are the questions the residents can, they like it when I know the money questions. So like, I think one of the last slides says that the tax increase to each resident's household, if we did the sixty-five million, is a hundred seventy, a hundred and fifty? Hundred and forty-five dollars a year. So if we do the one eighty-five, each resident is looking at a four hundred, four hundred and fifty dollar tax increase.
I don't think it's apples to apples, there's multiple funding mechanisms for that one eighty-five, and that's really just a broad brush as far as?
So how will we get the other one twenty, one hundred and twenty-one million?
Well, I think the first thing is, we're not proposing to build a hundred and eighty-five million. That's the first thing, but the other thing?
Well, I don't know, because, because you're, the language you're using for this bond is sixty-five million or more. So where are we?
The language wouldn't be sixty-five million or more, it, it would be a specific amount that we're authorized, and that's it. There's, there's a couple of different things at play. You have the tourist district, tourist district number two?
Yeah.
Which has, does have funding included in it. Parking garage has been talked about for tourist two, that's part of this one eighty-five. The cost of extending Cromwell up into this area, which I think was five and a half million that we estimated, that's another funding source that could be looked at for that. We've also identified for the outdoor sportsplex component, there was fourteen million dollars that was authorized by the voters previously, seven million by the county and seven million by the city. That's fourteen million that could be used for this particular project. We've also been working with our financials and?
Can we do a tax increase in here, Brian, just as another mechanism? A sales tax increase?
Uh, no, you, you cannot do a sales tax increase, we're capped out on the sales tax rate.
I think there's, can't you create a, a district tax?
No.
Increase?
Venue tax.
Yeah, venue tax.
That's a high.
The venue tax is the two percent?
I mean, if they're, if they're spending money and they're, they're willing to spend?
Well, if, if I could, there's just a few other elements to this as well, though. The fourteen million, in addition to that, as we talked about with our park CIP, we've identified another sixteen million in funding that could be used for the sportsplex as well. So that thirty million, the sixty-five million, the money from tourist two, those things add up to different buckets of funding that we can talk about. What levels of spending are you comfortable with? What are the assets that you're comfortable with? And we would tailor all of those assets down to the funding level that the council and the community is comfortable with. The one eighty-five is, I look at it as a, a grand plan, and it's a menu of things that could be done. Some of those we'll decide we don't want to do, some we will decide we want to do, and we get to mix, mix and match all those together to see how we want to do it. But the venue tax is an element that's available to us. We've provided the projections with Ryan of what that might generate. There are currently not the number of hotel rooms in the city that we need to support a facility like this, but this would be an impetus?
Right.
To bring those hotels into the city and to develop the type of infrastructure that we need to have it. So hopefully that's an answer that makes sense. It's, it's really meant to be conceptual, brainstorming, what the, what the facility could be as we look at it through all these different avenues. But there's many different options that we have financially to look at it.
I'd be a little cautious about like the parks funding, because just for equity for all the older parks. Because I mean, I understand this would, this would, you know, to take more from parks general fund?
Yeah, and I?
When it's already, you know, really nicely financed through the bonds.
I, I understand, and, you know, one of the things that we've talked about doing is updating the parks master plan and really spending a lot of time with the community to take, think about where our park assets going to be placed, how we're going to do them. We've made a commitment earlier with the council to invest in the Lake Kensington Park, which will be a brand-new park, we want that to be a signature facility. What are the types of amenities that we want to have there? And what are all the other assets that we want to have in the other parts of the city to make that happen? It's a really important process that we want to spend the next several months with StanTech working on. But we have, in addition to the money that we've identified for Lake Kensington Park, we also have another twenty-five million that we've identified for reinvesting in our existing park system that's beyond the dollars that we've talked about today.
When will we, when will we get to a closer number of like what it might cost a resident to use if there's going to be a cost per, per hour use?
I think it's a few months away to talk about what are the specific assets, how we're going to program it? Are these the menu of things that you want to do? I mean, that's, that's some time away before we have that.
I mean, yeah, because I was really a proponent of making it affordable.
A large portion of that is going to come down to the operator, if the cities get, like Ryan was, was speaking earlier, whether the city's going to be operating this facility or if it'll be a private operator that comes in. We've talked about many different options. I, I want to address a few things that the council had, and I also want to make sure we, we have two other council members that can weigh in. But just on that local aspect, it's maybe a failure of ours, but I just want to assure you all that in all of the conversations and stakeholder meetings, that was a hu, that was a tremendous aspect of everything that we talked about. Councilmember Tobias, you're talking about the operator, whomever it turns out to be utilizing this twenty-four seven, that's absolutely how you get the best value out of this. And then, and then providing in some form or fashion, depending on the programming, some extra ability for local residents and, and the community to utilize these either at a, a tremendously lower cost, or to have first preference on scheduling. These are all things that you would work out with your operator, and we've talked to operators, and they have said that that is something that happens all the time with the local community. So it's something that's very top of mind with, with what we're talking about. And I think Ryan did a tremendous job of also showing that there's a balance between the local and regional draw and the statewide draw. So depending on what fields you have, what courts you have, some of them are going to draw very largely from, from statewide, and some are really going to draw for the local. And so having that, the operator having that balance and allowing all of the community to participate in that is, is top of mind for what we're looking at. But it's going to come down to the programming.
And anything about ice hockey? I have to bring it up, just to be transparent, because I said I'm a man of my word.
We did, in, in this plan that we looked at there, we did not have any ice hockey rinks in this conceptual plan.
Remains council's decision.
And I will say with the, when I was asking the, sir, I was asking the, the numbers we came up with, I know they were rough and quick. I, I think they were very close to what I saw in a feasibility report that I got here. Who made the feasibility report? The first one?
PSL, the PSL study.
Yeah. That was about a three million dollar gross revenue in a year. So that's why I wanted to figure out how close I thought we would be if in year one, you know.
I...
But that's a different feasibility report. I was looking at sportsplex.
I, I will just say, I have never seen a facility generate revenue like that, which is why we wanted to be much more conservative. Inform you that we've talked with folks that have given us access to their financials to help cater a pro forma to this market based off changes that we felt were appropriate.
It was an ice hockey one, too. That's why they, they said.
Different, yeah, different facilities.
They could, they could charge more for the use.
I, I would, I would just say my point of comparison would be to the folks that you met in Westfield that generate about five million visits a year. I would just put into perspective the scale of their facility versus what was laid out in the previous feasibility report. And by doing some quick calculations of visits per ice sheet or visits per field or visits per court, I would say that those projections were slightly aggressive and overly slightly. Um, so I, I would disagree with what they've laid out and just inform you that we did reference other comparable, similar sized facilities to help build that pro forma.
Thank you.
Well, just a couple of thoughts. One is I appreciated your comment earlier about the phasing. Uh, I think the phasing is going to be critical, so which means that the pro forma year one, year two, year three is only theoretical to help us understand, but none of those numbers are going to be the way it actually plays out for us. Especially if we start with fields and then move to indoor and move, move along, maybe build, you know, build it in chunks. It's just, it's going to be a little bit different. Now, I wanted to add what the, uh, operator in Westfield at Grand Park actually told us about local versus private. Uh, they are hungry. They say the proj- the project doesn't work without the locals. And if you look at the graphs for Round Rock and College Station and Grand Park, that, that these things, it's like private or, or are, you know, like regional draw versus local amenity, if you take one away, the project fails. So if we say we're going to focus only on making it local, which means we're going to design it such that it doesn't attract the region, it's very expensive to do it that way and will be underutilized tremendously. They're, they have, they have private tournament leagues that they run, and then they have a ton of space in between those tournaments where local residents can come and practice and do things. And for myself, this is the reason why, can, can we go to the slide that shows the, the, um, Kyle's, uh, how we're below the region along that bottom slide? Cause even, even that bottom slide is, um, difficult for me. I think it's actually worse than that. There we go. So for example, if we have one tennis court, no, we have zero. Uh, the one tennis court we have is, is, uh, wrong, wrong size. It doesn't function.
We have four schools.
We do have schools. My, my kids are in, going into seventh grade, they've played soccer their entire life. They have played soccer in Kyle precisely zero times. They've played soccer at their schools precisely zero times. You don't even get to start playing soccer until you're in seventh grade, and it's not open for all. You have to try out, be on a team. You don't get to go and play and practice. So the, uh, the school's infrastructure only covers five percent of what the overall demand is in, in our region or something along those lines.
Yeah. Well, I would just add is you continue to grow, that problem's only going to get worse.
It's going to get worse. And in terms of actual public for people, not private underneath the public, which is what a school is, select people get to use it. And actual public facilities, um, we are, we are worst in region, worst in region. So, you know, it's that we don't have tennis courts, we don't have pickle court, ball courts, we do not have soccer fields. We have technically two. They run exactly zero tournaments, zero games. If you're a kid here and you want to be on a soccer team, be on a basketball team, do anything, we have thousands of them, you must leave. Every single sports, uh, engagement that my family has had, we have left this town because there is nowhere to go.
Right.
So it's indisputable, indisputable that our public sports infrastructure is worst in region. It's also indisputable that our median age is lowest in region, which means that the demand versus supply in our area must be off, which is why the reports, I, I didn't see the reports, but I know. I, I, I'm raising kids here, you know. Well, I, I absolutely know that Kyle has, has no offerings to its community for sports, uh, infrastructure.
Right.
And so this is really what it all kind of comes down to. Is this a priority for us? We have twenty thousand kids in our, in our city, uh, and one tennis court. Is that, is that acceptable? You know, and tennis is just what I played growing up. But I mean, I do, I, I don't care about the, how it's laid out, but I, I do think that we should make it a high priority as a city to develop out our sports field infrastructure because it is a, it would be widely used.
Right.
Uh, by locals and regional. Produce an income. It'd also produce a local amenity. Would attract high quality development all around. I see it as a lot of good opportunities, but a hundred and eighty-five million dollars, for example, that's proposed when we did our first assessment on roads, what was that number? The two hundred and ninety-four million that we whittled it down to was four hundred plus initially. So we must operate within the constraints of our budget and what we can do and phasing and moving forward. All of those are, are pro, um, journeys that we have to go on as a council. Or the option, the other option is to say, you know what, this, it might bring more traffic or it might be utilized for people that we don't want. And so let's just say no. And then as has been said, our, our problem's going to get worse. It's not going to get better over time. We're moving forward with road projects, park projects, uh, water projects, uh, senior projects, uh, you know, lake projects. The one big hole in the center for the city of Kyle, as I see it, is sports fields. And, you know, the voters will be the ones who will have to decide whether they want us to go with a thirty million dollar facility or a hundred million, or a hundred and eighty-five million over the course of five to ten years. Grand Park was not built at all by itself, all in one time. It was built over time and in phasing. But I think what StanTech is doing and, and Hunley and all you guys is you are doing a very good job of setting the parameters for like, what were we actually after here? Uh, and giving us an opportunity to, to figure out how to take it in, in chunks, which I think is really what we have to pursue.
Right. And I think the feedback on the much more importance towards the local usage is, is super helpful. I think that certainly impacts the projections, but I mean, it's, again, it's up to you as a city to make that, make that distinction. And it's up to us to just give the implications.
I, I, I would not, I would say this. I would not say primary on local because another area where we're extremely behind in versus everyone else, from San Marcos to Buta to Leander, to Hutto to everyone.
Sure.
Is hotels.
Right.
And his store, as of two years ago, is restaurants. So we've started to make that impact on restaurants, but hotels won't come unless we have facilities like this.
Right.
Facilities won't be able to be maximized unless we have the hotels and the restaurants. And so you kind of have to just do it like this as you're building up. But I think, I think this is a, something I at least want to give to the voters and let them consider.
Yeah. I think just the last point I wanted to make is, as opposed to viewing a, a private entity as, entity as an enemy or somebody that's taking away time, I think they do do a very good job of being the ones to organize those leagues for the locals and they, they keep a better structure than arguably than the public sector could as management with their experience. So I would just say they, they tend to make great partners for the community.
Mayor, if I just might add, as you said, you travel with your kids to play soccer. I could only assume you only fill up with gas in Kyle and you only go to Whataburger in Kyle. You never buy anything else when you're on a soccer trip?
Well, if we could overrun our town's restaurants with people, um, I, I understand the challenge of that, but every, every town that I look at, that everyone else looks at as being the best towns in, in the area have full restaurants because they have tourism and economic development.
My point is I think you've probably spent money in all of those towns where you've traveled to play soccer. So you've left economic impact in every one of those towns where you've gone and you've taken your kids to go play soccer.
Yes, and stayed in hotels and a variety of other things. It's very common.
So I guess the other thing is when we talk about, to the point about hotels, sometimes you have to create a flywheel, and this is really a flywheel. So if you choose to do it through sports, you probably would not build a sixty-five million dollar indoor, sixteen court basketball, thirty-two court volleyball for Kyle.
Correct.
It's probably sized too big. So do you get the ability to utilize that for the local residents and have some of the outdoor or some of the outside of the region people come and pay for that on your behalf? So in essence, you are leveraging the outdoor visitors on the weekend so that your local residents have a better facility than you would do if you were just going to do a locals only.
That's, to me, that's the trick.
And that's the balance.
That's exactly it right there. We're creating some, if we were just going to build it for local, we would not do it like this.
No, you would not.
Not at all.
It would not be economically viable.
And also the benefits to the locals would not be as good.
Yes, it would not be economically viable.
So the theory is that the local community gets a higher quality of life by building a facility that they are sharing with the region.
And you're spreading those expenses across more people.
Right.
So that does cause a flywheel with hotels, restaurant, gas tax, venue tax, so on and so forth.
How, how close, Brian, will this put us near bonding capacity? Just, just to keep that in mind.
So, uh, later this evening, you're going to have an item on our debt, uh, program and, and debt capacity. So, um, the finance director will go through that.
Okay.
At that time, you'll see all that.
Assuming the whole one eighty-five?
Well, it'll include the sixty-five million, which is what we've been talking about issuing.
Okay.
Nobody's proposing a hundred and eighty-five million dollar bond.
I have a question.
Councilmember Parsley, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so that's for StanTech. So from the, um, projects that you presented to us tonight, I see that, I believe that I saw two that are privately operated. And then I believe it's the city of Round Rock is the only one that is city operated. Um, and I, I know that we are far away from picking, uh, how we're going to do the operation of this facility. What I do know is that for it to be successful, definitely need to get people involved that know what they're doing. How does that process, if you know, I don't know if you guys know, how does the process work in the selection and operation for these facilities that you have seen in other cities?
Yeah, typically it's through an RFP. So you would have, for example, we've, we've run the process before, but we would help to construct an RFP and then those operators, those three to four groups that can compete, um, would put together a proposal and then your advisor would help you to determine what's the best deal for the city, um, in terms of the operations of that facility. So typically it's an RFP process, um, amongst a bunch of different groups. So for example, just sticking with what you know in Westfield, their latest RFP had about eleven respondents. Um, and then they ultimately selected, um, a group that just took over private operations of the facility.
And are there any connections between those operators and then what goes around the facility? Cause I'm thinking also, what type of hotels are we going to be inviting on? Um, what type of restaurants? Um, so do they come like, um, when we, when operators are selected, do they kind of have those connections that they can also bring up to the city? And I'm also thinking about, cause you were, as I was going through the presentation, you were, um, there was something about the KPIs and I wanted to know, does these operators take care of making sure that those are being met? Do you happen to know what happens when those numbers aren't met for other facilities?
Uh, well, it's typically they're, they're taking a management fee and then sometimes there are incentives involved. So if they don't hit their performance metrics, they're not getting those additional incentives. That, that's really what helps drive the performance is they're motivated by driving either people through the door, certain metrics on, on revenue performance. And if they don't meet those, then their overall take is, is a lot less. So, uh, they always have that in mind.
And so.
Yeah.
To my previous questions, I know I just mentioned a couple of things.
Sure.
Do you know if the operators have any connections or any particular group that will come with specific, um, type of hotels or restaurants that they invite to join?
They have relationships, um, but we would encourage again, another RFP for something like a hotel to ensure that you're getting the best deal and an operator's not just bringing along somebody that they know. So that would be probably in your best interest to do another RFP for another proposed hotel.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
So Mayor, we'll be bringing this back on the sixth, uh, August sixth, unless, uh, the council has another specific date. We'll try to take some of this feedback and see if there's any modifications and, and bring it back to you for another discussion, uh, at that time, unless you have any other further feedback.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the time.
All right. Next up is agenda item six, receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction on the results of the police services staffing analysis. Chief Barnett, thank you.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor and Council. Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police for the record. Uh, as you may recall, uh, at the beginning of the budget year, City Council authorized the city manager and the police department to engage the services from a professional firm to conduct a staffing and operational analysis. Uh, the firm that was selected was Matrix Consulting Group. They have many years of experience and, and in fact have provided services to the city of Kyle in the past for the police department. So I want to thank the Mayor and Council and the city manager for taking that effort. This is going to provide us a plan to use as a guide for the next, uh, several years, maybe up to 10 years as we, as we progress and grow as a police department. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Richard Brady, the President of Matrix Consulting Group, who will walk you through the results of their analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, uh, Mayor and Council for, uh, inviting me here tonight. Uh, in view of the, uh, the late hour and you still have a lot of, uh, of agenda left to go through, I will give you a, an overview of what we came up with this study. Uh, its key recommendations and, uh, as it relates to current staffing as well as projected staffing and take the questions that, uh, you may have associated with that. So, um, as the chief mentioned, uh, Matrix Consulting Group, we've been in existence for 21 years. We provide a lot of services to local government, uh, but our law enforcement practice is by far our largest. We work with over 400 police departments around the country. Many, many in, in Texas, we've worked with Austin, we've worked with Buta, we've worked with several around here. We work with Kyle again, as the chief mentioned. Um, our approach is fact-based and the approach we used in this study was fact-based. As you go through our, I think it's 168 page report, there's many numbers in there as there are words. And that shows that, uh, what we have done is used, uh, data to prove that there are issues associated with current operations and use data to prove that something different in terms of staffing or operations can make it work differently. But we did not, um, do just data in isolation. We had extensive input from within the department, many interviews, an employee survey, but we also got input from the community as well. We had two community meetings, one during the week, which was hybrid, in-person and virtual, and one on the weekend to get input from the community. And those, uh, kinds of mechanisms were used to help shape the, uh, results of this, uh, study. Uh, throughout the process, when we've been working on this study for four or five months, uh, we've interacted consistently with the police department and with the city manager's office. So what we've been asked to do here is to, uh, take a look at workloads and service levels within the city and to come up with a staffing plan, both now and the future, uh, using the metrics that I described before, but not just doing those key performance indicators in isolation, uh, also looking at efficiency and, um, effectiveness within the organization. And to make sure that we had an effective, uh, base because we're, we're looking at current staffing needs as well as projecting them for the next 10 years. So we had to make sure there was an effective base upon which to build, uh, department in the future, especially as you're going to be growing over the next, uh, few years. Uh, there are also facility implications associated with, with this because as you know, the city manager's office is sharing some of the space within there. And as the department grows, uh, there's going to be a point relatively soon where that's not going to be tenable. So again, uh, we worked extensively with the department as we went through this project. So some of the high points picking from the report, uh, we looked at calls, uh, and I, I want to make it clear that I'm going to be making a differentiation between, uh, what I'm going to call the direct service delivery, mostly patrol, which are sworn officers, uh, the service that you see every day, uh, within the community, either visibly or when you're requesting a service, and the support to the department. And the issues are quite different in the Kyle Police Department. So first of all, for the direct service delivery, looking at the operations bureau, mostly patrol, we looked at calls for service. And this graph shows the top 10 kinds of calls for service. In fact, it's 50% of all the, uh, call for service workload that they can handle. It falls roughly in thirds. Uh, it's, a third of it is traffic related accidents, things like that. A third of it are service kinds of things, quality of life kinds of complaints, quasi-code enforcement types of things, and a third of them are crimes. For a suburban community like yours, this is very typical. Uh, basically it boils down to two, a little bit more than two requests for service, uh, every hour of the day, every day of the week. I wanted to show you this because I wanted to address one thing in the data that I wanted to make sure you understood. Uh, obviously response times are rarely important for people, especially for higher priority types of calls. So we looked at the response times to call for service, uh, for every type of priority that they respond to. And as you look at lower priority calls on this graph, priority twos and priority threes, in a comparative context, these are excellent, uh, results. To get a response to a quality of life type of call or something that maybe happened yesterday in 11 or 12 minutes is exceptional. Uh, but where their question may arise is... But where their question may arise is the 9.1 minutes average response time to higher priority calls. What I would draw your attention to is that 38% in the middle. And the way the department and your shared neighbors are categorizing calls results in a lot more calls being high priority than are life-threatening, that are in-progress types of calls. In most communities that stringently, stringently look at the call, the needs of the call, and the severity to the community, it's more like 5%. So within that call, that 38%, that's 7,200 calls for service, are many things which are not in-progress, not life-threatening, not felony-level types of things. As we looked at more serious types of calls, like the ones I just mentioned, robberies, things like that, the response times were very quick, generally five minutes or less, which is good considering the size of the community. So the thing that we do look at very seriously when we look at patrol is their ability to be proactive. Everything I've talked to about it this, up to this point, is looking at what patrol does for something that happened five or 10 minutes ago. But where they can be effective is to anticipate problems in the community, including crimes, to work in partnership with the community, to anticipate problems, to be deployed in areas where there are problems, and just generally being visible. The key measure here is proactivity. It's the amount of time that they spend with, they're not responding to calls for service and everything associated with that. They're not writing reports, they're not going to meetings, things like that. So in our research, and the research of any, many other research organizations, including consulting firms, is that if you aren't, if you do not have in your patrol force something like 40 or 45% of your time to be proactive, you're not going to be very proactive at all, because it happens in short increments of time, it happens at 2:00 in the morning, and it really isn't usable. So we spent a lot, a lot of time looking at what that is. And in Kyle, ostensibly, you meet that measure. In Kyle, on a 24/7 basis, your proactive, your patrol force is proactive almost half the time. But if you look at this graph here, which takes every day of the week in four-hour time element brackets, you can, and the green being where they meet that 50% target or better than that, all of those hours are late-night, early-morning kinds of hours. And that from 10:00 in the morning to about 6:00 at night, when people are awake, needing help, or causing problems, there's very little proactive time at all. Sometimes it's like 10% of their time. So there's clearly a deployment issue and a staffing issue in patrol that needs to be addressed. The good news in this, however, and this is a hard graph to read, it shows their proactive activities in patrol, the officer-initiated activities. And in a heat map kind of way, you can see that when it's red, there's a lot of activity generated, where it's yellow and green, it's less. This shows that they're using what time they have, including from 10:00 and 6:00 in the evening, what little time they have to generate activity. But this is an unsustainable model. It's an unsustainable model for the police officers themselves, and as you continue to grow, that time will get more crowded. So the solution to this is to add some staff, and the, I'm going to be throwing a lot of numbers here about adding staff, but I want you to understand that especially as it relates to sworn personnel, it's mostly taking advantage of the staff that are authorized now that you are in the process of recruiting. In Kyle, as in most of the rest of the country, there's been a problem in attracting people to become police officers and retaining them. That problem existed from COVID, a little before COVID, up till about the last year or so. It's improving, it's improving here in Kyle, that you are decreasing the number of vacant positions. So as you continue to replace those vacant positions, another seven patrol of police officers and two corporals need to be added. And as you get those staffing levels higher, more to what the authorized levels are, is to deploy them in a way where you've got a cover shift to address that service deficiency in the late morning, early afternoon, and early evening hours. What that does is that, geez, that graph's right there, which shows that every, almost every hour of the day meets that 50% target, which is where you need to be. The Operations Bureau has other functions as well, traffic, and we made a recommendation to move that mental health team from the Executive Bureau to operations, where there'll be some synergies. Traffic enforcement, like proactive time in the community meetings, we heard a lot about the desirability of having greater levels of traffic enforcement in the community and the community meetings. And we're recommending that you increase traffic staffing by one officer and deploy them on 12-hour shifts to get them on, to cover the city better seven days a week during some of those same kind of activity hours. On the mental health team, this is a, a problem that most police departments, regardless of size, are addressing right now. You have started that process of having a couple of officers, I think one filled, to address the special needs of crisis and behavioral health types of situations, as well as homelessness types of situations. Longer term, we recommend that you increase the functionality of that team by adding two civilians to work more from a case management kind of perspective, to get people involved in, with those needs, to be having access to mental and public health programs.
Can you tell us the difference between a, like a sworn officer who would be in the mental health field versus a civilian? Like, why are you recommending civilians there?
Sure. So frankly, when you're a police officer and you receive augmented training in mental health response and the needs of people in behavioral health and mental health kind of situations, it's in the order of 40 to 80 hours of training, usually 40 to get what's called CIT training. And you may get additional training beyond that. When you've got civilians, you've got trained people in mental health, social services, who have hundreds or thousands of hours of training.
You're just saying that a civilian mental health employee would be better trained, most likely. You can get people with far more training and expertise in that particular field, because it's not technically police-related, although it can become that if it's serious.
So the co-response model works very well, because many of these situations have an enforcement element to them. However, the sworn, the non-sworn people who aren't going to be as concerned about the enforcement side can be more focused on the treatment side.
So are the two FTEs for mental health services, those are sworn positions?
No. Well, the two that you have right now, the two that you have authorized right now.
So you're recommending to add two more civilians to the team of two for a total four?
So, yeah, and that's two teams, yes, to get day and evening, because that need is basically that same thing as that heat map, the late morning through early to mid-evening. In criminal investigation, so when I'm going to start here, while there's some sworn personnel elements associated with, it's really about support. It's not unusual to have police departments focused largely on patrol, but law enforcement is a lot more complicated than it was 10 or 15 years ago. And either you're going to not focus on those things to help make a department more accountable, better trained, more transparent to the community, or you're going to have police officers do it as an additional responsibility. And in a department your size, there's going to be some of that. But a lot of what I'm going to be talking about here are building out the police department so that you've got better support. So we look first at investigations. The number of detectives you have is adequate right now. We did just as detailed quantitative analysis of detective workload based on your own caseloads as we did with patrol, and for each type of investigative specialty, because those workloads are all different. And it works out that you're about right. But the support in that part of the organization could be augmented. The first is that you've got a civilian analyst who primarily assists detectives in some of the lower priority types of things, like checks on vehicles, criminal history checks, things like that. And that, that helps detectives, because they can spend their time on interviewing suspects or witnesses and doing evidence reviews and things like that. So you could use another one, because they could have more of those kinds of tasks taken away from them. Secondly, the issues associated with narcotics are pervasive throughout a region. You've got one position that's on the, the regional task force that's run by San Marcos, and you could use another one, because these problems are here, and your ability to contribute to this part of the operations in a regional basis will help you as well. Property and evidence needs another staff person and a supervisor. It's a much more complicated legally kind of function than, than ever. The need to audit property, the need to make sure that there's not backlogs of things checking in or things going out, the need to get rid of evidence that you don't need anymore for a variety of reasons are great. So you need better coverage throughout the week to process that and, and do those other things to make it more viable. Emergency communications. Also throughout the country, this is a major problem in terms of keeping positions filled. It's a highly stressful job and lots of turnover. You suffer from that, too. Two more telecommunicate, telecommunicator positions can really help do that. But what you really need to do is develop a better recruitment and retention program. We've got a number of suggestions in the report. That is shown across the country to make it more sustainable and to help reduce the stress. Pay can also be a factor associated with this as well. And longer term, you need to start looking at a real-time crime center, which is a way of augmenting information to help in real-time the response of officers as well as detectives for serious crimes. In the records bureau, the simple issue here is that at current staffing levels, the manager and supervisor are doing a lot of line work and not planning or interfacing with other functions within the department, et cetera. Adding a record specialist to assist with those kinds of activities will help alleviate that. In Administrative and Executive Services Bureau, similar kinds of issues with management and supervisory personnel being involved in dated, day-to-day kinds of activities and those kind of functions. Training needs to be augmented. We've recommended another position. Training is more important now than ever. Officers are getting more training than they ever have today. It's more diverse. It's not just about guns and operational techniques. It's about interfacing with the community. It's about being accountable. It's about being an effective communicator, and that takes training. Office of the Chief, three major things. One is you reach this point in your model on internal affairs where not having somebody responsible for that, for consistency's sake and for, to handle the workload for a growing department, can't work. So you need to get a dedicated position to do that. Growing areas of public relations for transparency and accountability, and emergency management to deal with in advance the crises we're dealing with now in terms of storms, which are now 12 months out of the air, heat crises, cold crises, et cetera, need staff to be able to do that, because you can't rely just on the county and your regional partners. You need to be able to contribute to that. So that's the current staffing. Projected staffing, I'm not going to go through that in a lot of detail, but what we did is we modeled the department of the future based on where you are now. So it's clearly going to be driven by development. What we did is we looked at how calls for service and crime are generated now in different neighborhoods throughout the city and modeled future development on that. There's some unknowns in there, like a sports complex and other things that can have an impact on, on law enforcement. And that's what I think is the most important part of this, this model that we've given you. Don't look at this and say, Richard Brady from Matrix Consulting Group said that in 2025, you're supposed to have this many number of people in each category. No. The workload's going to generate that. We've given you a model to be able to take changing conditions and changing needs and to convert that into staffing. Based on interest rates or economic conditions, it may be less than what we think right now, or it could be more. I don't know. But you've got the mechanisms to evaluate what the staffing needs are in the community based on this report. And as you can see here, the recommended in this report versus the authorized number that you have right now on the sworn side is two positions, in spite of everything I said, that is really looking at vacancies, but it does grow in 10 years to about 30 additional positions compared to what you have right now. But it's on the non-sworn side, the civilian side, that it is most dramatic, given the issues that I just mentioned. There's a need for another 11 non-sworn civilian positions now in a variety of capacities, records, emergency communications, the support for investigators, et cetera. But that grows to a total difference of about 28 positions over the next 10 years, given your growth in the community and the service they need from civilian positions, as well as the growth in the department and the support that they need.
The 13?
As fast as I can talk.
The 13 emergency communications FTEs, is that majority of that call takers or?
And dispatch from our?
I guess I'm trying to figure out how that fits, because that number was back before, I remember that number being there for a while, and it was because we were going to participate in a large co-located structure that had a different model. They required a bunch of call takers as opposed to dispatchers, which there was a distinction made there, I believe, and so.
There is. And the bigger center you get, the more you're able to distinguish those roles.
The reason I'm bringing it up is because our model changed. Last year, we decided to, I think it was last year, we decided to go ahead and make the move to switch from the co-located dispatch center in, in San Marcos to a hybrid version of that, but that allows for our, our unit to operate here at the Public Safety Center. And so I'm just asking to make sure that that 13 number is considering the move that we're making, not filling the FTEs at the county. It is.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So lastly, there are facility implications in everything that I've been saying, given that you've got co-located functions in the police facility right now. And with the positions that we have recommended, if you implemented those, as I said, many of those are support types of functions, not just people in the field, support on the sworn side and the civilian side, they need space. So you are out of space within the next year or two for purposes of housing police-only functions. So it's time to start planning on alternatives.
Very nice. All right, any, any other comments or questions? Back to the presenter.
I have some.
Councilwoman Parsley.
Okay. So a couple of things that you mentioned. One of them is that you said that our police department is proactive about 40 to 50% of the time, and I think that actually is why we have an excellent response time when there are calls being made to the police department. That is something that I would not like to see ever decrease, because that's how we are going to be serving the city and keeping it safe. So when you are making this analysis to determine, you know, what's the highest priority, how often do you think we're going to have to do this study again to make sure that we are not affecting response times or that we get increased vandalism or increased crime in the area?
Sure. So as I mentioned, we, we've given you the, the tools to be able to do that. We've also recommended positions in the department who would have the technical skills to be able to do that analysis, so that you could look at it at whatever detail you wanted to look at it every day of the year if you wanted to. But, because I think, you know, yes, you've got X, overall, lots of proactive time and overall excellent response times. Those are going to be challenged during the daylight hours, and that's, you're going to need to monitor that.
So are you making a defer, when you're, when you're taking, I'm assuming you're taking in consideration that probably during the night, we're going to have different types of calls that we get during the day?
Right.
And then we're going to have officers that absolutely will be a lot easier during the day with like, I don't know, crashes or vandalism or whatever it is that they're giving call for. When you're talking about this being proactive, are you accounting the different times of the day?
Sure. And, and that's an excellent point, actually, because, just because late at night and early morning hours, you've got all this pro, lots of proactive time. You can't just transfer those people onto the daytime when the need is greater, because there are calls that happen, and as you mentioned, often more serious types of crimes that takes not only a rapid response time, but multiple officers to be able to handle. So you, you can't just look at it as, let's try to solve for 40% citywide. You, you need to have that extra time during those hours because of the severity of many calls.
Yes, that's what I would, I wouldn't want to see the fact that, well, maybe our officers are going to be busy 80% of the time, and that is going to be affecting crime or response times or anything for the city of Kyle. So I just want to make sure that that is noted. The other thing that I saw on your report is that you have as a medium priority for the mental health, the operations section. the mental health, the operations section. And it makes me wonder, you know, since we had a mental health item a couple of weeks ago, how would that play along with the mental health program? And I don't know if you have taken that into consideration, mental program that we're trying to implement for the city of Kyle.
Yeah, we have. We have taken that into consideration. And medium priority in the context of this report is still a high priority. We just tended to put these these service needs in patrol and as a higher priority. That that's all.
Okay. And so the other question I had is like you just made a mention about, you know, what are we going to do? Because Kyle is developing so rapidly, are you accounting on things like the sports complex? Like, we are going to have probably games during the weekends, and maybe we're going to have drunken dads getting out of the game. And so how are we going to be accounting for that and for future developments that are going to come for the city? And you also mentioned that there that you're trying to establish positions that will be able to train in order to make these assessments themselves. That means our police department will be able to let us know this is what we need?
Well, first first of all, the last question first. You have training staff now. We're recommending another training staff because of the complexity and the need for planning, training, involving the community and planning, training, et cetera. On the projections, so the sports complex is not incorporated in this because you don't have a project yet. But what we do have is estimates from planning and development on residential housing developments and population, as well as commercial development within the community, which could change. And that's the reason why this needs to be a living kind of process and not something that we said in 2024.
So what would you recommend would be the timeline for the next time we do some sort of study like the one that you just presented?
Oh, well, I think for something as large as the the sports complex, you can have a small element within the the future planning associated with that complex on the impacts on public safety. So I don't think.
And I'm just talking in general, not just the sports complex. Like, you know, maybe next year will be the sports complex, and then two years from now there is something else. What I would like to make sure is that this type of study is done often enough that we are accounting for all that rapid growth to include facilities like a sports complex.
Well, you're you're asking a consultant how often it is desirable for them to do a study.
Obviously, I don't want to be paying you every year to do this.
No, no, not every year. I mean, we we were here six years ago, and the city changed quite a bit. I was involved in that study six years ago, seven years ago, actually.
All right. Thank you.
I'll just be real brief because I know we still got a long way to go. Okay. I guess the priority timeline, it shows 1.9.1 minutes. I think let's probably add traffic to that as well for the high priority calls. Let's also keep in mind the reason why we have a lot of these calls for like 119 from 11:00 PM to 2:00 PM. The bars are closing, okay? Off the bat. So we have a lot of people out there that have, it's a high, high active time in the night, so just beware of that as well.
Right.
So the other thing would be, Brian, I might want to ask you, is as we're looking at increasing our officers in the next year, so what are some of the territorial demographics that we should start looking at to where we need to start patrolling in other areas, like, say, within the boundaries of a county or somewhere up north? You know, those are things that we probably wouldn't consider as well if we're going to start expanding out our service for expanding our service for our police. It'd be something on the radar. And maybe to answer answer her question, a suggestion would be doing it every three to five years on the survey to see where we're at on track. Because if we're keeping up with the population and we're doing surveys every year, you know, census surveys, if it's five years, maybe that could be a recommendation.
I think typically five years is good. Kyle has grown so tremendously, we may have to do it a little bit sooner than that, but I think five years is kind of a standard metric. But like Richard was saying, we do have the model so we can plug in some of the calls, the caseloads, the types of cases, and get to a rough estimate of some of the needs that we have. And that was one of the the deliverables that we wanted to have out of the report.
Cool. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, just quick, too. When we're talking about response times, I mean, obviously, high priority ones, you know, schools, hospitals. When you're looking at your study and you said how we can help better serve the community and we're growing, would a would a substation be something that you considered or or looked at in your study to help with these response time calls, emergency calls?
So we we looked at that to a point. Substations don't help with response times because the police officers are in the field. What it does help with is community access to people, but they have their own staff associated with. Somebody's got to be at a desk. If you decentralize people, that's one way to handle a facility issue.
So they help someone go make a report, like at the mess?
Right. You can do that, too. Do you use as to have the strip mall model? Do you create a small substation on?
Accidents, yeah.
Yeah, for that kind of thing. Right.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Just keep in mind that if you do a substation, it has to have all the capabilities as a big police department. So it's a really big added cost. When we're looking at the Public Safety Center, we actually thought about a substation, but it just wasn't affordable. So it's something that we we did look at at one time. It just affordability was the reason that we didn't go down that route. But I just want to say thank you for this presentation. I'm glad that you looked at hours and response times. I know sometimes that when you're looking at recommendations, you look at the size of the city, how many people are the population is, but every city is geared differently. Crime is different in every city. So I think this response time is a great model on how to do this. So I just want to commend you on this model. It really brought a lot of things to life for me, and I thought it was a great model. So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Can I make a quick comment? I'm sorry, that's the last one. Did you guys take into consideration the calls that charter schools make to the police department? Because I know KCISD works with SROs. However, like, I work for a charter school, and I see KPD once a week in there. And as we grow, I mean, we're going to have more charter schools that are going to be needing in, you know, needing the police department for those services. And are you accounting on that?
So I'm not going to say that we drill down to every type of call in every location. However, we did look at the locations of every call, and we have mapped, you know, what are the hot spots for locations as well as in time. So to the extent that those rose to the top, that was taken into consideration. But in the future, they may rise further.
That's not public information, though, right?
Right.
Correct. All right. Anyone else? All right. Forge on. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. Next up, this is agenda item number seven. Receive a report, hold a discussion, provide staff direction on Project Ember. Those that are still here, I think you might enjoy this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. Victoria Vargas, Director of Economic Development, for the record. Thank you to Michael and Aaron for bearing with us. We have the owner and his son here joining us for this presentation. So Project Ember is Hayes County Barbecue, which many of you may be familiar with.
My favorite in San Marcos. No doubt.
They are a family-owned restaurant, Michael and Ossinet, and their son, Michael, is here as well. They established in 2007 in San Marcos. They've been featured as Texas Monthly's Top 50 Barbecue Joints since 2013, so over a decade. They recently moved out of San Marcos because they sold their facility to the Hayes County Food Bank. Just a little bit of history on the project. They were in a different building when they first opened, and then they moved to this building on the Frontage Road where most of you are familiar with. But they started off in this 1,400 square foot building, and then they grew it to this 8,000 square foot venue that also included a patio and event space. But as of June 15th of this year, they closed down because they sold their building. So I'm so happy that we were able to encourage them to develop here in Kyle. They are looking at a piece of property that is just down here on Old Highway 81, where the road intersects with the Frontage Road. So it's it's just down here to the south of us. This property is currently zoned construction manufacturing, and its previous use was a tire shop. So if you look on the map just over to the right-hand side, you'll see that it's almost directly across from Project Two Step. So I believe this project will be a catalyst to the West Side downtown redevelopment, as well as a Project Two Step kicking off development for the East Side of the downtown area as well. These are the current conditions of the property. So you can see that there is an existing building there now that Michael is going to move into and renovate. This is what the property looks like now. It it needs some work and some tender loving care that Michael is prepared and his family are prepared to put into this project. Here's looking, heading southbound on the Axis Road. So some of you may recognize this area. And the reason for this presentation, we believe this will be an elimination elimination of a blighted area in our downtown. The owners are proposing to make some property improvements that will include paved parking, replacing the perimeter fencing, burying of telecom lines, replacing some light poles that are there, and then rezoning to CBD 2, which from construction manufacturing, this is a more desirable zoning that we've identified for them. And here's.
Just to be clear, so on the spectrum of intensity of uses, construction manufacturing is number one on the list. So that they have the the property currently has the highest amount of different uses that could be put there, including chemical plants, I mean, literally anything. CBD 2 is on the complete other end of the spectrum, which is more is the appropriate zoning for our downtown. The construction manufacturing is a vestigial zoning that's carried forward, and it's been kind of a liability for the city there for some time.
That's correct. So this is their proposed concept. So these are just inspirational photos that were provided to us by Michael and his family. It'll be a 2,000 square foot barbecue restaurant. They would like to have a large playscape area for children, an outdoor music stage for live music, a walk-up bar, and just a unique dining experience for residents. And also, this is a destination restaurant, and they have visitors from actually all over the world that come seek them out because of their designation as a top 50 barbecue joint. And, you know, once this first phase happens, the family also looks to include a phase two if if all goes well for them. So you could see some additional units that could be added around there that will bring more retail and just the synergy to the whole development. This site does come with some challenges. There's some infrastructure upgrades that are required to bring the site to where it needs to be so it'll be functional for for the use. There's some waterline upgrades that are needed, fire hydrant improvements totaling over $200,000. The electrical upgrades and undergrounding of the telecom lines will also be an additional expense for the owner. So we're proposing a one-time $300,000 grant for utility improvements that would be awarded to the owners after their benchmarks are met, after the utilities are in place and those upgrades have been made. And then we'd also like to propose a the three-year restaurant incentive, 50% property tax rebates and 50% sales tax rebates. So the options are to direct staff to bring back the Chapter 380 agreement at the next meeting, first or second meeting in in August, just depending how quickly we can get the 380 drafted. With the proposal of a maximum of $300,000 grant for utility improvements and the restaurant incentive, you can also do any variation of that or not move forward, but staff recommends option one. And if you have any questions, I can answer them, and also the owners are here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Councilmember Tobias.
Real quick, thank you. That's exciting news to hear that we could possibly have a a nice restaurant downtown. Of course, small business, we're always supporting that. The parking lot, would there be an area to where, how feasible would you be looking at improving the parking lot to include the ADA compliance parking lots for, let's say, vehicles that have vans and so forth? Would you be able to accommodate with that?
Absolutely.
Come forward, please.
Yeah. We're working with a.
Please state your please state your name for the record.
My name is Mike Larnett. I'm the owner of Hayes County Barbecue. We're working with an engineer currently to be able to draw that out and obviously meet the ADH compliant requirements for parking and accessibility as well for the restaurant.
Okay, good, good. I know we do have a lot of people that would want to come to your restaurant, including a lot of veterans that would also need that that accessibility. That would also be for also improvements in your restroom areas and so forth on that end. So that'd be something to consider if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. That's actually a huge priority for us. That is on the agenda and will be completed.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Mayor Proton.
Yeah, just letting you know how excited I am about this. Look, honestly, I remember how far we've come as a city. Back in the day, there wasn't a lot of job opportunities. This was one of the, this was the old, what do you call it, concrete tank facility where we used to build concrete tanks for for different projects. But I worked there summers and afternoons in the heat, and it was one of the few jobs you could get back then. I mean, we didn't have a lot of job opportunities, but we did what we did. To see it go from that to this is really huge, and I think this is going to be a great venue for our city. I think this is going to be something that the residents have been real are going to get really behind and really excited about because it's going to be a beautiful venue. It's it's on our, it's leaving, exiting Kyle right now. It's an empty shell of a metal structure, and to see this come forward, it's really exciting. And to see the downtown coming back to life, I mean, it's been a long time since I've seen that, almost since I was a kid, a teenager at the most. It's, I see the downtown slowly, you know, get it boarded up. That's what I always say. To see it come back and be vibrant, to have families. I mean, when I pass by the park downtown and see families out there, it's amazing. I I love it. It's one of the best feelings in the world. But to see this area enhanced as well, when it's kind of been an eyesore for decades, to see it come to become something that will be a destination and something our local residents will take care of, will come out and visit, but also everybody from the region and around the world to visit this, it's exciting. So I just want to say thank you for considering Kyle and and thank you for really wanting to move your business here. Really appreciate it.
It's it's an honor, and my family and I are all excited about the making the move. And just to stress, we don't just want to serve the community, we want to be the community.
Right. Yes.
I just want to jump into and say thank you for choosing our city and that vision that you're sharing.
Yes, sir.
You know, I think it's a great location and keeping that industrial feel, like Councilman Rizzo said, you can activate that area down there. And just to see it changed dynamically, and it's going to complement what you have around you, you made a great choice and, you know, I'm glad you chose Kyle or choosing Kyle.
Councilwoman Harris.
Thank you. Thank you. We're actually so excited about being a part of the fiber that y'all have already started. Y'all have done a phenomenal job as a city as a whole. It attracted us for that reason. What y'all are doing is just phenomenal, and I commend all of y'all for what y'all have done and all the pioneering and the work y'all have done to get to this point. And for us to be embedded into that fiber, we're so honored.
Councilwoman Harris.
A couple of quick questions. You have closed on this property already?
No, ma'am.
So you're waiting on our action in order to make your decision to close?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
So once you've closed on the property, what is your timeframe in starting and finishing the project?
Our goal is to, we have this this gorgeous food trailer that we want to put just to start serving our customers, but we're looking at approximately a five-month period according to our civil engineer. So just providing that everything goes as follows, we need to rezone it. We also need to fulfill certain things, criteria that we have. So we're looking at approximately a five-month time span. Now, can we get it started immediately? Absolutely, we can. Our goal is to open it and get it going as soon as possible. Meanwhile, we just want to make sure that we're doing the due diligence of what we need to do to make things right and to do it in the right, tasteful manner.
And and to sec Councilmember Tobias's concerns, you by law are required as a publicly available facility to meet ADA guidelines, which includes restaurants and parking and accessibility.
Correct. That's part of the COO certificate. Absolutely.
Any other questions? I have a couple of things. Number one is. Number one is, I see you're, but you are already in contract, which means that, that this, the whole community is about to get really excited for you guys, because you are, you're accomplishing about four or five critical things for us simultaneously. And so I'm just wanting to make sure that you guys are committed moving forwards, because we're going to have to prep action, take votes, it's going to be on the news, all those things. So you're, you're here, ready to go.
We're 100% committed.
Okay. Well, I just want to say to echo what everyone else has said, it's welcome, and what we'd like for you to find here is a home, absolutely a home. Local business, you're, you're establishing some other, I'll just go through the list. All right, number one is the fact that in eight years, we've had no new sit-down restaurants in the downtown area, and there hadn't been really any long time before. Some folks coming in and out of rented space, buying, you know, or coming in, and so that's really frustrating, I think, for the folks who live downtown is, is to not have very many options that haven't been here for a very long time. There's not new investment, new offerings. So that's, that's number one. It's critical for us. We want, we want restaurants downtown. And so number two is we want small business owners. So the, the, we want local folks, exactly what you said before about we're not just coming here to take from the city, but we also want to give back. When a small business owner says that, we know it's true, because you don't have anything to fall back on. Your, your reputation matters in the community you're in, you're not a franchised-out kind of thing. Number three is that we, we want our restaurant incentives to cultivate and, and bring about beautification of our downtown and also to catalyze. So because of the fact that we haven't had any restaurant development projects, this is a great opportunity. But number four, the particular site you're looking at, at Gomez Tire, it has the opportunity, without the city's ability to stop it, to become any number of things, and by you coming here, you help us to set the highest and best use for that site in, for the long, long term. So I just, I just appreciate all those things. And number five, you really do have incredibly good barbecue. And number six, you're not coming from a trailer directly here, which, you know, everybody, these barbecue businesses extremely competitive, it's extremely difficult, and a lot of times when cities want to financially incentivize a brand-new small business or a small business that maybe was succeeding out of a trailer but doesn't know how to operate a larger facility, there's a lot more risk to the city. But Hayes County is an established brand that has already made the move up and then move up again, and so I think there's a lot of confidence that we have. So for, for all of those reasons, as well as the improvement to our infrastructure, I, I can't wait to, I can't wait to see this come through, so.
Well, we as a family will make y'all proud, I promise. That's a promise from us to y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
And you also sold your last building to the food bank, so thank you for that.
Yes, sir. They were very much in need, so it went to an amazing home.
What is the list, and you're coming?
He's a good guy, he's just a good guy.
You're coming to us from San Marcos as well, which we appreciate.
And I will say this, we've been...
I know there's San Marcos people watching, I'm sorry I said that.
We've been blessed, and I'll say this with all humility, this is the kind of business that y'all are fixing to embrace. During the 2015 flood, we were able to service about 2,500 people in Wimberly. We were able to go to the streets in San Marcos where the hardest-hit places were. We were to, we were able to feed victims, we were able to help the, the actual, the people that were volunteering, the Samaritans' purse, people of that nature, contractors, we were able to feed them. We didn't want anything in return, we just knew that there was a need, and we answered the call. During 2020 snowbid, the big monster HEB, which they do a fabulous job, by the way, doing what they do when in time of need, there was three days that their systems were down, along with other restaurants. We got with the emergency response coordinator, and all he told us was, "Open your doors." Because of our method of cooking, using firewood, we were able to serve for four days consecutive, 25 to 3,000 people a day. And we were able to help the community not go crazy, because there was not anywhere that people could go to go get any kind of groceries. We were selling hot food, cold food, any food. We were selling firewood, donating firewood actually to those folks that were in need. I, I did not want to charge, if you were in need, take it. And that's the kind of business that you're going to embrace here, and we are super excited to come to Kyle. We, we see the benefit all the way around, not just for us, but for the community and the city of Kyle and the surrounding areas. Thank y'all so much, we appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
You deserve that. So all the options, you want to action?
Yes.
To bring it back?
Yes, to bring back the 380.
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to bring back a Chapter 380 agreement that includes a maximum $300,000 year-one grant for utility improvements and a restaurant incentive 50% property and sales tax rebate for three years. Motion by Mayor, second by Mayor Protem, it's their discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Victoria. Thank you again, Michael. All right, we're going to do eight-minute break, we're going to reconvene at 11:05. All right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order, it's 11:06. Next up is the consent agenda. Is there any items that we would like to have pulled? I would like to pull agenda item 13.
11, 15, and 20, those are quick questions.
You want to just ask them now, or you want to vote separately?
I can ask questions, let us get to them.
Okay. Go ahead, we'll look at number 11 first.
Yeah, so we didn't do an RFP, Brian, but there is a savings anticipated if we use STANTEC for the open space master plan. So is that savings more than what we would have maybe found from an RFP?
What number are we on?
11.
Okay.
We're not doing RFP, so 11.
So on STANTEC is a professional service, so you're not required to do an RFP for a professional service. Because of the nature of their work in looking at the design of the outdoor areas of the sportsplex and all the indoor work that they've been doing, we feel like there's a tremendous advantage of using the same firm for all the public outreach and all of the additional work related to the parks master plan, and it's part and parcel of what we're doing. So it's additional work that would not have to be done by an additional firm, a separate firm, and that's why there's a savings associated with it. An RFP would not be a bid, it is a simple professional service and a scope of work for a proposal that would be made. So that's the reason for the proposal that we're presenting to you.
Okay, so you're, there's cost savings, saves time, efficiency, they're already in, into the what we're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, okay, that's fine by me, I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, that's the idea.
And then number 15, you told me just to ask the questions.
Yeah.
Number 15, wow, what is this one? Oh yeah, the animal shelter? Yeah, it's actually a decrease from last year, it's very disappointing. I know that did receive a letter, several letters and many emails from animal shelter advocates a while back stating that the staff over there could really use assistance with them, like even cleaning services there, so that they have more time to take care of the animals, get them adopted, take photos, do the marketing. So when we cut their money, it's kind of disappointing, because we need to ask ourselves when we look at these questions, I mean, what kind of, are we a community that really cares to take care of these, you know, animals over there? So I'd like, maybe the, maybe to bring this one back until we maybe talk to the shelter and see if they addressed all the needs that they have?
Well, we stand ready to proceed however the council would like. I, I do want to clarify, the staff in the city is not proposing to cut funding to the shelter. They have presented us with an invoice for what they believe is the funding that's necessary for the coming year, and this is the invoice that we're proposing to pay based on what they've submitted to us. So it's not a, it does not represent any kind of reduction in the services as far as we're concerned. If they need additional resources or funding, we, I'd certainly be happy to entertain that discussion, but they need to indicate to us what it is that they, they need and what funding is it that they need for those services.
I mean, I get a lot of...
They've not done that today.
Right, I get a lot of questions about the intake numbers going up, the pet adoptions are low, and so I can't imagine how decreasing the service money is going to be helpful.
Again, we, we rely on them to send us the bill for the services that they're providing.
And, and just to be clear, I think last year, we, they asked for 274,000. This year, they're only asking for 231,000. So I, I just don't, I, I don't know what to say about this number that's coming from the San Marcos Animal Shelter.
May I, may I say something?
Sure.
Do you just want to be throwing money at the animal shelter even when they don't need it, because they are bringing up a number for us to approve? So what you're saying makes no sense to me.
We have a number from last year.
Just give them more money, but they're not asking for it. I'm pretty sure if they need more resources and they need more things, they will be asking for those things, Miguel.
Well, you're assuming that.
I'm not assuming, they're bringing that number to us for us to approve.
Well, if you look at the statistics, I think all our intake numbers, shelter numbers have all gone up.
Then you're saying that they are not bringing good statistics to us?
Well, the statistics don't match the funding level, is what I'm saying.
Okay, let me teach them a statistic so they can bring good numbers.
If you don't mind interacting, I don't see any invoice in there, so it's hard to really say. There's nothing saying specifically what they have on there, what, what the $231,000 is for, okay? So it's hard to say, well, why, why are we decreasing it, when if this is the number they're giving us? I would have liked to seen a breakdown of what they've been spending the money on, but obviously we didn't get that either. So how can we say one or the other? If they're not going to send us an invoice, normally an invoice would say what your insurance and what your warranty and the total cost of the dogs and the cats they were talking about. If they didn't send us anything like that, where did they get that number as well? If that's what they're going by, then that's all the, that's all the information we got.
I'm just going off of the last year's number and the year before that.
I like to go with the invoice.
Can we let the chief talk? Sorry, chief.
Mayor and Council Jeff Barnett, Chief Police for the record. I'll just try to clarify a small point that I think I can add some beneficial information. So last year, when the animal shelter provided a cost estimate, they had some equipment, they had some things that were going to update in the facility, so they had a higher cost last year than they'd need this year. They also base calls, I'm sorry, they base costs on our usage as a city of the shelter. So our animal control officers work very diligently to try to return pets, I'm going to say dogs generally, but dogs and cats to their rightful owner before ever taking them to the shelter, and that reduced our overall cost year, year over year. So the more work our animal control officers can do getting pets returned in the field rather than taking them to the center, also reduce our annual budget. So there's a, some ebb and flow of the numbers depending on our intake and then what our animal shelter, I mean, our animal control officers are able to do, plus needs to replace equipment, replenish equipment, add new cages and kennels, and then staffing for the shelter. So they have a model of what they plan to offer for the year, and then we're paying our portion based on what we are taking to the shelter. So sometimes the numbers go down because of great work from animal control, sometimes it's also related to a less, a lesser need for additional big equipment, bigger freezers, bigger refrigerators and things. When you buy them one year, then you don't have to replenish them next year, they're going to last you five to 10 years. So it's, it's a combination of efforts, I hope that helps understand why it could go down and it not be a bad thing, it's a good thing, and it doesn't really detriment to, it's not a detriment to services.
Thank you, chief, yes. That's a, that's a great answer, and I knew that, that there's room to do whatever they're asking for, but I just, I just wasn't trying, I was trying to make sense of why the decrease, and you answered that.
All right, you want to go on, number 20?
So are we back to 20 now? Yeah, number 20, is Stephanie here?
No, Stephanie's out of town.
Yeah, so just, I wanted to make the point, I could, I don't know, Perez, I asked Perez earlier, there's a number that cannot be calculated just looking at the, at the table, and so that's kind of part of the reason why I thought a workshop would be helpful for residents and even for myself.
So all this item is doing is calling a public hearing?
Right.
That's all we're doing right now?
Okay.
The numbers are not final, the documents are, we'll bring the final documents in August. This is just to call a public hearing.
Right, but it, it does say $75 million, turns four, right? Share with the county, share with the city. So my point is only that, even for, for someone who, who can follow it, you know, I, I find that there's a number missing to get to the annual contribution from the city and the county going into the turn, so, so that's why there's a need to have more, more information about some of the, how the, how the setup is made up. But that's it. I mean, Stephanie's not here, so we can't answer it.
I, I don't know if Chris, Chris was going to be online, I don't know if he has made it to this late hour, he was ill from Stephanie's office.
Well, that, that's an estimate of the construction cost for the project and the inputs from the county's contribution and the city's contribution, that's what's part of the draft service and assessment plan. But against, Amy pointed out, those figures will be brought back to you in, in August. This is simply to call the public hearing, so they're preliminary numbers.
Right, yeah, yeah, Brian, so what I was saying is like the increment value, I can't get to the amount from that increment value just looking at that, so there's a missing calculation part, so that's all.
We'll have that in the August timeframe, yes, sir.
That would, that's all I have for my items.
Motions?
Are you going to pull 13?
Yes.
Okay, mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agendas, items eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Harris, that we approve the consent agenda except for item 13, it's their discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries six to, six to zero. All right, agenda item number 13 is second reading, consider approval of an ordinance admitting Chapter 53 zoning in the city of Code, Code of Ordinances to rezone approximately .89 acres of land from retail services and 4.33 acres of land from agriculture to PUD, approximately 5.22 acres of RS for property located at 24, 155 and 24, 321, IH 35. This item was, I, I did not vote on it last time, was having connection issues, and I didn't have a chance to abstain, but I want to make sure that I clarify that I have a conflict of interest on this as I consult with a gas station company, and so I want to make sure that I fill out the affidavit and abstain, that's the only reason. So I'll turn it over to you guys for motions, votes.
So we have to vote on it again?
Yeah.
To, to pass it or fail it?
I just came up.
Okay, so item number 13, second reading, consider approval of ordinance admitting Chapter 53 of the zoning code, the ordinance to rezone approximately .89 acres of land from RS retail services to, and 4.33 acres of land from agriculture to PUD, planned unit development, approximately 5.22 acres RS for property located at 24, 155 and 24, 321, IH 35 in Hayes County, Texas. Presenter is Will Wilkinson. Do we want a presentation, do we want to take a vote?
I think our, our intent would not be to provide a presentation unless there's questions, I think it's just a question of a vote.
Any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion approved. I'm sorry, motion approved.
Second.
Aye.
All right. We've got a motion by the mayor, Protem, second by Councilmember Dr. Lauralee Harris. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six oh.
Five oh. All right.
I wasn't ready for that.
All right, next up is agenda item number 21, first reading, consider approval of an ordinance calling special election to be held in the city of Kyle to consider a non-binding proposition accordance with Section 6.15 of the city of Kyle Charter on whether or not the mayor and members of city council should be eligible to receive health insurance benefits on the same terms as full-city time employees. Six votes required, Mrs. Alcorn Reed.
Good evening, mayor and council, Amy Alcorn Reed, City Attorney for the record. This item was on the last agenda, it was brought by Councilmember Zuniga. On July 2nd, the council voted four to three to direct the city manager to bring back an item, putting a non-binding ballot proposition on the ballot for November of this year. The non-binding ballot propositions are authorized under Section 6.15 of the city Would anybody be objective if I just add a little language to number two? So, it's basically, we can go with, should elected officials, mayor and city council members be eligible to receive health, dental, and life insurance benefits as the same qualified terms as full or part-time employees?
Just as a note, councilmember, you're not eligible for life insurance currently. It's health, dental, and vision.
Okay, so, health, dental, and vision, insurance benefits on the same qualified terms as a full or part-time employees, because part-time can't get them, obviously. So, it'd be, so it'd be full-time employees.
Right.
So, health, dental, vision benefits on the same qualified terms as full-time employees, because it's just not for now. This is just for future council members, so that way, they could be clear on any of this, what we're voting on. So, it's just basically in detail.
Looking for motions. I don't have anything to add, so I'm just looking for motions.
Sure. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to go with proposal number two, to approve the ordinance and amend the language stating, should elected officials, mayor or members of city council be eligible to receive health, dental, and life insurance benefits as the same qualified terms as full or part-time employees? Because part-time can't get them, obviously. So, it'd be, so it'd be full-time employees.
Right.
So, health, dental, vision benefits on the same qualified terms as full-time employees, because it's just not for now. This is just for future council members, so that way, they could be clear on any of this, what we're voting on. So, it's just basically in detail.
Looking for motions. I don't have anything to add, so I'm just looking for motions.
Sure. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to go with proposal number two, to approve the ordinance and amend the language stating, should elected officials, mayor or members of city council be eligible to receive health, dental, and vision insurance benefits as the same qualification terms as a full-time employee.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Do we approve the ordinance with the amendments as stated by Councilmember Tobias? Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes.
I do have a comment on the motion that was made, because we have always been eligible. It's just that I'm assuming that the proposition is for the city of Kyle or the taxpayers to cover that insurance.
It's on the same terms as full-time employees, and so currently, that's how the city covers.
You're right, you're right. I apologize for that.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I remember when we first brought this up, I just want to give a little history. Mr. Tobias, you're right, I have not done a study or anything on, on, you know, voting patterns or anything like that. I, I did, I have in the past, worked really hard to try to get more people in the east side of Kyle engaged, worked with different organizations to create more people registered to vote and to be a part of the process. To get more representation for the east side is something that I was hoping to do. That's something that I've always felt compelled to do since I've been elected. I think that east side representation is something that we really need when we're looking at. I look at the elections and the positions held here right now. I know that sometimes, you know, we get more representation on the west side than we do on the east side, and I'm just wondering, how do we get that east side representation to equal out? And sometimes I, maybe I overthink things, I don't know, but for me, voting for this insurance was trying to give more people an opportunity to run for offices, was my goal was. Voting for the insurance, I knew right away, I wasn't going to take it, and the reason why is because I voted for it. I just didn't want people thinking that I was voting for insurance for myself. What I was doing is voting on insurance and hoping that I could encourage others to run for office and try to get more representation on the east side, was my goal was, and that's still what my goal is right now, is trying to get more people on the east side of Kyle engaged in the process and giving them an opportunity to run. And my, do I know what that pattern is? I really don't, honestly. I'm probably just reaching here, and, but I'm going to do my best to continue to advocate for it, to work towards it, and to do anything I can within our bounds to try to get more people, more representation for the east side of Kyle. But I just want everybody to know that I didn't vote for the insurance to take it myself. I had no interest in taking it. It was always to give more opportunity to others to run for office, and that's kind of what my goal was, so just wanted to put that out there.
All right, any further discussion?
I'll just jump in. My, so when I brought this up, I, I brought it because I've been hearing from many residents, and they've been speaking to me and talking to me and saying, well, why don't you speak up? Why don't you say it's when you did, disapproved it? So, I wanted just to make it clear and use our process that we have within the charter and give or look at, is this really something that the majority wants to do? And if they want it, then let's do it moving forward for councils who run, become full-time. But right now, just for me, is to get data from the community and see if this is something we can adopt as a policy moving forward. So, it's just about collecting that data from people that want to vote and want to let us know they don't have the time to come up here and, and give us their thought, but is the majority coming or is the minority coming? I don't know, but the best way to get that data is put it, put it out there where people have the opportunity to say yes or no.
Councilmember Parsley?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that, that we all understand that what, what Councilmember Zuniga is proposing is not really going to make, I mean, at the end of the day, whether the residents decide yes or no, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, it's an opinion. Still, at the end of the day, council votes if they decide to have the insurance or not. So, what he is proposing, I think is great. Let's just go ahead and get an idea of what our residents feel like if the council members that they elect should or not have paid insurance as a part of some sort of compensation. So, I, I think it would be a good idea. Right now, we have seven people sitting in council that are amazing people, and when we all got elected, none of us were continuing, were considering we were going to have health insurance. So, getting the opinion of the residents of Kyle should matter to all of us. Maybe they decide that they don't want for us to have health insurance as a part of our compensation, and if they, if that attracts people from running for council, then that's a decision that the residents are making. So, I, I don't see anything wrong with that. I think that we should allow them to give an opinion on whether the council members that they elect should or should not have paid health insurance.
So, that is correct, councilmember. The ballot proposition would not be binding on city council. We are required to put in the ordinance that it's not binding on city council, and we are not allowed to tell the residents what the results of that vote would be. So, that's, that's provided in the city charter. The purpose of these non-binding propositions is just to gauge the community.
Okay, I, so if they still don't even see what the answer is, I think even more we should be taking in consideration what their opinion is.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
No.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Mitchell?
No.
Tobias?
Aye.
Heiser?
No.
Rizzo?
No.
All right, motion fails. Oh, I'm sorry.
Parsley.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I mean, I
I'm sorry, Miguel, I didn't see you. All right, motion fails three to four. I counted your is, yes, I apologize.
It's okay.
All right, next up is agenda item number 22, consider possible action to direct city manager and staff to bring RFP, RFQ for Realtor Services and Transactions. Councilmember Zuniga.
Oh, thank you, yeah, just really brief. Brian, you mentioned a lot, sometimes what we do is we get professional services, and you don't necessarily need to RFP, RFQ them. So, just, I know that we're moving fast, we're, we're acquiring, we're seeing new ideas, new visions, they're happening really fast, and I would like to just have the opportunity for other small business owners or brokers to participate in that and have a level playing field so that they can also work with the city. So, this agenda item is just to create a pool that we can choose from local Realtors as we continue growing and we're looking for other properties or other buildings, whatever it is, because I think that when we first brought our Realtor on, we were looking at strategically moving fast, but now, there's an opportunity to allow more people to get involved, since we're working on a few things right now and more are coming down the pipeline. So, that's what I brought this for.
Councilmember Harris?
I think that we voted to, before I was on the council, I think, to have a rotating pool of Realtors that we would choose from rather than arbitrarily pick one. Is that right?
No, not that I'm aware of. The council voted on a contract with Chris Torre. That vote was on specific projects that were identified for him that were under discussion at the time. I think, you know, if we were to have some other project that you wanted to look at, we could look at potentially having some other process for that, but right now, we have a Realtor under contract for all of those projects that we've been pursuing.
The current projects?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're talking about future projects?
My only problem, I, I think we, we should be looking at whichever path brings us the most, the best value, but it's really hard to hire Realtor Services while you don't have properties identified. So, I'm not sure exactly what the process there to go through is.
Just want to say, yeah, I think, you know, what we've got under contracts, under contracting moving forward, we could always start identifying others that could help us, I mean, just so that way, we're, doesn't look like we're just using, monopolizing one person, that we can, we're actually, you know, doing our due diligence, using more than one Realtor in acquisitions, maybe a rotating pool or something. Identify people that are actually capable of doing that kind of work is important. I mean, we just can't get somebody that doesn't know the acquisitions that we're purchasing. Someone that, you know, has experience in it will be key and making sure they have the qualifications for it. But I think on future projects, I'm okay with looking at other Realtors if we have people in the field that are qualified to do it.
This, this is what this is for, to create a pool?
Yeah. I, I think that it would be, it would work perhaps best if we have an RFI that they can, it's a request for interest rather than for proposals, and that way, we would have a, a pool of people that would be interested in doing commercial real estate for the city, and we can, we can vet those.
If I could, if the, the direction of the council is to go through a formal process, I'd recommend a request for qualifications, and this would be a list of their professional qualifications of why they would be, why they could be enlisted for those services, and then from that, if we wanted to call that down to a list of a few that we wanted to have for a rotation list, that's possible. What would their fee structure be? Then a proposal, they could submit proposals for, for their fee structure and how they would do those services. We can certainly do that if that's the council's direction. I, I think the question's going to be from that real estate community is, what are you trying to buy and what type of sales do you think I'm going to get? And I have, I don't know how to answer that question.
Yeah.
That's okay, because it's just to get on the list.
I'm afraid it could, and I'm afraid for that reason, it could potentially limit the pool. It does take time to put those type of qualifications together and to go through a process. I'm happy to do it, but I do want you to be aware of that limitation. It's a, it's a natural question to be asked, and I don't have an answer for that.
Councilmember Tobias?
Question, Brian. In your, in your, with your experience in, in working in other cities, what would be the normal process that your past experience would have brought to something like this? Because again, we can go ahead and say, let's get a pool of Realtors, but again, we're a big city, but it's still a small town where we know a lot of Realtors, you know, we're friends with them, and who's to say that I choose Ms. Becky over here and that Ms. Becky doesn't get along with somebody here on council or in the city, and you have that, again, conflict of interest going on. And so, from a professional standpoint, when it comes to purchasing land or property from a city standpoint, your experience, what have you seen that you could possibly recommend?
My recommendation, if you went through a process like that, would, would be looked at a national real estate firm, CBRE, someone like that, large firms that have a very strong commercial real estate presence. There's pros of that, that you have distance from it, they don't know anyone in the community, you don't know them, there's a appearance of separation there and independence that I think is good. The downside of that is sometimes they don't know the community very well, their ability to interact with certain property owners is not as strong, but that's the only way, that's the push and pull here of this type of argument is, any real estate agent you hire in this city knows someone, and they know you, they know your neighbors, and you cannot escape that of having that kind of process. So, a national real estate firm, brokerage firm, that would be the way I would recommend it. If you go through the RFQ process, that would be where I would be leaning towards to eliminate that potential question of independence, but it does come at a cost. On some properties, those national firms may not be interested in small sales. They may not be interested in, in property owners that have a more personal touch, that want to sit down over a cup of coffee and talk about something. They're, they're more, more business oriented.
True, that's true, because if you're interested in the, the city's interested in a certain property, then we'd have to go through RFQ process, we'd have to vet them out, and next thing you know, that property is sold, okay? So, or, and then, of course, you get the conflict of interest here where you know the property owner, or, you know, everybody knows everybody, and they may try to raise a price or go above value, and you just never know. But yeah, you just, you just get stuck in that situation, and of course, you can't just say, well, why don't we just have our legal people do it? You know, that's not their profession to go out and look for specific areas of land. So, it's, it gets tricky in that sense.
What do you want to do?
Well, whatever, like a recommendation, what Brian's saying is, we have to go with something of that nature, but again, there's the pros and cons with that. You know, it's, it's tough.
This is a tough one.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Councilmember Parsley, go ahead.
About how many fees have we paid or what is the accumulated until now of the real estate fees that have been paid to the real estate person that has been helping us until now? So, what I'm thinking is, if we're going to continue acquiring land, would it make sense for us to hire somebody that is doing these deals for us for just a salary instead of collecting any sort of fee?
It's just not the way the industry works.
No, no, I don't believe it makes sense to hire an in-staff, you know, a staff member to do this, this type of work. I think you need to be a trained real estate broker, and, and it's also, it comes and goes. We, right now, we have a few properties that we're pursuing. I believe we've closed on one, two maybe?
Two.
So, not many. We have others in process. I'd have to, I don't know what that number is, Councilmember Parsley, of the total commissions, we can certainly get that for you, but it's just not enough work, in our opinion, to justify a staff member 365 days a year.
And then, so, if, if that makes no sense, then I would think that we would want to have some sort of set of qualifications that a real estate agent can bring up to us if they want to be a participant on that poll, and then, just like we have done with engineering firms, just have top three or four ones that we like to work with, and then do a rotation between those.
And again, I can bring you two firms, three firms, 10 firms. I'm afraid you're going to be right back in the same situation that you find yourself in today, because you'll have the same questions.
Well, if we don't do this with engineering firms, then I feel like we need to stop messing around and just let Brian handle a couple of engineer, a couple of around and just let Brian handle a couple of engineer, a couple of real estate firms that can do this for us, and then go from there.
I mean, I agree. I mean, I'm thinking, long-term, with the city, how do we, how do we, how is it seen from the outside? And it's not, not seen very well. It could show a lot of favoritism. So creating a pool of other qualified Realtors and just do a real random list rotation, to me, makes the most fairest sense. But I don't want to speak for all council. I just want to say that I think that that would be fair, open, and transparent moving forward. And we're done with this, because the city is not done growing, and we're not done getting new ideas all the time. Things just keep popping up, that this looks attract, this looks good, this looks good. And I'm just like, okay. But when are we going to make it inclusive? We've got to think about how is it seen? Okay? That's what I have to say.
Mayor, the other suggestion, well, the other idea I had, do we, could this be something that, I hate to throw it on them, but like, any of the boards or commissions could be able to help out with? Like, the tourism board, or Board of Adjustments? I'm just brainstorming.
To help us buy real estate?
Like, to just, like, if the city's interested in specific thing, if a specific property for whatever it is, that we use the board, or just somebody to help us navigate who we should use. I mean, but then again, we're back in the same situation again, because there's people out there. I mean, who's to say, two years from now, I retire and I get my real estate license? You know? You know, it, we get into those situations, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Well, if we go only local Realtors in an RFQ process, I think the issue amplifies by 10, 100-fold. I do not say this solves it. I think it makes it worse, personally. I would recommend we go with CBRE or something like that, if that's the route that we wanted to go. But we might not buy three properties in the next five years, outside of the ones we've already identified. So if you have six Realtors on staff, and then you get one project, you know, it's like, you know, it's just, it's, it's just more of it. All right. Let's motion it.
Make a motion to direct Brian to look for, what is this, a national firm, create a rotating pool list of Realtor services, professional transaction services.
All right. Motion's to get a national, you sure you want to make that motion? I don't think that's quite what you were asking for initially. But I'm more favorable to that than the initial. I mean, I think getting that, national brokerage firms is an easier path, because they...
I'm also trying to understand the motion. Is it a rotating list of national firms, or a single national?
A national firm, right?
Okay.
And then let's let them deal with it. One national firm. Daniel, I said one.
All right, there's the motion. Is there a second?
Sorry, I didn't say one. I mean, you're saying one, but then your, your item talked about rotating. So do we want one national one, or do we want rotating ones? Like, I just want to make sure you, I understand your motion.
Well, the, the national, do they have enough diversity in there?
What do you mean by diversity?
What do you mean with that diversity?
Are they choosing just one? Is it just one Realtor that works for the national?
It's a firm. It's a firm, right? So that would probably be more than one person.
So if you picked a national firm, they would likely assign us a broker that would be, you know, managing the account. But that person could change from time to time, based on, they may come and go from the firm, they may have other needs. But we would have someone assigned to us from the firm that would manage our account. That's how it would work.
It's fine by me.
Well, Hank, you're in them, actually, we're in the middle of a motion. I kind of let it go. So do you want to restate the motion? I'll call for a second.
Yes. Let me restate that motion. Brian?
I'm ready.
Direct city manager and staff to bring back a national firm that does these business transactions, right? Real estate transactions.
Commercial, national, commercial, real estate firm.
RFQ for it?
Yes.
Correct. All right, that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilwoman Zuniga, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Is there a discussion on the motion? I'm not for it. I don't see, I don't see how taking money away from local business, outside of the fact that people want to have their opinions about it. But I don't see how that is small-town friendly. If it was the opposite way, I just, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not there. So.
I know, I lost this to you. I'm, I mean, I...
Councilor Harris. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Were you, were you going?
Go ahead, let her go.
All right, Councilor Harris, go ahead.
I really prefer to use local Realtors. They negotiate with us. They negotiate their fees with us. They know the community. And I just prefer to do local. I don't think at having a, given Brian's excellent description of how that works, how that would work, how it might be three years before we buy another property, or four, or five, having a list is probably not particularly conducive. Knowing, we know who the commercial Realtors are in this city, pretty much. So I don't, you know, yes, we should be probably rotating and not always using the same Realtor. But that should be an administrative policy.
Which is something that we took action on with the vote, to hire elite Realty advisors for the specific properties. We also took motion that after that, we would go on to a rotation, or would consider other options.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, I know. We're just not there, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think the only concern I have of that is, what if somebody gets their hurt, feelings hurt because they weren't on that rotation? I mean, we all know a lot of Realtors in this city. I mean, and my concern right now is, does somebody get upset, and then we add more, and we keep adding to the rotation? I don't, I really don't know. I mean, look, I don't want to make anybody mad. That's the big thing about it. Because there's a lot of great Realtors that I know here in Kyle, but, you know, it's tough. Is that their profession? Is that their expertise? Probably not, but they'll, they'll feel bad because they didn't get picked, right? I don't know.
No, I don't think so. They're used to not getting picked.
That's true. You're right. You're right.
It's us that's going to feel bad, more than any...
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion?
You have a good point. We're going to be taking, we are going to be taking businesses out of possibly Kyle residents when we do this. And so, then you're not being small-business friendly if we do this, if we go with the motion that you just proposed. Now, would everybody be okay? Maybe setting up qualifications and picking the top three Realtors, biggest producers?
How are we going to make that determination? Do you want council to make the decision on narrowing them down?
No, 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 no. Like, we are not experts. We set qualifications, or we direct staff to think about the best qualifications that a real estate person should have in order to work with the city of Kyle for commercial deals. But I'm not an expert. So I cannot make those qualifications. Neither is Zuniga.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
I'm still thinking on this. I mean, it's really hard. I mean, I'm still, give me, give me some time to process this. Because, you know, my thing is, I want to keep dollars locally, but at the same time, you know, I'm going to make some people upset. We're going to make people upset they don't get picked. But the other thing with national, there's no, we never know who we're working with. You know, that's...
This isn't action we have to take now. This is just being brought forward for a variety of reasons, but we don't have properties with...
We can still discuss it right now. That's what I'm doing. Still discussing. I'm weighing what our options are. Because darn if we do, darn if we don't, right? It's just one of those things where this is really tough, because, I mean, what is the right path here? And I don't know. Honestly, I don't know what the right path here is. I mean, I guess I'm looking at you, Brian, right now.
Can't make our decisions for us.
No, no, but I'm not asking them to make decisions. But what have you seen in other cities that works the best?
National, commercial, real estate firm. That's the only way to get out of the political conundrum you find yourselves in. Doesn't mean you can't do it, otherwise. I can come up with a number of criteria. All of them will likely be questioned and second-guessed. I can come up with several things. I can bring you back three or four firms. And I guarantee you that you will have a difficult choice to make at that time, when I bring back several firms. Whatever I have as the cut to get it down to three, or four, or five, or six, there's going to be another 10 that want to question why they aren't on that list. But we can do it. I just, I want you to think about the end in mind of the process of, that will come back to you, and you will have a difficult choice. And I'm not sure that it'll be as clear, perhaps, as you think it might be. That's my only caution to you. That's why I've done in the past, I've had national, commercial, real estate firms for this very reason. There's downsides to using them, as noted. But, you know, right now, I don't have a particular property in mind, in that, you know, we do have to be able to move quickly. I think that's a fair point, that we need to have someone perhaps under retainer, if we were to do something like that. But we just don't have anything really on the horizon.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, we don't have the volume of properties. But when I look at this, it's like, the opportunities for other small business agents and brokers to get that one little property, working with the municipality, is something that they can then move on. And they've got that on their resume, and it helps them, helps them in the long run, too. Because, and if you keep it local, that's fine. But allow other locals to get that opportunity as well. So, so they could be more prosperous, you know, spread the wealth. That's what I'm trying to say. I mean, I think it...
But your motion is to go with the national.
Oh, I didn't say, it doesn't have to be that.
No, but that's what your motion's on, right? That's what we're discussing, is your motion.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mitchell?
No.
Hi, sir.
Councilor Harris, that didn't come through. Can you do it one more time, please? Okay, thank you.
What was his vote?
No.
No? Okay. Rizzo?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Tobias?
No.
Parsley?
Yes.
Zuniga?
Yes.
All right. Motion fails. Three to four. Next up is agenda item number, I lost it.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Consider a possible action to direct city manager and staff to create a public financial workshop on tax rates, municipal bonds, TERS, et cetera. Councilor Zuniga.
Yeah, just another, one of those questions I get all the time from residents. To explain to them the TERS, explain to them the bonds, explain to them their tax rate from the bonds and the roads. So I think that people, if they can get more information from us, and if we have that information by creating maybe something simple, a workshop in a day or two, to help educate our residents about what, where is, where is their tax dollars go? How much of it is impacted by our bonds? I mean, many people don't know that, you know, what, what a bond increase does to their property taxes. They also don't even understand that it's one part. There's a lot of other parts that come together. And so, and then that there's bonds that we're paying off, bonds that are coming later, and then there's incremented revenue. So there's just a many different things, a lot of information. I think it's too much in a workshop, even for new council members, even for seasoned council members. And I think that this would be helpful to everyone, so that people that want to get involved, be more active in the community, they know, they could tell other people what exactly, you know, their dollars mean, what does our general fund mean. So I think it'd be great to invest in a financial workshop, some sort of training for our, for our community. That's, that's what I like to see. And then we don't have to do it right now. It can just happen when they, when, after things slow down a bit. They can probably pick something like this up in the, in the slow season.
Councilor Parsley.
Thank you. So I believe I talked to you about this about two months ago, that after the water meeting that was held at City Hall, that I thought it would be a fantastic idea to bring some sort of workshop to the community right before budget season, because it will make things easier for residents to understand. And I also think it will be a great refresher for council members that still don't understand the concept of TERS. I know I was one of those that had a lot of misconceptions about what TERSs were, the type of TERSs we have in the city of Kyle. So I am in full support of this item. I think it's a short time that we have right now, but it would be great to have something right before we go into the budget meetings, that sort of gives an explanation to the residents on a lot of our economic development incentives, and what we currently own, and bonds, and all of that. So I think it would be great.
Councilor Harris.
I think we've been talking about having a variety of workshops for the public. The ones we've tried to hold as individual council members have been poorly attended. But it's really great if we can do ones that are more public forum, like we have here. There are issues with that, such as staff involvement, council involvement. But those can be worked through. So if I, if I could, Councilmember Zuniga, I'd like to amend your motion, if you would accept one, to direct the staff to bring forward a plan for regular community education sessions on a variety of issues of importance, such as tax incentives, development guidelines, and state restrictions, water, wastewater, water, parks and activities, police, the 3-1-1 system. Because there's a whole group of things. We could call it the more you know. It would be monthly, or something, you know, that, that the staff finds to be workable. But I think that is a great idea. And I think that it would be one of the series.
Yeah, mini-series.
Mayor Protim, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor. So I just want to remind council that Stephanie Lively, or Bond Council, actually did a presentation like that, and gave us a really great, what do you call it, workshop on TERSs. That is still on our city website. So Brian, if staff could get that to air, maybe on the Channel 10 station, maybe even on our website, would be great. Because that was a great presentation that Stephanie gave us. She gave us a deeper understanding what a TERS was. I don't think I had ever, I thought I knew everything I knew about TERS. But when she gave that presentation, I actually learned a lot from it. So I think that presentation would take care of that issue on the TERS. And then, on the other ones, if y'all want to do something, I'm, I'm good with that. But the TERS one's already been done.
Well, I, I love this discussion. I love what Dr. Harris had to say as, as well. I think an idea, the idea of a communication series, where we're picking out topics and setting those up, they don't have to be big blowouts. For example, something on the water could be at Public Works, you know, and, you know, on TERS could be here, or whatever. But a, but a series makes, makes a lot of sense to me. I think that if you try to do it too much, it might become a burden. And also be very lowly attended. I've had, you know, sometimes when everybody's riled up, you're going to have a, you guys are going to have a big town hall here in a few days. Those kind of things happen. But when you're having a, you know, workshop on a TERS, you might find that you have, actually have more staff there than people. So I want to, they need to be important. They need to be important to the community. And I think that's where, what Dr. Harris had to say is really important, to let staff come up with their own plan. But what we have to give them is just the basic parameters of what we're, what we're shooting for. I kind of like the idea of four to six month, four to six meetings a year. So either quarterly, or maybe like every other month. And myself, I think if you go too frequent, if the topics are really well, maybe they don't cannibalize. But that would be my thought. We could start with TERS and just do it again.
I'm fine with the quarterly. But in the financial workshop, that it covers a bit of bonds, a bit of tax rates, and a bit of TERSs. Because...
Well, that can be the first one we do.
Because people get intimidated by, by, by the professionals. And sometimes, being next to another council member, your residents, it's less inform, it's more informal. They feel like they can ask questions. They don't have to be intimidated, you know, of the suits. So it's something like that, where they can feel like they can participate and get something out of it.
So in light of the time, would you be okay with Dr. Harris's motion? I thought that was really well worded. Do you want to read it one more time?
Quarterly, some kind of quarterly series.
I didn't say...
She didn't specify. Staff would be the one. I'm just saying, give them some parameters. They didn't want to do it, obviously. But we, but it's okay. If we don't do it too frequently, I think that we could all benefit from it.
It's a refresher.
All right. You want to read it out one more time?
To direct the, I make a motion to direct the staff to bring forward, amend Dr. Zuniga's motion.
I don't think we have a motion yet, do we?
No.
No motion. So it's yours. Go ahead.
So to direct the staff to bring forward a plan for regular community education sessions on a variety of issues of importance to our community. And I suggested a variety of topics which don't have to go in the motion.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilor Harris, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga. We approve the direction of staff as presented. Is there a discussion on that?
Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed.
Just a quick reminder that we do have that presentation by Stephanie Lively. We can start airing that.
It is there, yeah.
Go.
You can also, there's a lot of good YouTube videos on TERSs that are out there, professionals as well, and 3-1-1, and all those things, but motion carries six to zero. But the, but there's an extra element of local and being engaged with-
Mayor, don't forget about my absence, please.
I won't. All right, we have two more items. All right, next up is agenda item number twenty-four. I've been told one's five minutes and one's one minute. That's what I've been told. Receiver report holds discussion, provides staff direction regarding the police department's proposed budget for fiscal year 24-25.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, thank you for your time. I'll be very respectful of the hour and your remaining agenda items. You have before you our budget presentation. Can everybody, yeah, I see it there, okay. So I'm going to move quickly through this. Slide number one tells you about the importance of the police department and all of the various divisions that we supply. Slide two outlines those. You can see that the police department is not only uniformed officers, but has a variety of divisions, including animal control, emergency management, 911 dispatch, records, traffic, patrol operations, and criminal investigations. That's a lot of operations, so you're going to see this budget walk through this slide here. And I want to thank my, my staff, and I want to thank the finance department for helping us put this together. The two most important lines on this, and I'll certainly stop and answer any questions or go slower, but the two most important lines are the total budget that you see as we move forward from the 23-24 current budget year to the 24-25 proposed budget that I have. It takes us from just shy of eighteen million to just barely over twenty-one million. The two main factors in that are the items that you heard before you tonight from the Matrix study, and our civil service contractual obligations for the step increases, and then the operational costs associated with that. So those are really the main drivers of this year's budget presentation. I'm acknowledging that it's the Matrix staffing analysis that's driving us, and we're certainly working with the city manager for perhaps a multi-year, multi-phased approach, because we understand that that's a lot of ask. This slide represents the fact that we noticed that when we have enough officers on duty and on patrol, much like you heard from Matrix, when they have time to intervene in crime, to see crime and prevent that crime, that our crime rate actually goes down. So a lot of this is based on what Matrix talked about tonight, and our budget shows what they told you earlier actually reduces crime. So we try to follow that model to enhance our crime prevention. You see that we have an ask for a substantial number of civilian staff that were outlined in the Matrix study. Each one of those were highlighted to you. I won't take the time unless there's one you want to ask about. You can see the list here. All of these were discussed from the Matrix study earlier this evening, so everything we're asking for is in line with that. I'll point out the one consideration that we've asked the city manager to allow us to bring forward for consideration that is above and beyond, or a scope outside of that. If you look on, let me try to find it for you here. No, I just want to highlight, and actually, what I, one thing I wanted to point out for you is, you see down here on about number four there, it says two police service specialists. This is one thing that was not highlighted in the police study, but I think it's a growing trend, and it's something that we could take advantage of here in the city of Kyle. These are non-sworn civilians that would take non-emergent police reports, where there's not a threat to safety for them to take that report. An example would be the lobby walk-ins when a citizen comes to the police department to report that their item was stolen from their property two or three days ago, or that their credit card was used in California and they need a fraud report. These are things that it doesn't take an armed police officer to take that report, they're simply processing and intaking reports. We have a proposal to consider doing some non-sworn report takers, for that matter. We also now offer online reporting to citizens, but that report is not a complete report. There's still staff members that have to touch that and make that fit into the police reporting module. These civilians would take, may take those civilian-based reports and turn them into a full police report. Moving forward, I want to show you at the very bottom, you see the two real-time crime center analysts. That comes from several years' worth of research by the police department, city council's direction from years ago to use technology to work smarter, not harder. You'll see that one of our items to ask for is the Fuchsia Center. The real-time crime center analysts are the ones that run that, so that's who would move that forward. Nothing to highlight here that wasn't already discussed in your Matrix study, but I'll be happy to answer questions.
Do you have any questions for Chief?
Yeah, just wanted to say, going back to those two non-sworn officers take reports, I think that's a great idea. I, I see other cities struggling with that. I've seen people that post about somebody not showing up to take a report for two, three hours. Sometimes people wait six hours. Anything we can do to make people feel like they're being heard, they get their case in front of, you know, the officers, is really, really important. So I think those are, I think that's a great idea. Honestly, I think that's awesome. People, I mean, I know that we have online capability, but is that report always accurate and have enough information in it?
Right.
To have someone to come out and work with those people, be able to give them a call back, or an email back is going to be important, so. And this is not taking an officer off the street either. So I think this is a great recommendation.
Thank you very much. The rest of the positions are the sworn that you've already heard about tonight. It's some restructuring of our existing positions, and then you heard earlier that it only requires two more additional sworn staff members to meet that Matrix goal. And then we'll reorganize according to the plan and, and make that come to fruition. You also see some emergency management, it was mentioned in the study as well. They offer that for the growth and future planning of that organization. The hardware that we're looking for, I'll just point out the major ones, I think they're super important. The Fuchsia software, that's the real-time crime center operational software. That software is amazing and offers us the latest technology. It does a variety of things that help us work more efficiently and better. He mentioned that that center gives real-time information to responding officers about safety needs, wanted persons and such. The rest, we've got an attack bags here, active attack mass casualty bags, those are first responder medical kits for our police officers. The aggravated robbery that happened in the community ten days ago or so, our officers arrived first on that scene, and they offered medical assistance to that victim, gunshot victim, and used equipment that we've given them, but we need to get more, so that they have medical equipment. We're the first arrivals on most mass injuries, and we're trying to equip them. Dedicated vest line at the very bottom, that's to replace our police officer vests that are expiring. Those are good for about five years, and we have a number, our growing staff now, we have a number of those that are expiring. Next question, next slide is any questions? I know I'm trying to move quickly through-
No, thanks, Chief. We already got a big, good start. Does anybody want to add anything here to this item? All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next up is agenda item twenty-five. Receiver report holds discussion, provides staff direction on the city's current five-year forecast of bond debt obligations for fiscal years 24, 25 through 28, 29. The man, the myth, the legend.
So Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, for the record, I'm Prevz Mohe, City's Director of Finance. This won't take very long. We'll do it in less than nine minutes.
I was told one. Not by you, though. Someone spoke for you. It was not good. Oh, that was yours, dang.
I think he said ninety.
Ninety?
So we'll go very quickly on our current debt position. We'll touch on the five-year forecast. We'll compare our current debt per capita, and our future and next steps. So this fiscal year, this is our current debt obligations. This does not include the ARWA debt, PIT bonds, or GBRA debt. So while this information is going to be very riveting and informational, I do want to caution you that there is no other way to present this information other than in rows and columns, so you will see a lot of numbers, but I'll highlight the bottom line. So this fiscal year, we started out our current debt obligation of one-hundred-and-fifty-nine million, seven-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. If we keep this debt to maturity, we will pay seventy-seven million dollars in interest for a total amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-six million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand. The current, yes, ma'am.
So does that number include the defeasance that we just voted?
The defeasance that council voted will be happening next fiscal year, and I'll show you the impact of that in, in a few slides.
Thank you.
The debt service payment this fiscal year that is due on the debt we owe is eight-point-nine million dollars in principal, and another eight million in interest for a total sum of seventeen million dollars. Here again, this does not include ARWA or PIT bonds. Real quick, our property tax rates, as you well know, has two components, maintenance and operation, and interest and sinking rate. Interest and sinking rate is what pays the debt service for general fund debt that's supported by tax rates. Here's our property tax rate graph that we showed. This is for about thirty-seven years, and the last bar is for current year, which is forty-six ninety-three. The gold represents INS rate, the blue represents MNO. So current debt per capita, as a fiscal year that we started, this is comparison of all ten cities, peer cities that we look at and compare ourselves to. Kyle is in that orange, third position from the left, of twenty-seven hundred dollars per capita. This is total debt. Now, we had our, our financial advisor do this slide for us. This shows net debt per capita, meaning it only shows that debt that is supported by property tax. And they exclude any debt that is supported by enterprise funds or utilities. Comparison of debt as a percentage of assessed valuation. This is a very key, important metric that the bondholders, future investors, rating agencies, they all utilize. And that basically gives them the assurance, the quality of bonds being issued, what is the repayment debt, repayment risk, or default risk, and what percentage of that community's assessed valuation can be taxed.
And that graph right there, just surprising. I really thought Austin would be the highest, C. Flugerville, and Buda, two of the highest. That's really surprising.
Well, I would, I would also say these, these numbers change every single year, because there's new debt issued. So what that tells me is Buda and Flugerville just issued debt recently, whereas other entities maybe are prepping for debt, but I don't know. That's just my thought. But it is surprising, you're right. I'm afraid to see what the next slide is, though.
Perez, doesn't the higher the ratio number indicate that you have a higher, your, your assets may not be able to pay off the debt? So that's how they use it as a indicator for the bond ratings, right?
So the lower the percentage, the better.
Yeah.
So if you look at Flugerville, they're at seven-point-two-four percent. Buda is five-point-nine-nine, almost six percent. Kyle in this graph is two-point-five percent.
I would just say, it's also a way to think about this as a measure of affordability, and it's also the life cycle of cities. So as the mayor pointed out, if, if Buda or Flugerville just recently issued debt, they're growing cities, they've got capital needs, infrastructure needs, but as they mature, those capital needs decline or at least stabilize, and so those debt levels then come down. But this is one of the ways you look at debt. For instance, if you were to ask yourselves, well, what's, what's the right amount? You should have it as a mortgage. What's too much? What's too little? Well, it depends on what you make, how old you are, all those kinds of things. And so this is a simpler way to kind of think about it from a city perspective.
Yeah, and I might add that in 2016, Prevz can attest to this, because him and I discussed it many times, the debt to TAV value is something that is very important. And in 2016, our debt to TAV was one of the higher ones, because we had just issued the bonds for the 2013 road. We did it all in bulk, as well as a couple other projects, I would assume, and that put us at, and our TAV was a third of what it is now. And so it, we were among the highest. So, and that was just eight years ago. So exactly right. It does, it goes up and down depending on a lot of factors.
So this next slide is same information, same comparison, but is of net debt that is exclusively supported by the general fund or property tax rates in each community. The, the highest one here is Flugerville at four-point-two-two percent, and the low is Austin at point-six-two percent.
Perez, would it be possible, like, later, for you to email me, like, a slides that show the percentage of valuation over the fiscal year, so I can look at how we trickle with our long-term debt and with this debt percent valuation? Just so I could see how, what parts, how they working, you know, as we're-
Sure.
But from the last ten years, so I can see the trends.
Okay.
All right.
We'll do that. So, so far I've shown you debt, cities' debt without ARWA. So I think it's important to at least share with you what our debt looks like. So ARWA has issued contract revenue bonds on the city's benefit, for the city's benefit. We have a contract with them for those debt obligations. Those annual debt obligation payments that come due are paid through our water utility system, and they're paid through the water rates. They don't show up on our balance sheet as bond debt. It shows up on ARWA's balance sheet. So to date, they have issued eighty-four-point-eight million dollars on our behalf for our portion of the capital infrastructure that they're building, designing and building. By the end of this fiscal year, we would have paid off eight-point-three million dollars. And the remaining outstanding principal balance would be that we are responsible for will be seventy-six-point-five million dollars. The average annual debt service on ARWA debt is about four million dollars a year that we pay through our water rates. So now I'm going to walk you through, this is our current position so far. Now I'm going to walk you through what the debt is going to look like, our best projection at this point over the next five years. Now, these are preliminary assumption-based calculations. CIP spending plan projections are subject to changes. They will change as we develop our various master plans, and project cost estimates will be further refined. This forecast, again, does not include any ARWA debt or PIT bonds. So I'm going to skip the one-year forecast, I'll show you the five-year forecast. So here's the five-year window. The top half of this schedule is new debt that we think we will end up issuing, that will be supported by property tax rate. The second half is new debt that will be issued if our CIP plan stays on schedule, that will be paid by non-property tax revenue sources. So if you go across that top half, in year number one, next year, next fiscal year, we are estimating that the property tax-supported debt will be around eighty million dollars. And I've listed some of the, the purpose of that new debt. We will have road bonds, parks bonds, the regional sports blocks, live trail, Lake Kensington Park development, the intersection improvements for Kyle Center Drive and Marketplace Avenue, Stagecoach and Veterans Drive, Kyle Crossing and Kohler's Crossing, Market Place Avenue and Kohler's Crossing, and then the roundabout beautification that council directed city manager to, to make it happen. So in year number one is eighty million, year number two, one-hundred-and-thirty-three-point-five million, and so on and so forth. For the five-year window, property tax-supported debt is projected to be around three-hundred-and-seventy-four million dollars. The second half, non-property tax-supported debt, in next year is about fifty-two-point-six million. Majority of that is for our water and wastewater systems. And then, of course, we have some in TERS number two for the roundabouts, and TERS number If you go across, at the end of the fifth year, these numbers will shift. I can assure you that, but between the years, it will shift. But if the overall plan remains intact, we will be issuing another two-hundred-and-thirty-three million dollars for non-property tax-supported debt. So if you look at the last line, which is the sum of both of those two components, next year is about one-hundred-and-thirty-two-point-six million. Year after that is another two-hundred-and-two million, and for this five-year period is a little over six-hundred-and-seven million dollars. So this is, this is an interesting chart. That this overlays the current debt, adds the new debt, and subtracts- This overlays the current debt, adds the new debt, and subtracts any payments. So Councilmember Harris, you asked earlier, where's the defeasance impact shown? So if you look in column one, line four, sorry, line three, next year, we are, at least 3.5 million will be defeased, if not more, depending on the tax assessed valuation next year, and how much we need to adjust to keep the tax rate at 4693. So by the end of fifth year, it's projected that will be around $600 million, minus-plus a few million. So what is the debt per capita is going to look like at the end of their five-year window? We stayed on this schedule. Remember, current debt per capita for all debt is 2580. So at the end of fifth year, which will be 2029, and the last bar here will take us up to $8,037 per capita. So same chart comparing with our peer cities. Kyle, the first Kyle orange bar is our existing debt. The second bar is keeping everybody else constant, at the end of fifth year, if we sold all those bonds that we think we're going to end up selling, our projected debt per capita is a little over $8,000.
Perez, can you go back to the debt per capita, the one right before that one? Yeah. Is there, well, could you do this one for me, where you do the column that's the paid for by property tax, and then with, on top of that, how much is paid for by not property tax, debt per capita?
Yes, we can separate them.
Yeah, just so I'd like to see that breakup over the years.
We'll do. So the five-year forecast of cities' debt as a percentage of AV or assessed valuation. So this is just for City of Kyle. Over the five-year window, we will go from 2.4% to roughly about 6% at the end of the fifth year. In this chart, I'm assuming that the AV is going to grow annually at the rate of 10%. And the population growth is around four, between 4% and 5%, depending on the year that our planning department came up. So here's the same chart that you saw earlier. For the total debt, comparison of debt as a percentage of AV, the first orange for Kyle is our current debt at 2.54%. Then the second orange bar is that 5.9% if all debt is issued in that five-year window. So real quickly, upcoming key dates in the budget process. This Saturday, July 27, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, city manager will be presenting the city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2025. Tuesday, August 6, we have economic development master plan, the launch of Lean-German program that Jesse will be talking about, results of the water and wastewater cost of service study and rate study. Results will be shared with council. We will review new fees and charges, and if we have property tax rate calculations, we will share that with you on August 6. On August 20, we have public hearings and our first reading of the budget adoption ordinance and the first reading of the property tax rate ordinance. And then on September 3, we have the second round of public hearings, second reading of the budget adoption ordinance, second reading of property tax rate ordinance, and then there are a number of city policies that we will be bringing forth before council for reaffirmation or any changes at that point. All of our budget information is on the city's website at cityofkyle.com/fy2025. And that concludes my presentation. I believe I was under nine minutes.
So to add to what Zuniga was asking, I also think it would be good for us to figure out, if we did defeasance throughout this period, as we're ramping up the tax rate, if we went ahead and did that for that block, what would the debt's TAV and what would be our ending balance as well? I think that would be good if we planned to do it, you know, maybe if we do it two years or three years, or all the way through this period of heavy capital investment.
What would be the net?
What would be the net? I think that'd be, so we could have a, all right, if we want to keep it below, if we'll just hold the tax rate where it is, as opposed to, because I'm assuming that the tax rate under your scenario would continue to drop, because we're not holding the rate. Well, it would go up, but.
The INS rate will go up.
Right.
MNO will drop.
I just, I feel like because we're going to go, we're planning to go right up towards that edge, the defeasance will change that curve and drop it down over the course of that five years by some amount. It won't be nothing. It'll be a significant amount, so something to, at least for us to be pondering. We don't have to make that decision for another year. Councilmember Harris?
One of my questions when I was looking at the charts was that comparison, comparing our five-year to the other cities, we don't know their five-years.
Correct, yeah.
So it's almost not a valuable comparison.
Because you don't know where they're going to be.
I mean, I like seeing that we're low, but.
They may be switching their position.
Yeah. We don't know what bonds they're going to issue. We don't know what bonds they will have paid off, but that's all figured into our five-year.
Yes.
So the numbers really don't compare very well.
We just wanted to show you, if we did all of that in five years, what our position will be.
I think that the point we were trying to make is the relative, the number can be scary sometimes. It's a lot of zeros on it, but it's the relative position against some of the other cities that we want to show. So it is just a point in time, but we agree it's imperfect.
Yeah, well, five years is not a point in time. Right now is. I mean, we can compare it to right now. It's hard if we don't have their five-year figures to show our five years against their current point.
We were just trying to say we would not be the top one, even if you used all that at the.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive, actually.
What's the amount of our cash reserves, Perez, just to know?
Unencumbered fund balance, off the top of your head, let's go.
21 million.
21 in cash reserves, right? That's free to use, to pay down debt if we need to.
Not quite free. We're going to use most of it in next year's budget.
So 20 million is what we have?
Right now, as we speak, yeah.
That's unencumbered.
It doesn't sound right.
That's unencumbered.
Not totally unencumbered.
Encumbered by the charter, I understand, yes. So that means that everything that's in the budget to be spent on cash, he deducted out of that in his mental math. Like, everything in our current CIP budget is deducted.
Right.
So that's how much we have if we spend all of this in net reserves.
Come on, man. Because what other cities have done is they pay down some debt with some cash. Over time, it does cut down all that interest amount.
That's what the defeasance does, right?
No, it wasn't the exact same thing.
And you'll see in the city manager's proposed budget, how much of our capital budget is funded with cash.
Yeah.
That avoids issuing debt.
Perez, thank you for the presentation. Get through your staff home, get some rest for tomorrow.
Before we adjourn, I've got one more thing.
Yeah, I've got one last thing. So before we go, Mayor, I just want to, what do you call it, make sure that we excuse an absence for Councilmember Parsley in the second meeting in June.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. All right, motion by Councilmember, Mayor Protem, seconded by Mayor, that we excuse Parsley for June 18. This is our discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries four to one. Thank you. Motion adjourned.
So may.